Order, the February 6th Planning Commission. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, we continue the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item is we have a swearing in of a new commissioner.
Commissioner Sargent, if you can come on down.
I am Jeff Sargent.
I am Jeff Sargent.
Do solemnly swear to affirm.
Do solemnly swear to affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of the City of Dayton.
The duties of the office for the City of Dayton.
As a planning commissioner, as a planning commissioner in the counties of Hennepin and Wright.
As a planning commissioner in the counties of Hennepin and Wright.
The State of Minnesota.
The State of Minnesota.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my judgment and ability.
And the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
You're welcome.
The next item, item number three, is just, I'm going to read what the role of the Planning Commission is. The Planning Commission consists of five residents appointed by the city council. The commission administers the comprehensive plan, zoning, and subdivision regulations. The commission conducts public hearings and provides recommendations to the city council. It is the city council who may approve or deny land use applications. Moving on to item number four, approval of the agenda. Any changes, John?
No.
No, we're all good.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Do we need to do a roll call since Peter's not here, he's not there?
Yes, we do.
We do?
Do we? No, there we go.
Perfect.
We have a call.
Perfect. All right, moving on to item number five, the consent agenda. This is just routine or previously discussed items that are enacted with one motion. In this case, all we're dealing with is the Planning Commission minutes from February 9th, 2025. I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes, or if anyone has any changes?
No changes, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. You are correct.
January.
It does say February, but you are correct. So just to be clear, John, we just approved the January 9th.
Yes.
2025 minutes.
Thank you.
And for the record, I will abstain from that since I was not here.
Okay.
Item number six is open forum. This is limited to public comments, three minutes for non-agenda items. Is there any in a room to speak for any non-agenda items? Perfect. You can please come forward, state your name and address. No action will be taken, the items will be referred to staff, and group commenters are asked to have one main speaker.
Good evening. My name is Craig Forre. I reside at 11821 Stormwood Road. And I'm here to discuss the proposed changes to the parking ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I'll just note that that is an item on the agenda, and a public hearing will be held at that when that item's discussed.
So do you want me to come back, or should I speak my piece?
Come back when the discussion starts for the item.
Sorry about that. Is anyone else here to speak to any non-agenda items? Okay, then we are moving on to item number seven, council update.
Okay, we've got the 14th Way to Work session on the Parkway neighborhood. That was just to kind of go over some of the financing on that project and how to keep the city out from any liabilities, financial liabilities. And Ellers was going to come up with a kind of a plan for that. And then we had the Quilling Concept Review. It's pretty much what you had seen previously. The variances weren't approved. There was some confusion about the easement, and I think there's going to be more information coming forward on how that easement is going to be handled. I think that was primary, that was the primary question there. There was a planning commission appointment, which resulted in, Jeff? And then cannabis thing went through. Pretty much what we had talked about earlier, and then on the 28th. Nothing significant. There was Jason won over how change orders and contract bidding works for some of the new council. And then there was some stormwater projects around French Lake and Diamond Lake that were discussed and approved.
That's it. Any questions?
No.
All right, then we are moving on to item number eight, public hearings. The first item on the public hearing is the conditional use permit at 1790149th Avenue North.
Good evening, Acting Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight you're asked to consider a conditional use permit related to exceeding the 10% impervious surface maximum coverage in the A1 district on a property regarding a proposed construction of a 52 by 36, 1,872 square feet accessory structure on the property. The need for the conditional use permit is to further exceed the 10% maximum in the A1 district. The site currently has 14.8% impervious surface on the property, and with the addition of the accessory structure would expand that to 20% in total, 20.1% give or take. Just a little bit of context, there was no conditional use permit previously approved for the, what my guess was in 2019, in addition to the home, was constructed and approved by Planning and Zoning in 2019. I don't have any information beyond why a conditional use permit wasn't requested or required at that point, other than it potentially being an oversight. So when the applicant came through asking for some guidelines on the accessory structure that he's proposing today, I had relayed that information, that a conditional use permit would still be required, even though he's still currently exceeding it. And for context, the conforming lot size in the A1 is 40 acres, where the 10% maximum still applies, and this property is .2 acres in total, so considered a legal non-conforming lot. In a comparative district, for this lot would be the R1, where the minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet, and 50% impervious surface max is allowed in that district, which comes out to 7,500 square feet in total. And then I just referenced the section here from the code, "No building permit shall be issued for the construction of detached accessory buildings on an ag parcel exceeding the limits stated below in the underlying zoning district's impervious surface limit, except by conditional use permit." And for just some more context, typically you see in residential districts, there is a maximum allowed square footage for accessory structures set. For the ag district, it relies on the 10% maximum. So here was the site plan that was also included in the packet with the square footage totals there. An important part of this review for the conditional use permit like this one specifically is the ability that the applicant and the property can provide enough space on the lot with the proposed conditions to do the following: meet setbacks on all lot lines, as well as from the existing septic field, which is 20 feet for structures, and I believe the septic tanks themselves have to be 10 feet, and as well as ensuring that the lot is large enough to leave area for a secondary septic site, given there are no sewer and water utilities in this area currently within the city. The applicant has stated that this can be done. He provided the existing septic information on the site plan, and as part of the conditions of approval for this, and when he applies for a building permit, that proof that the secondary site won't be unburdened by the proposed structure. That would be a requirement to submit with the building permit application itself. Through staff's review, staff believes that the site is large enough to accommodate these features on the property that is not connected to city utilities, and as well as given the rural surroundings of the property, staff does not believe that the proposed structure would affect surrounding neighbors, and as such, staff is recommending approval of this conditional use permit with the following conditions: the applicant shall provide a site plan proving an alternative site for the septic system on the property will not be burdened by the construction of this accessory structure; no other accessory structure shall be permitted on this property with the construction of the proposed structure; and any additional impervious surface addition shall require an amendment to this conditional use permit. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions to staff?
Mr. Acting Chair, if I could, just a couple things that I noticed in the staff report itself. Obviously, I'm a new commissioner here and first time reading a staff report. It would have been nice in the report to understand, or have the report actually list what that minimum requirement was. I understand that during that packet, you submit the requirements afterwards in that packet, but you know, the actual report itself probably should say minimum requirements is 10% in this district for this property, they're currently at 14.8%, so on and so forth. I do think also that the resolution should also reflect what that amount is that the applicant is looking to exceed, and what that conditional use permit is covering. Just for, in five years, someone can pick that up and say, okay, I see what the story is on this property now. Just for some clarification issues there. The only other question I had, and this gets into semantics and what we consider the conditional use, the actual conditional use for this application, but the requirements of the conditional uses do require that they be screened, and so a question I have is, is this a use that we feel as a city needs to be screened per the requirements of the code, and how staff went about disseminating whether or not it should be screened or not?
Sure. To your first point, that is well taken. I think that that was just a portion of the review that I had not included in the staff report. It was my intention to make sure that would note, and as well as the resolution, whether for approval or denial, going to the city council will reflect that note. Not only the 10%, exceeding the 10%, but as well as what is going to be proposed for impervious surface, so I appreciate the review there on that. To your second question, I will pull up just a couple of the pictures that I took on the site visit here, if I could. When we did, when I conducted a site visit, I did take pictures of the surrounding area as well as the proposed area, and through staff's purview, given the rural character of this area, as well as the significant grade change from the street down to this area where the applicant is proposing this structure to be located, staff didn't feel that additional screening would be necessary in this regard.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I just wanted to make sure that it was noted that that was the case.
Sure.
And then perhaps maybe that should also be reflected in the resolution, so in the event that someone might complain about this structure itself, and why isn't it screened? Because your code says it needs to be screened, we can direct them to the resolution that says that per, you know, staff's review, no other screening would be necessary through this conditional use permit approval, so.
Right, yeah, and I don't have the resolution language off the top of my head, but I do believe that a finding of fact did address that.
Perfect.
Just because going through the CUP review requirements is just kind of that standard process for the resolutions here.
Is the applicant present, and would they like to come forward and present or explain a little bit more about your project, please?
Carry current, 17900149th Avenue North. We'd like to put up a whole building just for personal use, whole storage. It will be not used for any business or rent or anything like that, just for my personal. I've got motorhomes, boats, trailers. Our neighbors have been generous enough to let us park my stuff on their field road, and we just like to get it under a roof. Wife doesn't like it sitting in the driveway, so. So that's our reason for putting up a accessory building.
Any questions to the applicant? We might call you back up here if we're going to open a public hearing, if some other things arise, we might ask you to come back up if we've got some questions, but thank you.
All right, thank you.
It is 6:46, and I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here in the public that'd like to speak to this matter? Anyone online?
We do have a couple people online. If you do wish to speak at this public hearing for this item, feel free to use the hand your raise function, or raise your hand function.
Well, it is 6:46, we are going to close the public hearing. At this point, we can open up discussion here amongst the Planning Commission members.
I can kick it off. Generally, I think it's fairly straightforward in the fact that this is a very substandard lot in size, which is resulting in the need for the variance for impervious surface. You know, with a really large lot in the ag, 10% would provide sufficient impervious surface, but with a .82 acre lot size, 10% just doesn't provide enough. So I think from my standpoint, I can see the reasonableness in the request from that standpoint. Definitely support the comments that we have from Commissioner Sargent. I think those are great suggestions for a final resolution, or final recommendation.
Yeah, I generally see no issue with this either, for many of the same reasons that Nick just stated, so I'm not going to repeat them. The one thing I would just suggest to staff that maybe even release on the council, but at some point in time, we have a lot of lots like this that are zoned A1, is that they probably should be zoned something else. Now, realizing that it might be more restrictive, because as R1, you won't be able to put up the size of building you're requesting, but.
Yeah, essentially, we did take a look at potentially rezoning this property when you first came forward, but the R1 is essentially, the language in the zoning code relates to R1 properties have utilities ready and available to the site. So rezoning this property wasn't something that could have been done the way that it's currently written. And actually, there's language in the R1 district and actually the rest of the residential districts as well, that if they wish to exceed the square footage maximums, they would have to come through the same process.
Same CUP, perfect.
Yeah, I think we've had a lot of conversations over time about size of accessory buildings, and we try to put some common sense into it, but there's always instances where it just doesn't quite fit, but I don't see a concern with this one. Like you said, the lot size is pretty constrictive for being an ag area, and location of the proposed building doesn't bother me, so.
Yeah, and I would concur as well. I mean, this is, you know, anytime that something like this comes up, you have to ask if it's a reasonable use of the property, given the constraints or anything else that we have to take into consideration. In this case, you know, the applicant wants to put up a storage shed or barn, or whatever you might want to call it, for, to help with the visual characteristics of the property, right? He wants to screen and secure some of his belongings, so given the size of the property too, I think that the request is very reasonable to approve a conditional use permit.
If there is no further discussion, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve, based on the, I don't have it in front of me now, the resolutions that the staff put forth.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Moving on to item number B in public hearings, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Zoning Map Amendment, Planned Unit Development, and Preliminary Platte of DCM Farms.
Just a note on that last item, Commissioners, the city council will see that at their February 25th meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. To kind of follow, piggyback on that note, the purpose or the intent of tonight with the DCM Farms is for, or I should say, staff's request is for the Planning Commission to continue this public meeting at the March 9th, I believe it's March 9th.
March 6.
The March 6th Planning Commission meeting. So the reason for that, this is a large project, large enough that it requires an environmental assessment worksheet, or EAW for short. With an EAW, there's a 30-day public review period. We're kind of in the middle of that now. Statutorily, the city cannot take action on anything else until the EAW is completed, which will be February, or the review period will end in February 13th. So again, the intention is for this public hearing to be continued at the March Planning Commission meeting, where we will address the EAW, as well as the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, the Zoning Map Amendment, the PUD, and the Preliminary Platte. It's a mouthful. So I guess my thought on this, I'm going to kind of summarize this quickly, and then kind of go into a little bit more detail. So this is DCM Farms. DCM is Dean's Country Manor, is the acronym. It's located off of Fernbrook and 113th, or between 113th and 117th Avenue. That's 91 acres total on three parcels. The proposal includes 266 single-family homes, as well as about 10 acres of commercial retail. I want to emphasize the commercial retail, it is, I'm going to say draft form or hypothetical. With the EAW, the intent is that the most intensive use is proposed, so you kind of think of how intensive a use could this be, and then you plan for that. It can always be scaled back. So again, in the preliminary platte, and the developer can correct me, this is all hypothetical as far as those uses are, but the 266 homes are kind of, they are not hypothetical. So what I'm looking for, for the Planning Commission tonight, is is there any changes that you would like to make, or anything that you do not like seeing on this? Okay. So the first application's for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment. In our 2048 Comprehensive Future Land Use Map, it guides this, two of the three parcels as low-density residential at two to five units per acre. As mentioned, this project includes a portion, or about 10 acres, of commercial retail use that is not consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, and therefore it requires an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, and that is what triggers the need for an EAW. So again, the amendment for the Comprehensive Plan is to change this triangle piece from low-density residential to neighborhood commercial. The second application is for a zoning map amendment. Currently, the, other than Dean's Country Manor, the two fields are zone A1 agricultural. The request is to rezone those from A1 to R3 residential with a PUD overlay. And I'll get into what the PUD, or what's needed for the PUD. If this is rezone to R3 with a PUD, it would be the same as Sundance Greens to the South. With the PUD, so what a planning development is, is it allows flexibility from the city code in exchange for some type of public benefit. So example, there's a number of deviations that are being requested, and I'll get to those in a little bit more detail. For the public benefit of what staff is suggesting, the first one is this project will build a roundabout at 114th. So currently, 113th is located along this south property line, which then goes to Sundance Golf Course. The proposal's to reroute this up to 114th. This is better spacing between 117th and Rush Creek Parkway to the south. And then again, this would be a roundabout, which in addition to controlling traffic a little bit more, it also slows it down. Other public benefits include contributing towards improvements to 117th. I think we've looked at what this could be, and it could be, could be a roundabout, it could be stop signs.
Mostly it would be turn lanes at this time.
Turn lanes, okay.
It won't be in the long-term situation.
When Braeburn Trails was approved, the developer agreed to contribute a portion, I'll just say, they're a fair portion towards improvements to this intersection. Staff's expectation is that this developer would do this, the same, and we've not figured out what that cost would be. Other public benefits are pedestrian amenities, and this is being suggested by staff as far as, we're asking the Planning Commission to try to identify these, such as benches or landscaping. I think I've got on here, fountains and the stormwater ponds, observation decks. Additionally, is more landscaping or heavily landscaped along Fernbrook. So as, if you're familiar with Fernbrook, there is quite a bit of buffer along Sundance Greens, kind of the expectations to try to repeat that in this area. There's not as much depth to it, and so the thought is to do some birmingham along the northeast area, and to try to make up for the lack of width there. Other public benefits that staff is suggesting is to provide focal points within the commercial area, so typically trying to frame something to look at when you're looking between buildings or looking down the street. I know at a previous Planning Commission meeting, suggested kind of have an open view shed between stormwater ponds. That's included in this in some areas, and in some areas it is not. As far as deviations from city code, and this is blocking a little bit, so there's three columns here. We have the R3 single-family districts, so what the required standards are, and approved PUD, or what's being proposed as a PUD for the 40, I'm going to say the four different lot levels, so 40, 45, 50, 55 feet lots. And the third column that's a little covered up is the lots that are at 60, 75, yeah, 65 and 75 foot wide lots. So just in summary, within the R3 district, there's a limitation of no more than 30% of the lots that are less than 62 feet wide. In this case, the ask is to allow up to 78% of the lots to be less than 62 feet wide. There's also deviations in the lot size, so the smallest lot is roughly about 4,000 square feet. The lots are narrow, and setbacks are also narrower. With the preliminary platte, so some of the suggestions that staff has come up with, and I'm just going to go north to south, first being is to plan for a right-of-way to be, or a roundabout to be located on 117th, and to dedicate additional right-of-way to accommodate that. This would require reconfiguration of the pond here. We're suggesting that townhomes, or additional townhomes be planned to skirt around the north loop here, for this street to be, what's currently being proposed as a private street would be a public street, to close off this intersection here, and to connect this cul-de-sac to the north-south road, and then also to extend the median here to prevent left-hand turns into the proposed gas station. So essentially, to enter the commercial area, you'd come in off of 114. Uh, so essentially, to enter the commercial area, you'd come in off of 114th and enter, uh, down on the south end, and then exit on the north end. So it's more of a loop corridor. Uh, what else? Um, this isn't the developers' issues as much as the city, but we're believing, uh, or I should say, the developers, uh, donating one-fourth of the land that's needed for the park that we refer to as Area 21. Uh, we're thinking that we may need more parking than what is, what has been planned, and that's, that's more of the city's issue. Okay, critical issues. Uh, just to name these off, are traffic, landscape buffering, the deviations from the R3 zoning district, uh, identifying the public benefit of this project, uh, preliminary plat corrections, uh, issues related to the existing six homes along Fernbrook, and then the commercial retail component. Okay, with the traffic, and this is going to be in much more, available in much more detail next month when we get into the E A W. Uh, so of this, 266 homes are estimated to generate about, and just, 10,900 trips per day. So a trip is me leaving home is one trip, coming home is trip number two. During the morning peak hour, uh, this would add about 1,100 trips. Uh, so kind of what does this mean, other than there's a lot of traffic, is that it puts pressure on the Rush Creek Parkway and intersection. So, currently as it is, uh, the level of service is graded on an A through an F scale, so A is good, F is bad. I believe A, I'm gonna lean on the engineers here, A through E is, A through D is determined acceptable, and, and E and F is a problem. So as it is, uh, you know, just the street today, uh, left-hand turning movements on Rush Creek Parkway intersection is graded as an F, um, and it, it will only get worse after this project, so it will be bad both right and left turns. So, um, it's hard to see on the screen, we do have kind of a schematic for how a roundabout could fit at this intersection, and I believe we have it, um, kind of penciled in, in our C A P for 2027 construction, uh, but we do not have funding identified on how we're gonna pay for that. So, there is most of a plan, but it, it's not a full plan. So again, if, say, at 2027, we would have a cul-de-sac, or a, a roundabout at Rush Creek Parkway as well as 114th, and then plan for some type of improvement at 117th. Okay, for critical issue for landscape buffering, so this gets into, and somewhere in our comprehensive plan, there's a, a goal of trying to preserve, uh, rural vistas of, uh, so that you can see that along Fernbrook with around, uh, Sundance Greens, there's, uh, I'm not sure what the width is of the buffer area, but it's quite large. Um, this will be fairly narrow, I, I wanna say this is around 50 feet at, at the minimum. Uh, staff is recommending that, in order to, to try to buffer the view from the road to the townhomes, of having additional birmingham. So that combination of birmingham and trees will provide more of a buffer, more, I'm not gonna call it a vista, but more of a, a screen. Another critical issue is deviations from the R3 district, and once again, just summarizing this, is related to the percentage of narrow lots. Um, whereas the R3 district allows up to 30% of lots that, I'm just gonna refer to it as narrow lots, and in this case, the request is 78%, so it is significant. Um, as well as a reduction in lot size, um, from, I wanna say it was 60, 6,500 feet or 6,000 feet?
6,500.
6,500 feet to, uh, about 4,000 feet at smallest, and then a reduction in sideyard setbacks from seven and a half feet to five feet. And this is specifically for the townhomes. So, with this project, there's five different, um, housing types, I believe. Uh, so that's one of the things that kind of makes this project unique, is that there is variety in houses, housing. Okay, with the public benefit, and this is where I'm, I'm leaning on the planning commission for some help on what you, you guys see as the public benefits for this. It includes construction of the roundabout at 114th Avenue, uh, contributions towards improvements at the 117th intersection, um, and then staff has a number of, of recommendations as far as, uh, and I'll just refer to it as, uh, public amenities, whether it's, uh, street furniture or, um, things that are going to make this project more attractive that are open to, to public use. Uh, with the preliminary plat, again, suggestions or recommendations by staff is to, uh, require additional right-of-way to accommodate the potential for roundabout at 117th. Adding townhomes along the north loop, uh, the proposed private street would be a public street, uh, providing an alleyway that would provide the option for the six homeowner, homes, homeowners, uh, to change the garage access to the rear instead of to the front. And to kind of add to that a little bit, uh, when this roundabout is built, there will be a center median that kind of goes in all four directions, well, three, more than three of the directions. The existing driveways for the, for the south, southern lots are going to be blocked so that you can only go right in, right out, no, no left-hand turns. If a drive, an alleyway is provided, that leaves the option of, um, I'm just gonna say better access into those homes. Uh, staff is also suggesting that these two streets be connected, uh, which would then close this intersection, that allows more free movement, uh, along 114th here. Okay, Fernbrook Homes. Uh, I skipped over, I was a little too fast here. So, again, with the construction of the roundabout, this median will extend up to about this point, which would mean that there's not the, the ability of making left-hand turns into the two southern homes. Um, as is, uh, essentially, they'd have to go around a large block, so it would be a inconvenience to do this.
Or a roundabout.
Yeah, you turn, turn right, and then you go around.
You go around.
117.
On 110.
You'd have to have a roundabout, 117 would solve it, but we don't have one yet.
So if there were.
Let's save, let's save comments till, let's save comments till staff has done with their update, please.
So if there is a roundabout at 117th, and that would be the direction of going up to 117th and coming back down. Uh, commercial retail, so again, this is hypothetical as far as what the uses are. Um, so what's just drawn in there includes a gas station, coffee shop, a daycare, a bank, um, and just some generic retail. Uh, questions for the planning mission is what would you like to see or change on here? Okay. Where would you like me to start, or continue? That, that's my presentation, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or clarifications for staff?
And the developer is here.
Yeah, one question I have the staff is the, it kind of goes back to the concept plan, too, is the, the closing of Gable Lane and the whole traffic coming around for the commercial area. I get why you guys are suggesting that, but I would really think that should've came up in the concept plan, too. Cause that's a pretty big change. Um, it shifts the whole commercial character. I mean, I personally, this is a questionable commercial site, and that probably teeters it to even not feasible completely. So, something like that, I get why you're coming with it, but I wish that, that would come up in the concept plan.
Um, so just to kind of elaborate on that, so the, the spacing guideline between intersections is 660 feet, and that's, uh, I don't know what the distance is between the proposed intersection, but 660 is roughly a little farther than the mid-block point.
Yeah, I guesstimated it at about 275.
And I might be mistaken, but I think that was in staff's report at the concept plan.
It was.
For intersection spacing. It wasn't, I don't think they specifically called on the commercial area per se, but I think it was hand in hand with the intersection that's behind the existing houses.
We did talk about it, like that, at the concept plan.
I've, I've certainly got some questions for staff, if it's my turn, Mr. Chair. Um, can, can staff speak to the changes that they saw between the concept plan and what we saw now? And, and the reason I say that is, we, we give quite a bit of feedback, us and city council, at concept plan, and, and you did list quite a few of those feedback points in the staff report. But, you know, specifically this body and council feedback was that we don't like all of those 40-foot lots. That hasn't really decreased. I think we gave direction that we felt like the homes around that pond in the center would be better suited for larger width. That has not changed. Um, and I think overall, the thought was to get some larger lots through here, and, and the 75 and 65 lot count hasn't changed. Am I missing something there?
There were a lot of, I'm gonna say conflicting comments, um, so that there is not a clear direction that was provided to the, the developer on what to do. I, I know there were a lot of comments of more wider lots, fewer narrower lots.
I thought we were, yeah, I thought we were pretty consistent up here about the, the lots around the pond, and I did, uh, watch the council meeting and, and check council minutes. I thought they accurately reflected, specifically, uh, council member, um, Solenex's comments of, would like to make them all bigger. Cut 20 to 30 homes, I think is exactly what he said, and like to make them all bigger. I thought that was generally consistent with some of the direction we gave up here. So, I'm just wondering, and maybe that's a better question for the applicant, but specifically to staff, did you see any significant changes from the concept plan to what we have now?
I, I'm gonna have to lean on the developer, right?
I think maybe just in the southwest corner lot, and we can get to that, uh, I think the applicant can maybe address that, cause I've got a couple other questions for staff that are maybe a little bit more pointed. Kind of specifically to the contributions to these transportation improvements, and you had mentioned at 117th that the Braeburn Trails had agreed to contribute. Now, really, the decision point on that is gonna be the future plat of Braeburn Trails, correct? I mean, it, it would have to, we'd have, we'd have to have costs figured out at that point, and contribution amounts figured out at that point. More of a, a comment, just, we, we need to get moving on that, but the roundabout that's supposed to be constructed with this one at 114th, we don't have funding for that, but we will have to work that into final approvals for this development. How close are we to understanding what the scope of that is gonna look like, Hennepin County's participation? Or is it, you know, are, are we setting forth a, a plan for a development with no solution for this intersection?
Sure, for 114th, you're specific.
Yeah, 114th, correct. 117th is, will require Braeburn Trails plat, which is a topic here, but.
The company is in full support of the roundabout, and they have not offered any participation financially.
So, I, I mean, I'm a little bit concerned, and, and that's what I figured. Um, you know, I'm not super surprised by that, but when this, uh, development comes for its last final plat, that would be our last opportunity to have a bite at the apple.
For, for Braeburn, you're talking about?
Well, no, for, for D C M Farms. The fi, the last final plat, however plats, many final plats, this is gonna be five, six, seven. The last one will be our last bite at the apple to potentially get funding from this developer for construction of that roundabout. Um, so I mean, I, I just think we need to move with some expediency on, on that. I'm just, I'm just afraid that this development would go in, and we would not be able to fund a solution at 114th.
Commissioner, if I could just, uh, note for the record that, uh, the third edition of Braeburn Trails East is contingent on that information getting figured out prior to final approval. So that, that language is in the.
That puts a lot of pressure on staff.
It does, yeah.
Because it's not the developer's responsibility to figure that out.
It does.
It's a city project.
Okay, good deal. Um, and I think just my, my overall comment is I think the deviations in the R3, um, lot width, uh, you know, going from 30% of lots less than 62 feet wide to 78, that, that is significant. I think that requires a lot of thought by us and city council. Those are my comments, uh, initially.
I'd echo some concerns about the lot size decrease, too. I mean, it's, it's a lot of really tight homes. Um, I do like the fact that we've got very distinct home types throughout the project. Um, I think that adds to the character of the, the development. I was comparing back to the, the plan that we had recently looked at in September, and there's a few changes, and there's not a lot of drastic things. Um, you know, I think just the view sheds, the stormwater ponds, um, add to the character, giving little spots in the neighborhood that get, provide breaks, uh, from the rows of houses, uh, it's important. Um, I'll defer to my civil engineering, um, counterparts here that, to talk more about the, the roundabouts and distances to intersections and all that, but, um, I'd support anything we can do to provide buffers, um, in that area, too, um, along Fernbrook. I guess no, no major questions right now for staff?
One question for staff, just that I have a feeling that this might come up to as a public talks, is when you think about the roundabouts that could go on Fernbrook, it seems to me that the priority is Rush Creek Parkway, then 117th, then 114th? Are we approaching this project differently, that 114th is gonna go first? I, actually, and it kind of refers back to the funding, and obviously we don't have that figured out, so that's why I'm kind of trying to understand this.
It is certainly dependent on, on funding. The intent would be to do them simultaneously or back-to-back, at least the 114th realigned, or realigned 113th, 114th connection, and Rush Creek Parkway. Those are definitely the top two priority. Uh, 117th probably does sit down the, down the list in priority in those, however, we would like to see that completed as well, but again, it's about finding funding. Ideally, all three would be done. But we are targeting the same, same timeframe for the southerly two.
I guess, and somewhat to piggyback on the, a roundabout, it was brought up, and those last two homes with, with at least the design of having a median in there, those last two homes on Fernbrook are gonna lose access, uh, from the south to their homes without a roundabout at 117th. And so I think, I, in my, in my thought process is, you know, it's, it's, we're putting a lot, I, I get it, it's, it's, it's six homes, but it's, it's six homes that, that we're putting a lot of, of extra burdens in there, and so I think we should figure out a way, you know, from our standpoint of, you know, can we, can we construct this without a median on Fernbrook for an interim period until 117th gets put in? Is there, is there something we can do for those homes? At least, you know, it's not a ton of traffic going across that median, it's, it's just a, a handful of that.
Yeah, the, the goal would be to certainly maintain full access to those driveways, to have maybe a painted median, or even eliminate the median. Um, I'll just note, the median has not been designed at all, not even a conceptual. Um, this is quite literally a schematic pasted in from another project, um, that was used just kind of as a placeholder.
And I get putting it in in the future when we have that 117th one, when they can get the opportunity to turn around from the, you know, couple of, you know, half a mile north or whatever that is, but.
I guess I could put it, the card of being the new guy for only so, so long a time here, so I, I could throw out some questions here. Uh, number one, uh, would that, would any of those medians be considered if not for this development or future developments? Sorry, roundabout, not median. Would, would, would any of those roundabouts along Fernbrook be considered if not for this development?
Uh, yes, there was actually, E A W's done with previous development at Rush Creek Parkway and Fernbrook, to be honest, at that time, it was identified for a signal, um, but to become a controlled intersection. In fact, this is about the timing it was projected to be needed, so it's, it's right in alignment with that. 117th hasn't had as much attention, but it's always been on city's staff that that would be on, on the radar, that that would be controlled at some point in the future as well. Uh, the concept about realigning 113th to match 114th, um, that was put out there just to eliminate, you know, two intersections to one to condense that, and then, as John mentioned, uh, improve the spacing between those. So that one as well has been looked at, um, just thinking that the opportunity would come when the development occurs that would support that, so.
Right.
So the, the short answer is yes, it would all be considered.
So the development is occurring, I think that kind of helped answer some of the cost burden as far as, well, if this developer wasn't in front of us tonight, perhaps this roundabout wouldn't be constructed as soon as it, it's going to be, correct? So, I think that would help. So I think that would help answer some of those questions as far as cost burden or sharing, at least, for the construction of that roundabout. A couple other things. In my opinion, I think the northwestern portion of the site plan is pretty condensed, or excuse me, pretty dense as far as density, probably meets the requirements, and do the math.
Not on the northwest portion, so the density project-wide is three point sixteen units. I think we came at three point two.
Three point two, right around there. So these are essentially proposed as individual lots, right? So not necessarily detached townhomes, or it really isn't?
Detached townhomes with common yards.
With common yards, okay. My experience with that type of development is that unless it's planned very, very carefully, there's a lot of things that can go wrong as far as livability. So snow removal is a huge issue. Number two is guest parking, right? So these are very tight lots next to each other, probably very short driveways. I'm hosting a Super Bowl party, where are my guests going, right? Are they walking four blocks or down the entire street to get to my house when I'm holding a get-together? Those are issues that come up a lot with that type of density in that tight of a spot, okay? So does an alley help with that? Potentially, maybe, but I think some site planning needs to be looked at specifically to that area to help alleviate some of those future concerns that might not be as apparent right now looking at a site plan.
Sure. And I failed to mention earlier, so this block, there is an alleyway, this is not a street, this is an alleyway that would, so these homes that are interior would have garages, attached garages in the back that would access the alleyway, and then the homes that are on the west side and the north side would have front-loaded garages.
All right, so no driveways?
No, the interior homes would have no driveways onto this.
Correct.
Yeah.
So then that leads the question again, where does my guest park?
Sure.
And if I, if everybody in the neighborhood's having the same Super Bowl party, you're parking on Fernbrook and walking through, right? I mean, that's just, that's kind of how it's going to end up being. So just a caution on that, in that scenario. I think, obviously, in discussion of the six current homes on Fernbrook, I think there's a lot more discussion that'd be had there, potentially through the PUD process, maybe there's more that the developer can do to protect those homes. If, you know, if those neighbors come up and say, "I really don't want to look at all that," maybe a decorative fence, maybe more landscaping could be provided by the developer to help buffer those six homes from the other, from the development in their backyard. I get both sides of the story, right? We, as a city, want to do as much as we can to help prosper development, to help introduce new residents to the city. I'm a relatively new resident, if it wasn't for my development, I wouldn't be here today, living here. So I get that. I also get that these six might be very long-term residents who aren't used to seeing all of that development in their backyard, right? So I think a lot has to be done to help protect those six in particular. They are the most affected by this project. Not to say that the development shouldn't happen, but they should be looked at pretty closely as far as how can we protect them. I think the roundabout is a huge issue. I would not want to not be able to take a left into my driveway if I'm going north on Fernbrook and have to go down an entire block or what equates to three blocks to then turn around and come back south. So I think a lot of, a lot of the traffic from this is going south anyway, which means a lot of the traffic returning is coming north. And if I had to do an entire, you know, quarter mile just to get back into my driveway, I'd be driving over medians. I'd find a pickup truck where I could jump the curb, whatever it might be, to get into my property, right? So I think we have to look at those properties also. I know, I get it, it's concept stage, we don't even know if there's medians or not. It could be a, you know, surmountable curb or a painted median or whatever it might be, but I think more consideration has to be made for those six current residents there. And then just for me not understanding the code exact, or not understanding, but not knowing it a hundred percent, and I know it's a future commercial site, and we don't know what's going in there as far as if any commercial or whatever it might be, but does Dayton have a current ordinance regulating the light emissions and noise emissions?
Yes, there's holes in it, but, you know, in general, so the maximum, we measure light in foot candles. So the maximum is zero point one foot candle measured at the residential property line, and then one foot candle measured at a comparable zone. So a commercial to commercial is one, commercial to residential is zero point one.
Yeah, that's pretty, I think that's pretty consistent, so that's good. Considerations, obviously, that need to be made are the gas station, generally, they could have, I mean, this might be in the future, we don't know if a gas station's going in there, but canopy lighting tends to be a lot brighter, and noise emissions, obviously, from speakers and things like that, you know, which gas station you start your pump in, the commercial goes on in the pump, right? So things like that to consider, that the proximity between residential and commercial could be an issue if it's not planned accordingly. So if there are holes in our noise ordinance and holes in the lighting ordinance, we should look at filling those holes. That meets a standard that I think it's going to be acceptable to everybody. Ninety-degree cutoffs for lights, things like that, and not try to reduce amount of light pollution that goes to the sky, things of that nature.
And it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's fair to say this future commercial portion, that's, we're just setting aside the land today, not the layout of it, not the configuration.
Correct. I mean, and it's a question of what is it that the planning commission and council are more comfortable with? So, you know, if you'd like to see what the street configuration is, you can require that, but you can also just leave it as a blank slate and just say, "This is going to be future commercial as an outlot," and we'll figure it out when it comes back for development.
Because, like, the way it's laid out on here, you know, the canopy's kind of facing Gable Lane, and, you know, the new homes that are going to be constructed, plus the existing ones are still, are going to be able to see it. If we were able to flip it, you know, ninety degrees where that canopy's facing the other, the internal other commercial more so, you know, it's one of those things that you were pointing out, it's less light pollution to the residents in the area and more to the businesses that are there. It kind of protects and buffers a little bit, a little bit more, you know, things like that that we can look at possibly doing there if we wanted to focus in on that, but...
I mean, the other thing to consider, future homeowners are going to buy those homes understanding that that commercial area is there. That existing house on Fernbrook has no choice, and neither does the one to the north or whoever might be affected by that commercial piece going in there. So perhaps some other creative way to help buffer, again, those existing homes from whatever that future commercial area might look like.
Yeah, as far as the commercial goes, the one thing I hope that we can figure out up here to provide feedback on is the access. Like I mentioned earlier, I think there's feasibility concerns, and it's not just about seeing if the commercial comes, because they're saying that this is going to add eight thousand car trips, and this is going to also impact the timing of roundabouts. So it's more than just saying, "Let's figure out if the market accepts it." We might need something from the applicant to prove that this is, this is, the market will actually do this. It's one thing for residents to want it or not want it, but I think there's feasibility issues.
Was there anything on the access you wanted to?
I think we can wait till the applicant talks and the public, because there's going to be plenty of things that we've got to figure out.
Any other comments or questions? If we can invite the applicant forward.
So probably, I think, the first thing would be to, like to address is just the roundabout and the commercial area. But I think when we were here, we talked, and there was questions on the commercial. I'm not necessarily, I mean, I just think I'm looking at the city, anywhere else there's really any commercial is in the 2040, 2050 plan. You know, if it was to happen, I see it somewhere across a Dayton Parkway Road, which we haven't even identified the full route of it yet, and there are homes coming in. So I think that's just where, I'm here, I'm not saying it even needs to be commercial, but as we went through our stages last time, it said, really, the next thing to even see if a commercial would work, an EAW study would need to be done. So we went further with that. I think, as we were talking about the commercial, we just threw some things in there, so I do understand the residents on, you know, not wanting a gas station, but I don't have a buyer for a gas station. I haven't even marketed anything, right? I'm just trying to see here if everybody thinks that, hey, is there a commercial spot here? You know, with the timing of, you know, I don't know where else some commercial would happen in the city with all the residents there, and there already is Dean's there, there is the golf course, right? So if you were to take a route and pick one hundred and fourteenth, Rush Creek Parkway, pick one hundred and seventeenth, to me, it just kind of seemed a little bit unnatural. I can understand maybe a longer median. I don't know, does that make it too long of a turnoff and a gas station doesn't even work? I'm not sure. What I'm asking is to look at it and say, "Yeah, we're going to review it," and today, is it just an outlot? And maybe it comes back, and I have a feasibility study, I have, you know, but I don't have anybody, I didn't even try to market, because do I have anything to market? Did everybody say, "No, commercial doesn't work here, it's residential?" I will tell you that I've had a few people reach out to me on the area, none of them have been a gas station. One was a dome for baseball, you know, indoor baseball in the winter and practicing, and I don't know if that fits in the neighborhood. Another one is a, is a company that they're moving into Minnesota, and they just do transitional care, so not really fully assisted living, but you have surgery, you come out, and you need that, you know? And so another one was a daycare. So I'm just kind of looking, and as I've been going along, thinking, you know, maybe some of these HOAs, people could get sent to survey just to see what the interest is. But ultimately, it's going to be, you know, I'm looking for some suggestions, you know? I do think there could be a need for commercial there. I think maybe it'd be more feasible, you know, than what you think. I don't know, you know, maybe it's a banquet hall tied to the restaurant, you know? It could be an area that would grow. I think, one, commercial there couldn't happen, period. If something's designed on the road, you know, let's just say the roundabout's there, you know, who's going to build anything commercial there before that roundabout's built and has really even a good intersection into it? So I don't even see this is, you know, I would like to start the houses right away. If they're saying twenty-seven for the roundabout, it's not even anything really even happening, building in that commercial area for a while. And so if that was, you know, I understand there's a lot more design, a lot more thought there. That's why on the landscape plan, you know, I don't really even have any landscaping there, because, you know, I mean, obviously, that's going to be a part of that, too. So I think, you know, my goal here is just to say, hey, for us today, let's just leave it as an outlot with potential to keep, you know, reviewing it. As the roundabout, we just first put the roundabout in, then took some other area route, like, really kind of just copying what was over at Pine View, you know, for medians and everything. We would definitely, you know, think that there is no median there until something, you know, figured out. I guess I'm under the understanding that a large portion of that intersection, if, you know, if not all of it, is going to be burdened on me as the developer, you know? So I, that's would kind of lead to a little bit of the house density, why it didn't change. So I'm not expecting the city to pay for that up on Rush Creek. You know, and just to back up, you know, the county's going to make the ultimate decision. So when we did the Rush Creek Parkway Fernbrook interchange, we were, you know, we had proposed many things that aren't there. I ended up paying for that full improvement, and I don't know how many times the county had changed that. But, you know, first, you know, we had proposed wider turn lanes, a median in the middle where, you know, if somebody came across with a bike, they could sit in the median, then go to the other lane, have flashing lights. That was after I proposed to build a tunnel under the slope of the hill of Fernbrook, and the county denied that, too. So understanding that, you know, that intersection wasn't really, us, or me as a developer had no say in it, you know, county said it's their road, here it is, and at the end, what the design was, I paid for the improvements. So my point to it is ultimately, you know, that's probably what's going to happen at the roundabout, right? The county's going to take their design standard, and it's, you know, they're not going to look for me for any input. I do know, as we looked at, you know, one of the times, I thought, hey, maybe it'd be cool, there's some monuments there that says City of Dayton, because I didn't know they're putting a roundabout up at the other one, you know, for the neighborhood. So as we get a little further, I can talk about some of the PUD items, but, you know, I think mainly one would be the, you know, it would be just that commercial is, you know, if it would make sense to look at that, then I'll pursue it a little bit further. But first, you know, what if the EAW came back and had a lot of items on it that says this just doesn't even work for commercial, you know? So that's what I'm at, you know, one, taking care of the commercial, think of, address the roundabout, and that may change, too, you know? And maybe, maybe at the ultimate end of it, maybe the county decides, maybe that moves even slightly south a little bit, you know, which would change any of the layout that I'm even talking about on the commercial. So I think, you know, the city staff and county will have a lot of discussions there. But I do know, back when we developed Sundance Greens, the intention from the, from the county was to connect one hundred and thirteenth and one hundred and fourteenth at that time. That was our direction, because at first, the city, you know, just inquired and said, "Maybe on one hundred and thirteenth, there should be turn lanes." And if you look at that intersection, it's pretty tight, you know, with the restaurant, with the houses, and the county came back and said, "Look, we want to eliminate accesses onto the road," and it just made sense to connect the road to one hundred and fourteenth. So that was something that, you know, when we came with this design, really, we're using off of what we, you know, were kind of directed back in 2018. And the last part of where we were really looking to, you know, kind of took this to another step as commercial, it wasn't based on me, but if we were to take, you'd go down to the bottom where, it's in the Sundance Greens, but, yeah, if you went to the left, but it'd be right off of Glacier, say, just directly west of the restaurant, the council at that time asked us, you know, we had proposed townhomes there, they asked us to leave it open because they thought that would be a future commercial area. So that's why, if you look at there, there's no townhomes built. So it's kind of been things that, off of future commissions, future councils, I'm just leading, connecting the dots. Now, if you came back and said, "There shouldn't be commercial there, and it needs to be residential," or some different commercial, I mean, I'm not, it's not hardy for me, right? I'm, you know, the one thing is, you know, I've been in Dayton my whole life, I probably have just the same care as you guys do, it's, you know, and some of it's even looking beyond me, it's like, what's it going to look like for my grandkids? And so some of that, I think, you know, if it's twenty years for some other commercial area, ultimately, there'll be some other areas... area, ultimately there'll be some other areas, you know, developing, maybe that makes sense. But that's just my opinion, right? That's why we're here. And, and so I think that, that probably is a lot set on the commercial area. I don't know if anybody has any question around the roundabout.
You know, just to clarify, Tom, I don't think commercial is not bad there. Maybe what you're proposing is too much. I'm concerned about the market accepting it to the extent that, like, how do we try to make sure we solve access so it can be successful if the market does accept it? And that's a challenge and we don't know if the market's gonna accept it and, and it could like rearrange the whole residential development if you start shifting stuff around too much, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and if I, if I heard correctly, this is, the roundabout is gonna, I mean, the roundabout's gonna affect the access to the commercial, right?
Correct.
Because we're gonna have, we're gonna maybe have a median running down or not. We're gonna maybe have the roundabout there or maybe it's gonna be something else. And we're not gonna know that today. We're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to even decide that because the county's gonna be the ultimate sayer of that.
Yeah, I think, I think the big thing we need to decide is, and I'm gonna be looking to the civil engineers here up here, is how far in does that curb cut really need to be? Does it need to be the 660 feet to get into the commercials, my point?
But what I'm, where I'm going with this is if we leave it as an outlot like Tom's suggesting for future, we have that opportunity to make that curb cut into the commercial later.
Correct. And so the biggest thing that, and it really depends, too, if we close the, or connect the residential streets, like staffs connected and closed that one residential street. But in my opinion, if we don't close that and that one residential street's still coming down, is that that should line up with the intersection into the commercial. It shouldn't be its own staggered. And so I don't, I mean, there's a twofold question. I'm kind of looking at you guys, the civil engineers, to provide more feedback because and where our tolerance is, if we gotta be 660 feet, we really need to be that far away, I don't know.
I mean, I don't know, Nick, what you think, but my, my thought is this is a road that's 30 miles an hour. People are not driving super fast on it. We don't need, you know, the, the 114th, while it's gonna see a lot of trips a day, it's AM and PM peak and it's not, you know, it's not constantly someone zigging and zagging to get over to commercial is, is my thought on it.
So your thoughts is that 660 might not be, you might not need to go that far?
Yeah.
Well, those trips that you said don't factor in commercial though, right? That's just based on the residential usage?
I'd have to look at the.
The way I read it, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe you guys should look at it, but of the 10,000 or 11,000 trips, 8,000 was commercial. Which that's where I'm struggling believing it and, and understanding the timing of everything else, because if it actually did, if the market did accept it, that's the big difference of when you gotta construct those roundabouts.
Was that number in the staff report or is it just in the presentation?
Uh, it was in the staff report. And I believe it was in Tom's report.
Wasn't that Fernbrook lane, though? Total, not 114th? That's Fernbrook, which basically if we don't build one more house in Dayton, that road's gonna still keep, you know, probably have 8, 8,500 of it, you know, so.
Yeah, maybe I misinterpreted what it was, but it was in the staff report, it was right here. In the way it was set up, that's how it read. It had residential, residential office and delivery services. And the next line, it had it broken down, which I assumed was matching. 2,500 trips for residential, 6,700 were retail office and 1,700 were delivery services. That's how I interpreted. I could be wrong and it's gonna show up more in the EAW, I guess.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that's where we will see a lot of the more detailed traffic information. But generally speaking, from this engineer's perspective, those intersection spacings are in there for a reason, right? And I, I, I'm always, I generally inclined to follow them. I really, I really am. I mean, it's not something that you can fix after it's been constructed. It's too late.
And if it meant, I mean, I'm assuming 113th is vacated, you know, if that goes commercial and then there's a whole different road right away. And, and so, you know, if that median needs to be that long, it probably does direct different businesses that are in there. I, I think for me is, is, you know, my dad lives on the road, I can, you know, just as long as all the residents have been here and, and I see the traffic, you know? So not even knowing at the time that, you know, Rush Creek was gonna maybe, you know, get a roundabout, it just seemed to make sense that, hey, we gotta slow traffic down and what would slow it down would be a roundabout. So whether it's one, three's gotta be better than one, right? To slow it down. I, I do think, you know, like I said, no houses are not, traffic's gonna keep busy, residents on the streets still need to get their mail. So to me, that roundabout there is, is a positive and somehow we just need to work through the, the driveway issues on the couple, you know, the six homes there. But I, I do think then we, we have had discussion, you know? I've, I've met with all the six homeowners. I don't think any of them, you know, maybe they're, they're excited about the development. Definitely, I mean, I think the gas station has got everybody concerned. I'm like, hey, we could probably X the gas station today. But what we have done, right? We've agreed to, you know, I've looked at, I've seen those lots, they're flat, they're not graded well. You know, we've worked to say, hey, we're gonna find access for sewer to them because, you know, most of them don't have a second septic site, right? What happens if their, their septic fails? So they got sewer and water. But, but what we have done is the reason that there is the 65 foot wide lots in the back of them is so they do have bigger houses, you know, better, you know, you know, less density, maybe similar to what they have. We've agreed to put a bike trail that went along the back of there. So one of the things is, you know, if, if one of those residents wanna take a walk, right? They don't have to go out in Fernbrook, they can walk to their backyard, they can hit the trail and enjoy what everybody else has instead of have to walk in Fernbrook and come up. They're, we're gonna work on constructing a storm sewer in the back there, you know? Lee has a problem with, you know, water in his basement, you know, somewhere with some storm sewers, you know, maybe it requires, just like every new home construction, some pumps run into this storm sewer, so it exits, you know? But I mean, I don't know what's under the ground. We have gone a little bit further with some studying of water table and, and I think they believe it's a perch water table, but, you know, I'm not, I'm not the expert, I'm just knowing what, what we've done. And, and I sure don't, you know, I think anything we can do on the drainage and that back there would help. You know, I looked, I don't know if it's, if it's an alley, because we're already doing, you know, we have, I think we agreed we'd do landscape. It'd really be tough to berm it a lot if we're gonna put a bike trail back there. But I do know all of those houses that we did look are 60 to 70 feet from their garage to the rear property line. So if there had even be an alley, you know, I mean, the only thing I look is if I leave an alley, but say nobody ever builds, you know, the, the road in there, what's the use of it, you know? So maybe where the, you know, sewer easement could be on the back of their lines if they ever decide to run sewer. And then the road could go right on top of that, so, or an alley, excuse me. And I know there were some discussions maybe at first from some, you know, staff that, hey, connect the alley through the other way. You know, we made clear that, you know, you'd want it as a private road, no through or through, right? Because then, you know, people will be driving through it. And, and we did on, coming off 114th, have provided an easement so you could come off 114th and get to the property. But I'm, I'm by all means not asking, I don't wanna force the residents to do something right away that they don't wanna do. But I do understand that there, you know, stormwater, the trail, the buffering, obviously, we can do that right away. Anybody have any questions? So then I would like to kind of break the, the density down. And, and I think, I think one of the things is all those homes aren't projected, the, the 45s. So I'd say anything that's 50 and 55s, which are some where he has the arrow in the street coming through. And, and then on the southwest corner, those would be detached townhome villas, you know, just what's similar into Sundance Greens, but on the golf course and then out in the lanar section currently. And those would be all individual lots, no shared lots. Really, pretty much everything that we're proposing is no common lots like in a townhome. So every house would have their own lot. It would be HOA, but if we were to take around the pond, I, I think the question is, would really be number one, the density could be split in a couple. So is the city, you know, would, would they be in agreement to five foot side yard setbacks? You know, if it's seven and a half and seven and a half, then I'm gonna tell you there isn't a 40 foot lot or nor a 50 foot lot in the villas or the other ones. I'd have come back, you know, that's why I would've come back in March and everything would be 45s and 55s. And, and so that's a question that I really, you know, like to, to get a, a more concrete answer on. But in the center there, we're proposing single family homes. Just if you went south of Rush Creek Parkway, some of those lots there, probably about 40 homes in there are all 50 foot wide, single family lots. That was the trade-off we did there to not cut the woods and the trees. They gave me some additional density there. And I think if you look through there, those seem to blend in the neighborhood nice. But those, those would be, everybody would be responsible for shoveling their own snow, mowing their own yards and around, around the pond. So that's what would be proposed there. And then up in, in the south, or excuse me, the northeast corner where we have the alley. So some of the things, you know, we're about maybe more landscaping and buffer and I'm, I, I apologize, I gotta own this, I didn't count the trees, but I had the same person do the landscape design on Sundance Greens, is this one? And I just said, hey, you know, I know we put a few extra trees in and stuff, can you match that? She must've just went to the ordinance, you know, I, I don't know. And it kind of went through my engineer, but ultimately that's on me, I thought that was greater landscape. We hadn't proposed a berm and the reason that we had proposed alley load there is remember we're gonna have all the front of the houses, you know? I mean, if you look on a big road and you see the back of townhomes, right? And they all look the same and flat. Even no matter what kind of buffer I put on there, it's gonna take a while for the trees to grow. So, I mean, I, I believe the homes, you know, I'm planning to have MI Homes build the front. We do have some elevations that, I mean, I think those are some nice homes, you know, it adds a bunch of, of, you know, we don't have four homes that are the same color. Now you have different colors with a lot more architecture on them and, and four-sided architecture. So we just thought that would be a better view along the road. And I'm sure happy to berm it and, and, and buffer it, you know? But, but that is why we, we proposed the alley load there. The alley is private, so that will be on an HOA. The show, that there, we propose everybody to have their own yard, so it's not shared yard. The only thing we would do is that there is, is proposed, those homes actually are currently sitting at seven and a half, seven and a half setback. But if we went, you know, to a five, anywhere on a five, the easement is, you know, your five foot easement, you also get the five foot easement on your neighbor. So if you had to try getting something, you know, eight feet wide in your backyard, you can legally go on your neighbor's yard and not, you know, not have some conflict with them. But, but I think, you know, that idea was a different product and, and really just hopefully a, a better, you know, aesthetic. Basically, it's aesthetics totally. And, and then parking, you know, those would have front doors, you know? And Sergeant, I would propose, you know, cars are parking on the street and every, you know, the residence is in their driveway and then you don't have a bunch of driveways entering the, you know, only on one side of the road. And so you could have a lot more parking on the street than say a, a normal where everything's front loaded to the street, so.
Looking at the plan, Tom, Gable Drive on the plan is wider than Gable Alley and Gable Lane. And I'm assuming that's to accommodate on-street parking?
Yes.
Gable Lane probably wants to accommodate on-street parking?
And I think we could probably make it, make it wider, so, but yes, should accommodate it from the, because you really got on the west side, too.
Do you know if it's wide enough to accommodate parking on both sides or is it gonna be like a typical neighborhood if you park on both sides?
I believe it's only one sided.
You better plan carefully how you get through if you come head on with someone else.
Yeah, I, I believe it's only one sided. I don't really have, you know, if we move the pond down on 117th on that section, have an extra road right away and doing whatever, you know, really doesn't, you know, I, I understand that makes, makes sense. But I think, which would, that kind of is giving you the different products. I think the reason is, I did hear you guys loud and clear on, on the densities and, but at the council, really only had one member, and I was really, I mean, I talked to staff because I was really uncertain, right? So that's why although the EAW isn't done, I wanted, you know, wanted to come and, and be in front of you here in February. And, and I think some variables has changed, I think, when we first came through. So remember, I came through with many concepts, you know, some leaning staff just saying, hey, it makes sense for the city to have density in this south corner because it's the closest extent, right? You know, if you're off Dayton Road and had this density, you know, where, you know, it's just harder, that, that road isn't established and isn't close to a large, a large road. But I think there was also, you know, so I hadn't, one of the concepts, right, had an apartment there. I said, I don't build apartments, I didn't even have apartments. But, you know, if, it was, it was just options for opinions. But I do, I, I think at the time there was talking about maybe they could bank credits for the Met Council, which doesn't appear the case now, right? But when we first came in, I think, you know, staff was hoping, hopefully, you know, it was two reasons for building that density here. But, and, and one of the other reasons is, you know, there was a discussion at the council about affordability and really the way, you know, in inflation here, right? Some of the homeowners, the biggest thing, even on a single family house, is insurance. But the townhomes are really getting, you know, are difficult to insure. So if you look at the townhomes that are in Sundance Greens right now, those residents pay $300 a month HOA dues and a lot of, you know, yeah, there's some snow shoveling and things, but there's a, you know, you imagine here, if you took in the center around the pond where they had their own yard, right? You know, there's a master HOA due, but they're not getting their, you know, not paying to get their grass cut, snow shoveled, nor insurance. I mean, you have $300 more a home, you know, homeowner can put towards a house payment than, than a townhome. And, and actually townhomes with their other requirements are, you know, not as, you know, there are some economies, but there are other expenses that aren't in a single family house. So I do think those products were doing it to, to offer a real affordable, affordable home, which is still probably $450,000, you know? But if you take a townhome, some of them running 380 to, to 400 and then you got $300 of payments, you know, 300 a month on HOA dues, you know, 450 becomes affordable. So that, that's kind of what was proposed there around the, the center.
Just regarding the HOA, non-HOA, as far as snow and lawn around the pond there with the 45 foot lots, I believe it is?
Yeah.
Yeah. I haven't seen a ton non-HOA and I guess, I don't know if there's a concern, but have you had any feedback from M and I or any of the people you're talking to about the long-term, what's it, I just, I'm a little concerned in the long-term what it might look like without an HOA? When you have such small areas and, like, there'll be a lot of people that, you know, I like my neighbors when they cut their lawn, they like when I cut my lawn. I can see a lot of people just not even owning the lawnmower. And plus their garages are pretty small, too, so you gotta think about stuff like that, too.
Yep. And I mean, I guess if it came back and said the HOA for, you know, if we had to mow and shovel it, I mean, that sure could be looked at. But, but I, I am still on the board, I see the HOA and they had the insurance. And they had, the insurance company that they had notified them they are no longer insuring townhomes. So it is, is a, is an issue. So if anything, I think, you know, a little bit, you know, talking to staff too is like, hey, this might be as the city grows. And eventually somewhere where that parkway is identified and somewhere, you know, I mean, it's some city center, whatever, and who knows how long that is. Might identify, hey, these, this product works well, you know, as an alternative. That's, that's, that's the reasoning behind why we're proposing this. So then I think just the last would be is, you know, some, some of the, you know, talking about the PUD and the amenities. You know, we had planned heavier landscaping. You know, our, I think we got a pretty good plan on constructing the trails. Definitely going to do some, a monument, but based on decide, you know, the monument would probably be coming in. You know, the, I forgot, coming down on a hundred and fifteenth, whatever that, you know, the first, not, no. Coming in further to the neighborhood. No, well, that road we're going to eliminate there. That's where I had planned monument to go. But I'm also kind of just, if there's a commercial area, you know, then, then somewhere based on what would happen. And if it is, if it's some shops or something, then, then we probably need to have some community area there too, where everybody could come in, they can sit. But, but, and then that monument coming into there would be, you know, drastically different. But then we're also donating the three point two acres of park, but still paying all the dues of our park fees, not asking for that to be credited. Architecture, all the homes are LP siding, you know, that's just not front as a city code. It's four sided LP and, and all the windows wrapped, you know? So that adds about ten thousand dollars additional to, well, maybe with the front off, smaller ones seventy five hundred to ten thousand based on the, on the house. So. So we have, we have done a few other things. The decorative lighting, I asked on Sundance Greens last time. And I think between part of it's Excel, part of it was Canexus, you know, they had their standard lights. And I think at the time back there, you know, the city said, well, I think maybe it was both, both of them. I can't remember if it was just Excel or Canexus. Said, you know, if we order these extra lights, it's greater maintenance down the road. At the end of the day, the city owns the lights. And so we just kind of went off their choice, but we sure could put, you know, I would not be against putting a decorative lighting. But I think really, you know? It, it really just comes down to what do you think on the lot sizes, you know, at least even around the lit, you know? Really there's two different areas, you know, the, the pond area and then the alley loads column and, and setbacks.
So before we get there, I got a question. You mentioned we're getting rid of the Gable Lane and connecting to one fourteenth court or no?
Well, we, we, the reason we did that initially is for the EO, you know? The urgent water flow, you know, over and, and trying to make that grade work. We can probably make the grade work running the street through, but we really, you know, if we have a two foot contour in the backyards, you know? It's twenty feet in a backyard. It's a couple hundred feet on the street, you know, to make that work. So probably what ended up happening is that street coming up there would go slab on grade. And then, you know, I'm not exactly sure what that's going to do to say maybe those first houses that back up to the existing homes. For now, you know, at the sixty fives, there's definitely, those are basement homes, you know?
So what I was looking at here and just thinking about in my head with the, the product on Gable. And, and up in the, the smaller ones up in the alley area. Maybe consider the north side of the pond swapping product types. To have a larger product type around the pond on one fifteenth with what's on one hundred and fourteenth court, if we're going to connect the two.
So, and where would I swap it with?
Which pond are you speaking with?
You're talking the center.
The center pond, yeah. Maybe some of the, the north homes there, the, the ones on a hundred and fifteenth avenue. Swapping for the ones on one fourteenth court. That'd be my, my thought.
So it's essentially the one fourteenth court that are, looks like they're fifty and sixty foot lots. As well as the stuff on Gable Lane when you first turn right, if you close that road. I believe what Peter's suggesting is have a consistent product of bringing those smaller lots over there and moving those bigger lots in that section to around the pond.
Yeah.
But I think then that was the, as we were working and trying to keep the existing neighborhoods on Fernbrook, you know?
I'm not saying change the ones on, on, I'm, not, not the ones on Gable. Just the ones around the hundred and fourteenth court.
Okay.
And maybe make it similar to what's on Gable or.
Yeah, I think if that street comes through, we're changing it, right? That has to be consistent all the way out.
You could either take these ones here on the north side of a hundred and fifteenth or even the south side. And just kind of swap around to, to make a more consistent product type through there.
Yeah, I think what we would probably do is make that consistent up through there and then. Then I'd probably add some of those. You know, maybe on the north side of the, the pond, that product could change a little bit on that side. You know, to, to go across closer to the street, maybe some of the villa product in that cul-de-sac could. I mean, those really aren't villas. I'll take that back. Those are single families, but they'd be larger.
Any other comments, questions?
We might have some, I believe we're opening a public hearing, so.
I know a, a question came up regarding setbacks. I would strongly discourage anything less than seven and a half, seven and a half feet. Five feet, you're getting pretty darn close. When you have to try to figure, what can I do to accommodate trying to put something into my backyard with my neighbor? It's like, I shouldn't have to have that concern or easements or anything like that between my neighbor and I, which is literally. Spitting a pumpkin seed across. I mean, you're ten feet away, right? So I, I think seven and a half feet is, is still a little close, but five feet for sure for me is, is way too. Close of a setback, so.
And, and I think some of this here was just as, as much as if that, you know, and if that's the answer, right? That's, but I mean, if you look, you know, I, I think if you go to some of the communities, right, it was just kind of eye opener, maybe for everybody, you know? And, and the commission and council, the Met Council's pushing four units to acre, right? You think of this density here and we're only three point two, so.
For the sake of providing the feedback and consistent feedback to you and enough of it, I concur a hundred percent with what you said. Five foot is a no go for me. So that's two up here. And, and just so we don't get caught in the same issue as when the concept plan came around, I think maybe one person said it and we had a couple of head nods. I will, for the record, five is a no go for me.
I agree too.
I have a little more flexibility with a product type as long as there's not a ton of it. So I think that you need to bring that, I mean, like I don't want to see more than like probably ten percent or twenty percent of the things that get. Maybe the forty foot wide lots, if you had a small little niche neighborhood, I think it would be okay, but not the majority or anywhere near the.
Yep.
The forty foot wide lots are the majority of this proposal.
Yeah, correct, which.
Let me ask you the question. Let's just say there's no forty foot lots coming off a hundred and thirteenth, but up in the alley load. Area. Those are all forty. If just that area was forty. With alley.
I've got concern with parking and maybe we could see an exhibit and, and where we could potentially park cars through there. The discussion on the width of Gable, it certainly is wider through there. If staff, the staff recommendation were to go forward that Gable Lane and Gable Drive became public and not private, it'd be wider automatically.
Yep.
But.
And, and I think that's.
I think there's some parking needs over there.
Yeah, and I think that's.
Bays or something that could be added.
And I, I feel like related to that is widening Gable Lane a little bit so you can actually park a car on one side of the street. If that's possible, I know things are getting tight.
Yeah, but I think, I think, you know.
One way loop.
These are, these are all.
Drive, Gable Drive, Gable Lane is one way loop and then you have the alleyway, which is two, two way for in and out. Then you could park one side of the street all the way around and have a drive lane.
I think that gets goofy with the one sixteenth avenue connection to Breberon Trail.
I, I think though we can, we can make sure we got parking on one side there, so.
The other thing to consider too is these are, I mean, they're obviously all two car garages, right?
Correct.
But they are relatively small garages, twenty by twenty.
Relatively small, that's a really small two car garage. You put a truck in there, it's a one stall garage with, with, with your garbage cans in there, right? So the other thing to consider is that, you know, I mean, I have two adult kids who have a vehicle. So there's four vehicles at times at my house. And you'd be limiting obviously the, or not, if you had, you know, half of those families had three cars instead of only two cars. Now it's not guest parking, now it's permanent parking. So where am I parking my vehicle for my residence and it's inevitably on the street somewhere? So, I mean, it, it leads to density issues, it leads to where, where are you parking, right? I mean, I, I appreciate that Gable Drive is widened for that specific purpose. But again, when you create neighborhoods like this, inevitably there's going to be people who are going to be moving in there that have three cars, four cars, whatever it might be. And now I'm parking in front of my neighbors or two down and now where do they park? And so it becomes an issue. It, it does.
Street parking makes me nervous in general because, well, it snows here and we got to make that snow go away. So if we, if we think that there's a chance that a resident of one of these units needs to park on the street. I don't know how you get it to move so you can plow the street.
That's inevitable.
You know, I mean, if they live there, unless they're going to work or school, that car's there, you know? And, and, and streets get plowed at three, four in the morning all the time.
Well, I would tell you that you'd be then similar to any, anybody in a townhome, right? Townhome has the, the same issues. These are looking as an alternative to townhome, you know, and just to have some more architecture. You know, and then the town, you know, they'll usually come into a private, you know, a private little drive and they're on each side. And they're parking, you know, in the driveway and, and on the street. So I, I don't, I don't think it would be any different than a townhome. And if anything, how this is looping with the front and not double loaded along Fernbrook, probably could offer more parking than we normally would see. So I would, I mean, I understand the point, but I think I'll look and see if I could address that, that parking on the road. So I think, I'm not saying that, you know, it can, not, not it's going to happen, but none of these are four bedroom homes, you know? I don't think, you know?
Correct.
Anything can happen. So I'm not going to say no, nobody with four cars or five cars are there, but you know, many might have one or two.
I'd like to get at least some consensus up here before we open the public hearing on the future commercial. I'm in favor of it just being an outlot today. And with that, I would like to refrain from hearing comment on any commercial going in, just for limited time purposes. That's my proposal. I would like to see if that recommends, resonates with, with you guys.
I guess the only reason I struggle a little bit and we're not having any action tonight, so it could easily be deferred to the next meeting. But we are, there is a proposed comp plan amendment to bring this to commercial and a, and a zoning. So I don't have a big issue with that, but what you're suggesting Peter for tonight, but it's a conversation that has to take place if we're going to re guide it, rezone it.
Can you leave it as an outlot and rezone it at a different time?
That'd be my preference.
That's kind of where I was.
That's where I, I was thinking it was going. I mean, yes, part of the PUD and, and I don't want to, I don't want to just say to get through and think, yeah, we do need to come back. But it's just even the question, you know, to me would be if you think there's something to look at down the road, then let's leave it, you know, as an outlot. And, and deal with it later, or are you saying no, it, it needs to be residential?
I think the biggest thing we need to solve is your access, because if you don't have good access. You're cutting off all discretionary retail users that rely upon convenience. You're basically are going to be stuck with destination retailer, daycares, stuff like that. Nothing wrong with that, but you, you've already, it's already going to be challenging to find people to come out here because there's not enough rooftop yet. And so when you limit that market, it makes it even harder.
And, and I think where I'm just, you know, and, and I'm okay because I, I don't even think I can market it to the county gets their design done, right? We know what the roundabout is. And then at the end of that, that time, it might be, it doesn't make sense, right? Like I said, I have not marketed, I don't have anybody, uh, because I just don't even think it's ready. But I do think looking down the road, thinking that the city isn't going to have any commercial like this possibly for a while. You know, I'm okay to leave it because we're not going to build all those houses today anyhow, you know?
Yeah, my only concern here too is the fact that if you don't know, it's definitely going to be commercial in future. If you don't know that and perhaps it does turn to residential, the whole plan changes, right? I mean, you're going to be changing a significant part of maybe potentially where streets are going, where houses are located. And you want to fill in that area, correct, if it's not commercial?
We'd, yes, you'd want to fill it in, but I think that's more of a circle. I mean, I would, I would, I guess I disagree on, on changing that. Because the one fourteenth location is going to happen, right? The county is going to make us do that. So everything north of a hundred and thirteenth, a hundred and fourteenth, you know? So, and, and the other thing that, you know, we're not only missing in my billing around about, but you know, I'm, I'm reconstructing all of a hundred and thirteenth too, you know?
I, I mean, I would think that you'd want that market analysis first to understand if you even are moving forward with the comp plan amendment, right? It's not a small thing to amend the comp plan. It takes a lot of jurisdictional agreements and time and effort to be able to do that. And the council has to say, we're on board with guiding this area for that use in the future. And if you don't know if that use is going to work, then I don't see why that's even on the table at this point to move forward with the comp plan amendment. Until some kind of market study is done to say, I know for sure I could get these types of uses in here. Then come back to the planning commission saying, are these uses that are going to be amenable to what we want to see, potentially to the council? So with that, you know, making this an outlot is fine. I, I don't see any reason to do a comp plan amendment at this point for that reason. And then if you are developing all these other parcels and it looks like commercial will work. It's a long process to come back to us to say, I want to now plant this area for commercial use, amend the comp plan, so on and so forth. So the risk is, is, is yours, obviously, to have to go through all of that. It sounds to me that it's a little premature to even note if we should move forward with any kind of comp plan amendment to guide this area for commercial.
And I think, I think just part of it was, you know, the first step to drive that was an EAW, right? And, and so we did the first part of the testing. I mean, if you wanted to change the comp plan and said, hey, it's going to be commercial, but you're going to have to come back in. And, and, you know, obviously we're going to get everything need to be approved. But I'm okay, either way, I'm just trying to be upfront and have the discussion, right, with everybody. So I understand what you're saying. I'm okay coming back at a later date.
I think the best direction we can give you, and I think this is where Peter was going, is let's talk about the access. Because that way you can take that to the market and other people, because that's what's going to dictate whether these people will come or not. And it's, I don't, do we have consensus that one fourteenth court and Gable Lane are connecting? Meaning staff's recommendation. Because that's going to drive part of this decision. And part of that decision also has to do with the alley behind those homes on Fernbrook. To me, I don't think the alley behind the home, to those homes does anything. It's us pretending like we're fixing it, but who's going to pay to reconfigure their homes? I don't, I don't, and it's an easement, we've already have discussions on the easement up in the Quilling parcel that it's, I don't think we're solving anything. So I don't think the alley is part of the question in my mind, but if we can answer that question on Glacier Lane, fourteenth court. And if all, whatever that commercial parcel gets developed with, access has to come down to Glacier Lane, if that's the consensus. That's what we need to give. Tom? access has to come down to Glacier Lane, if that's the consensus, that's what we need to give Tom, um, so he can, you know, vet it out that way. Or if we think we can allow a curb cut, you know, maybe halfway compromise. Um, if we did put a curb cut halfway, I would strong, it would require turning lanes in my opinion for commercial.
I agree.
And, and I think as we phase it, really, right, where 113th is gonna have to be open, really, you're probably only constructing that up to Glacier Lane and every, you know, it'd be foolish to construct the rest until the, until the, um, you know, roundabouts, um, built. So realistically, the homes back along the ones in Fernbrook probably aren't even going into 2027 anyhow, you know? But.
You're talking a left turn in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not, not going all the way around.
The right turn in from 114th, they don't need a turn lane for that.
Correct, correct. Well, yeah, like.
Yeah, it's a thirty mile an hour road, I'd say you don't.
Yeah.
It's, it's the one coming off the roundabout in, yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the commercial pod there and getting some more feelers out to see what's reasonable, what, what the market might be able to drive there. I think that is one thing Dayton is missing is these little pods of commercial that can support residential. I love the idea of a daycare. As much as I love sports stuff, I don't know if a dome would be necessarily the right thing here, but I mean, it's nice to hear that somebody tries.
Hey, like, hey.
There's other spots.
So those are the people, right? Those are the people that ask, they say, hey, where's, where's the city park, right?
Yeah.
Put it next to that.
Yeah.
I'm, uh, um, but I think they wanted to have some other effects of, you know, uh, you know, kind of maybe like the pints and paddles. So there's, there's beer and there's food and versus just maybe CDA, you know?
Yeah.
And destination places like restaurants, they can handle different, better, or worse access. But if you want discretionary retail.
And, and actually I, I do, uh, you know, I got a cousin that owns some restaurants too. She asked about a spot, so. But I, you know, like I said, I think we just need to get the rooftops in and the intersection needs to get built. And I think really just back to the alley is, is just trying to get a better streetscape. That, that's the reason of the alley, you know, you see that along Fernbrook. And I think, I think that's where maybe everybody maybe is, is not seeing what I am, you know? Maybe, but I think the streetscape along Fernbrook with the alley load and those fronts change, change a lot, right?
Yeah, you're talking.
Yeah. I was talking, yeah.
Darren was talking the alley quarter behind the six existing homes. And I think, I think there's a difference there between what's being provided and what's reality.
Because there's no alley.
There's no alley being proposed.
And I don't think we need to, well, it was in staff's suggestion.
Oh, staff's suggestion.
I don't necessarily think that we need it, because I don't think it's solving anything unless.
I, I think it just, I think at, at least if we put the off of, off of 114th, at least off of a property, give them, uh, you know, an easement there now, whether they use it or not. I mean, it, what it, all it does is like when we sat and discussed, it's just flexibility, right?
Especially for utilities.
Yep.
It's, it's flexibility for utilities and, and, and potentially future access.
Yeah, but if we're not gonna allow a curb cut here, why would we? I guess that's where I'm struggling with it.
And I'm, I'd echo the, up on Gable, up in the northeast there, I like the alley loading there. And because it provides a nice buffer off of Fernbrook, you've got the primary buffer, you've got a road and then more trees before the houses. I don't know if the economics could support it, but, you know, if four or five of those could be more bungalow style, single story with a half second story or something, just to break up the, the volume vertically as well. The roof lines a little bit, I think could be nice, um, but the economics have to support that. You know, I agree, the alley behind the existing homes doesn't solve anything. I would agree with combining 114th to Gable to, to take that first turn, um, away to try to help just to flow into that roundabout a little bit. Like I said, I'm supportive of continuing to, to vet the commercial use there to see if it's possible. I would be supportive of a gas station convenience store in that area, whether it's right in that corner or not. You see neighborhood gas stations sprinkle all around the Twin Cities, right in the middle of neighborhoods, right? I mean, it's a thing, I used to bike to one a couple of blocks away from my house when I was growing up, right? Buy my baseball cards, I mean, it's a thing. You know, reach out to QuickTrip or Casey's or somebody and just see like, you know, is this a spot they would even consider? Right, just to get some idea, like, is it even feasible, uh, possible? You know, it would serve this neighborhood, I mean, there's a lot of rooftops coming in this area. I mean, if every single one of those houses bought gas or once a week, like, it's a lot of flow, right? So.
There's already a lot of houses out there too.
Yeah.
So you're, I mean, that's why I, I don't anticipate that there wouldn't be any kind of room for some kind of commercial. I think there probably is, you just have to do that analysis. There's certainly a lot of new homes out there that could certainly help with supporting some kind of commercial.
Family-owned dentist office, you know, would go into a little mall like this, right? Like, I think there's a lot of uses that could benefit the community.
I, I live in this neighborhood and we would, the, the neighborhood would use a, a small commercial area like that without a doubt. But I, you know, to Jeff's point, I think we're too, too early on the, the comp plan amendment and outlawed it. I think that makes a ton of sense, but if you're looking for feedback on the commercial, I would, I would have loved to hear you say, yeah, I've got people just pounding the door down to get in here, right? I've got Bill Suparet that wants to put in like a neighborhood gas station slash supermarket, if you've seen one of those, right? Something like that.
Well, that's a little more friendly to than not as chained out. I mean, they have a few, so I, I'd, I'd agree with you.
But the market's gotta be there and I don't think we can make that decision. Question for staff, do we need to have the applicant withdraw that request?
Well, it's, I guess my recommendation is just continue it as it is and then address everything in March.
Got it.
When we get to March, if, if the applicant wants to withdraw that, or if the planning commission wants to recommend not approving that portion, that's fine. I, I just want to add the whole point of the EAW is because of the commercial component.
So.
Okay.
So we take the, the street up and run long back, um, of, of, um, oh, I don't know, is that Gable going up there behind the Fernbrook homes?
Yep.
And say those are all sixty-fives, right? Because it's gonna match going up there. If we took around the ponds and had, say, a fifty-foot wide lot with seven and a half, seven and a half, and it's a single home, just like the fifties that are on the south side of Rush Creek Parkway.
I would support that. The additional sixty-fives are a benefit. Currently as it's drawn right now, I think we've got a bunch of forty-fives and forties around that center pond.
Yep.
So going to fifties over there, that's a net benefit. That selfishly fixes my initial concern here of this way too many units, way too many small lots.
Was it seventy-eight percent off of deviation, deviation from what we're?
Yeah, so the, the, our three district guideline is no more than thirty percent of the lots being less than sixty-two feet, whereas with the proposal, seventy-eight percent.
And we're at seventy-eight right now.
But that, and that was why, you know, the PD, PUD was there, it was commercial, it was really the roundabout, right? You know, not many times we expected to pay for the whole roundabout, right? So those were some items, but. Any other questions for me? All right.
I think you, uh, before you step away, Tom, I think you should vet the, for future commercial area for senior housing too. You could, you know, just two or three stories.
Yep. I, I tell you, I'm, I'm looking right now, um, well, I'll take, so are you taking, thinking like assisted or see?
Most of them that are, well, you have the smaller ones that just have assisted or memory care. But a lot of the successful ones have all three because there's a transition.
Yep. And, and maybe that's why it'd work. I'm telling you, I'm working with my dad and they're right now, we have him transitional and it's, it's, um, yeah, trying to get into somewhere long-term is, is, it's a waiting list wherever you go. Because on the Sundance Greens, the apartment site we have, that's figured like a fifty-five plus. And, and we've struggled to find people there right now.
And the memory care and the assisted living, they're gonna do better to visibility to traffic because everybody that drives by it every day, that has to, you know, look for a place for their parents, the first place they start looking is the places that they see when they're driving by.
You could look to Beehive, right, on Weaver Lake Road, across from Boston Scientific and Maple Grove, that'd be a, kind of a perfect size fit for something like this. It's a nice example.
Yeah, I mean, those, uh, suggestions, like I said, I'm not, I don't have, you know, except plan and maybe, maybe that's when I'd come back, I could look at that as a, you know, marketing, so. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I guess, are we taking comment on the, the, before we open the public hearing, are we taking comment on the commercial? I guess maybe.
Everybody we advertise for, right?
All right. I guess I would, I would encourage as I open the public hearing, um, at eight, eight-thirty, I would encourage that we don't know the uses today and we don't know what they're gonna be in the future. So, public hearing is open, if those who'd like to come forward.
First of all, I want to welcome you to council.
Thank you.
And I want to say.
It's a planning commission, council not quite yet.
Yeah. You're the only one I've ever heard talk about the concerns of the residents that are already there.
Wait, I'm sorry, Marsha, if you could.
Okay. So, and I'm kind of object to the.
Sorry, Marsha, if, if you'd state your name and.
Marsha Grover, 11320 Fernbrook Lane. This is going in across the street from my house, I've been here before, you all know the spiel. And I do object to you guys sitting here talking about gas stations and then saying, oh, I don't think you can talk about gas stations. I don't think that's right. If you're talking about it, then I should be able to talk about it too. So here I am again, and I'm talking about the commercial district. And I'm saying I don't think it's needed, no matter what the developer says. We do not need a gas station there. I want to remind you guys and maybe Jeff here, that there are already five gas stations in the area south of South Diamond Lake Road and four gas stations south of 117th. And they all sell groceries except Kish's over on the industrial park. And two more gas stations are being planned at the interchange on the freeway. So why do we need seven gas stations south of South Diamond Lake Road, six gas stations south of 117th? They're all within a two to five mile radius. And when you, when you put in a commercial district, not only are you inviting all people from all over the area, but you're also gonna have semis pulling in there, you're gonna have delivery trucks pulling in there, you're gonna have a lot of traffic trying to navigate that little cul-de-sac there. And not to mention the noise and the traffic, the car noise, the car wash noise, because every, every gas station that gets built has a car wash now. Have you ever been to a car wash and gone through there and heard the noise? Can you imagine that in the neighborhood? This is, this is a housing development. It's not a shopping center. You're gonna have kids, you mentioned riding your bike to the store to spend money? I did the same thing with my friends when I was a kid, but I didn't do it on a two-lane road where there was traffic at fifty-five miles an hour. And now you're talking about having an additional five hundred cars after school during rush hour when those kids are gonna be riding their bikes on Fernbrook Lane. So that's something to think about too, if you're gonna put in a convenience store gas station. And as for a coffee shop, you can get coffee anywhere. You can get coffee at Dean's Manor to go, you can go down to the golf course and get coffee to go. You can get it at any other gas stations except Kish's. You can go over to Target, which is only a couple of miles away. They've got a Starbucks there and across the street from there is Daily Dose, which is really a nice coffee shop. I like that place a lot. And so, you know, you're gonna have all these cars. Rain Tree Plaza, over there, has tried to have a takeout pizza and delivery business time after time after time after time, and they all fail. Rain Tree Plaza is struggling right now and it has been for years and years and years. What makes you think that this won't happen over here? And a daycare, there's one across the street from this location at the church and they're always advertising openings. A daycare a few feet away from a gas station, a coffee shop, busy roads, delivery trucks? Do you think that's really a good idea? I don't think so. And just last week, this is not about that, but just last week, I found out there's gonna be like a holding pond kind of across the street from me also. And there's gonna be a pipe running into Fernbrook Lane. And that pipe is supposedly to drain the water from our ditch. Well, number one, we don't have a ditch. Number two, we, we, we don't have a ditch. And in the fifty-two years that we have lived in this house, fifty-two years, we've never had water sitting in our front yard. Our front yard is sloped kind of to the north and to the south. So rainwater runs off to the north and rainwater runs off to the south. We don't have a problem with water in our ditch because we don't have a ditch and we don't have a water problem. I don't understand that. I don't want anybody messing around with my property when I haven't asked for it. Again, if you allow this commercial district to go in, you're setting a precedent and you're, you're just kind of throwing the comp plan out the window. And if you throw the comp plan out the window, maybe I'd like to build a pole barn on my property. I raise some horses or sheep or pigs or goats, oh, and chickens, you know the price of eggs, we could use some chickens. Or maybe I would build a store on my property and maybe your neighbors would like to do that on your property and next door to you. If you do it for one, you do it for all, hmm, will the possibilities be endless or will you keep to the comp plan?
Thank you. I'm Randy Bolson, I'm at 11441 Fernbrook. I'm one of the six. I've heard a lot of good and some bad, so let's just get the bad first, because it's like, yeah. Going around the homes, I got a truck, I'll use it. Please, when you do the roundabout, just consider those six, that'd be great. I mean, just let us go into our yards, really. The, I like the idea of not having the, the trail behind the house or the, the road. None of us are gonna change our garages and drive back there, not a one. We got homes that are fifty years old, everything's established. There's no reason to put that road back there so as to drive back there, we're not gonna do it. So, uh, what Tom thought, you know, one of the things that was proposed, if there absolutely has to be something on that commercial, well then we don't want all the extra traffic, but a home, uh, uh, for the living? Maybe, maybe it's compromised. At least there's not a lot of people coming in more to our neighborhood because of that commercial area. I've been talking to Hennepin County forever on their planning commission, I forget the guy's name, and he says, no, I know you got a busy road, but it still doesn't warn a four-way stop sign or anything like that. So I'm very optimistic about the roundabouts to slow the traffic down. And just like, please, don't make me drive up and around my house just to get into my own room, my own home. That's all I'm saying, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Powers and I live at 11461 Fernbrook Lane, one of the six homes there that you've been talking about. And I do think there needs to be some more work done around that, those six homes. And, you know, what should be done from a planning perspective there? Not just, okay, somebody thought an alley would be good, no, that's not gonna be a good idea because we're not gonna change our, our garages to go out that way. But there needs to be some sensible thinking about those six homes that are there that have been there for sixty and seventy years. So, uh, that's the other thing. And the other thing is, you know, we always take the cart before the horse and we never really think about the traffic on Fernbrook Lane. Really thinking about the infrastructure of Dayton itself. And, you know, what is the infrastructure of Dayton? I looked at some of the 2040 plan and I don't see much for roads, access anyplace else or anything like that. And maybe there needs to be some consideration for infrastructure. And maybe there needs to be some consideration for infrastructure at Dayton. The other thing I think that John brought up was, you know, the two-hundred-and-sixty-six homes and what kind of traffic that's going to bring in, and I won't go into that. And Marcia has brought up the fact about the commercial. And my husband and I are totally against that commercial part. And I've talked to Dean and Tom about it, and I said, "I don't care what he says to me, there is nobody that's going to change my mind about that." Especially, there's a family that just moved in there, I think about a year ago, and that's Mike and Sue Hernandez, and they are the first home on those six. And that's where the roundabout, you guys, and I think you need to be looking at the roundabout there as well. That home sits right there. I mean, what are you going to do with that? I mean, it's going to cause stress, it's going to cause heartache for that home. He wasn't told that there was going to be a roundabout. He wasn't even told that there was going to be any building going on. So, shame on those people. The realtor, and even, I don't know about Dayton, so I can't answer that, but the realtor should have surely brought that up to him. And, let's see, what else do I have? The other thing is, I know that Zach had been working on some drainage issues with Lee Holquist and that, and so I'll just leave that aside, but that's another issue that I have. Also, I don't think really that there's a plan about the light pollution in Dayton, and I think that should be taken care of. I can tell you what, on my home, at Sundance Golf Course, there's a light that shines right into my bedroom. And thank goodness, I have blinders on there, you know, so I can't see it. But there's no business plan for light pollution, and that should be taken up as well. Let's see, what else do I have here? I, I don't know how many of you have actually taken a walk or a drive out to the DCM Farm site, and really understand what he's talking about. And, and just walked the, the place, and look at where Mike and Sue Hernandez's home is, and where that roundabout is going to be. Because I, I'm not sure that roundabout is the right place for it. Now, I think a roundabout should go up where Elm Creek Park is, where the church, and maybe you call that Rush Creek.
Rush Creek.
Okay, and I call it Elm Creek Park.
Elm Creek Park.
Okay. That's where a roundabout should go, or a four-way stop. Something needs to happen there, because we have people from Sundance walking their children in a stroller across that intersection, and we have people from Sundance who don't think they should follow the traffic rules about stopping at the stop sign. And the police, we've asked them to come out, but where do they sit? On the north side of Dean's Country Manor. Well, a lot of good they're going to see there. So, I think that there's, you know, some things that need to be really looked at from a planning commission, where these roundabouts really should go, working with, I know you don't like working with Hennepin County, but he has, he has called us back, and, you know, had us on a planning committee there and stuff, and he's turned us down and stuff like that. But we keep going back, and keep going back. And that's the only way you're going to get anything done with Hennepin County. So, let's see, what else do I have? Oh, those, those little green lines that are on the map.
For you, Tom, I don't know what those mean. If they're, if they're large?
Yeah, it's where we're at. They're on the school maps and everything.
Well, they're on that, that map that we just got, which incidentally is not much different than the one that we've had.
Is it this map, or colored map?
Yeah, well, no, that map.
Well, it appears to be Storm Shore.
Can you see those little green things?
Storm Shore, yeah. Appears to be Storm Shore.
There what?
Storm Shore.
Storm Shore, oh. Well, that's what Marcia was complaining about too. So, I won't go on anymore, but I think the planning committee has a lot of work to do around this site, so. And I have this document, if you would like it.
Oh, Marcia. Is, is that-
I had a few more.
Okay. Thank you. Right on, existing 113.
I'm Dustin Veroniac. I live off 114th Avenue, 13725, down on the cul-de-sac down there. And I just had a couple, a couple of things. I'm glad you guys are addressing the roundabout issue on 114th. My wife, a couple of years ago, was rear-ended on that with my kids in the car, so that's been a top priority for us. I'm also wanting to make sure that we, you guys, work on trying to get some walking paths or bike paths to access from, you know, 114th down, I mean, ideally down towards Eastman Nature Center, because, and our kids want to be able to go and bike down there and traverse that way. I think this will be a great opportunity to somehow incorporate some sort of pedestrian access down there for the residents on there. What else did I have? The third thing was, I guess I'm not, I am not opposed to having a limited commercial area there. I think that would be quite convenient, but I'd like to try and make sure that the city keeps it, I would say, like, I don't know, more of a safe commercial stuff, something family-friendly, if you will, in that. And the last point I want to make, it would be very nice if the, a council would also work on, when new developments come in near the area, to somehow get some more infrastructure into some of the residents around, specifically internet access out there. We're still on two-way to dial-up up there, so. And I know that the PED is right there in that, so I don't know if there's anything that the council can do to kind of somehow work that in, when you are doing work in an area, somehow give some, you know, throw a bone to the existing residents here on some of that infrastructure. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Forgot my name that year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Keith Grover. Most of you know me, Jeff. I'm glad that you're here, your breath of fresh air. Always a, another opinion is always good when you're having discussion. I have some, some real issues with, well, 11320 Fernbrook Lane, by the way, so for Jeff's, right across the street from where the holding pond is that they're talking about on 113th. My wife and I have lived in that house since 1974. I grew up over on Elm Creek Road, which is half a mile over the hill, and so I've watched that whole area change. It was all farms when I was a kid, and now it's not. And I understand it's not going to stay farms. I mean, I'm not, not naive at all. We were talking about specifically the, the commercial property that you, that has been discussed about being right across the street from our house. There are six houses down the street that you've talked, you know, quite a bit about. There are those of us that live just across the street from this development that are going to be affected just as much as the houses that are right adjacent to this property. It's in my front yard. When I look out my front window, this is what I'm going to see. Instead of cornfields and beans and, and a family farm down the road a quarter of a mile, I'm going to see this new development. What I see on the left side of 113th, or the south side, is a bunch of condominiums to me that look like fancy barns. I mean, they're the ugliest thing I've ever seen. I don't understand why we built those. They, they just look ugly. I watched them being built, I'm a carpenter's kid, I wouldn't live in one of them, but that's another story. The issue I'm dealing with in my mind is the commercial development and what it would do to our quality of life, living in our homes. We've lived there all our lives, we've raised our kids there. We have, my grandkids still live over on the farm on, on Elm Creek Road. The traffic going in and out of there, it's, it's insane now, and you guys are talking about adding, or even thinking about adding some commercial development there without any infrastructure changes, it's going to be more insane. I mean, I play Frogger to try to get my mail across, I wouldn't even let my wife go out and get the mail anymore, it's just too dangerous. The noise that's going on, they're not even building across the street from me, they're still building over by Sundance. The amount of trucks and traffic going in and out of 113th is just crazy. It's constant. We used to have a couple of delivery trucks that went to Dean's Manor every couple of days, or back to the beer truck to go back to Sundance Golf Course. We're used to seeing that. But the trucks that go in and out of there now, there's so many, I don't even know where they're all coming from, and what they're delivering, and what's going on. It's just crazy. The, the commercial area there, and what's been sent out to all of us, you know, we're not talking about a gas station, right? Well, that's what's drawn on every map that we've looked at. There's a, there's a gas station on that corner, and I don't know, I don't think they picked that out of the air. Someone thinks that that's a good thing to have right in the middle of a housing project. We have our housing project on the east side of 113th. Those of us that have lived there for years, some of, some of us had, you know, a couple hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty-foot deep plots, they're a little bigger. Some of us have, you know, three, four, two and a half acres on that side of the road, but all of us are looking at that out there, and we're looking and thinking, geez, am I going to be sitting there with lights twenty-four-seven, traffic twenty-four-seven? Because right now, the traffic is in the morning rush hour, the night rush hour. During the day, it lessens up, so it's not quite as bad, it's almost tolerable. But if you're talking about putting something in there that's going to bring people in there all the time, you're taking almost an, almost intolerable thing, part of the day, and a totally intolerable thing twenty-four-seven. When I, when I sit in my living room window, do I look at the streetlights from the gas station? Do we look at the streetlights from the businesses that are, that are talked about being put up there? We're in the middle of a housing project. We've been here for fifty, sixty years. You're talking about making the streets, or the, the land across from us, part of another housing project, but then you're plugging this right in the middle of this whole project. That's not where it belongs. That's not what the comp plan says. That's not what the council has talked about for years. They, they go through all these meetings like this, and they talk to residents, they put these comp plans together, they have hearings, and people like me, and all these good people that have come in here tonight discuss all these things. The council, with the wisdom that they have in running this city for years, puts together that comp plan, and then I come to these meetings, and nobody pays any attention to it. The first thing I hear from you folks is, "How do we make your project work for you?" You don't work for the developers, you work for the citizens of Dayton. I don't care how his project works, I don't care if it ever works, and I don't have anything against Tom. The kid grew up across the street from me, I love that family. That's not the issue. The issue is, you work for the citizens of Dayton, we live here, we're going to be living here. I plan on not leaving here for my, for the rest of my life, which hopefully will be a long time, but you don't know. I just don't see, I don't see that us ignoring all those issues lets this whole project go forward with that even thought. And I hear four of you up here, for the second or third time, I'll say, "Oh, I think a housing, you know, stores and all these things would be great there." Well, I'd like somebody to deliver me popsicles every day, every time I went out to my mailbox too, but that's not the way it works. I mean, if you move to Dayton, why'd you move to Dayton? We're a rural city, right there. Dayton lived the difference, we're supposed to be fostering some kind of rural environment here. I don't see any of that in the development that we're putting forward here. It's not rural. Rural to me is larger lots, houses where people can, the kids can go out and play in their backyard like my kids did, or like I did. I guess I went out and played the alfalfa field, but that's a whole different story. I don't see that happening here. All of these issues that I see are these red flags that are thrown up, to me are a hard stop on any kind of commercial development there. Now, I'm not here to tell you that Tom shouldn't build houses there. I'm not at all. Do I like it? Of course I don't. I'm, I'm a country kid, I grew up in the country. I don't want to look at houses out my window, but I reside myself in the fact that that's going to happen. I understand that. But it's up to you guys to put that whole thing together, and make sure that whether it's Tom as a developer, or who is a developer, follows the plan that we've set out for the city. If we, if we're not going to follow that comp plan, why in the world would we put all those thousands of hours and get all those opinions from all those people in the city to put the thing together? That just confuses the living heck out of me. I don't know, I guess. I mean, it's a compassionate plea from those of us that have lived in the city, some of us most of our lives. My family moved to the city in nineteen sixty-two, it wasn't very old then. I don't think any of you were even born then. You probably weren't even born when my wife and I got married and bought the house that we lived in. But it's been a great place to raise a family. I don't want to see that ripped apart. I know that the planning, the planning was, you know, we need to have a comp plan, so that we can figure out where we're going to have commercial, where we're going to have, you know, the factories or the buildings like that, like we have over on the, on the southwest side of the city, by the freeway. That made perfect sense. And the, the deal was that we didn't want all these little popcorn things popping up all over the city. We wanted some control over it. One of the popcorn things was Rain Tree Plaza, that my wife talked about, it's the, the Marathon Gas Station, for those of you that haven't lived here very long. I mean, when it was originally built, it was Rain Tree Plaza, for all of us that, that lived here. They built that kind of out in the middle, and then built houses around it, so at least a lot of those people had the, you know, they had the plan of, well, do I want to live a block away from a gas station slash service station slash pizza place, or whatever. But that place has just floundered. It has never, in the life of that thing, it's been, what, since back in the late seventies? Thing's never done well, no matter how many people they've had in there. So, this idea that you're just going to plug something in there, and it's going to do well, I, I just, I don't, I don't believe that. I just don't. It's not what I've seen throughout the city. There used to be a, a gas station and a grocery store over at the trailer court at Brockton in, in eighty-one. Well, it was one-fifty-two then, but now eighty-one is what you guys know it as. That place never did that well either. For maybe the first few years they put it in there, it did well, but neither one of them are there now. Now we got QuickTrip in there, which by the way, was built in a softball field that I used to play on when I was a kid, so I'm really happy about that either. I don't know where the kids from the trailer court play ball now, we took that away from them and didn't make them, you know, provide the, the trailer court provide any place for the rest of the kids to play. I mean, I just think we missed the whole big picture of what we're trying to do with the city. I just hope that you guys do the right thing. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Seneskal. I live at 11980 Fernbrook Lane. I live next door to my parents, who moved here in the sixties, and also, I was raised in Dayton. The thought of adding two-hundred-and-sixty more homes to this, to Fernbrook Lane, is very overwhelming, considering just a few short months ago, I feel like it was probably a year ago, but there was the fear mongering from Dayton that they were going to extend Fernbrook four lanes, and we were thinking that our houses were going to be taken, we, we thought all these things. We, we didn't know if we needed to sell right now, we were checking with realtors, we were fearful, because Dayton said, "We're going to put a four-lane road in." Well, then I contacted the county, and the reason why the county doesn't want to do anything with our road is because it's not in their five- or ten-year plan. So, when, when I think it was Marcia Grover said, "Put your horse before the cart," we're, the city of Dayton, going back to what, the website, the mission and the strategic plan, the city of Dayton's mission is to promote a thriving community and to provide residents with a safe and pleasant place to live while preserving our rural character, while creating connections to our natural resources, and providing customer service that is efficient, physically responsible, and responsive. So, these two-hundred-and-sixty homes are going to go onto this road that I can't even barely get the mail, and we got it, so our mailbox was on our side of the street finally. I can't get the mail after dark, because people drive like crazy. Somebody mentioned the, the road coming out of the Sundance Woods. I literally was almost in an accident this morning, because people don't want to stop there. And that's not my fault. I should be able to live on this road and not have to worry about the seven-hundred homes that were there without my, I mean, I get, I know that there was a comment, like Tommy Dean said something in the effect of, "If it was the right price, you'd sell too." But that's, that's it, that's, I don't have control of that. And yeah, of course it's going to be the right price when you can develop your own land. So, we, years ago, there was a ten-year acre, or ten-acre plot. If you were going to build a house, you had to have ten acres. So, somebody put their hand in somebody's pocket, and now look it, we have houses everywhere. And now, there's another amendment- And now there's another amendment to another comp plan. When I bought my, when I, 20 years ago, we moved in. And my, again, my parents have lived there forever and I, and I almost think the fear mongering of this, of the road plan, you know, extension was for the aging adults to move out and be like, oh, they want to extend our road or take our homes? We'll just move and move into our retirement homes or whatever that may be. I don't know if that is, that's just my own, I, my assumption because that's what it appeared. That's what it seemed like. And now I am not even affected by this retail space or this, I don't have to live across from the 260 homes, but I do have to deal with the traffic. And if you do put a commercial spot in there, and everybody's talked about Rain Tree. Rain Tree is, nobody goes there. And so you're going to put a commercial spot regardless, again, assisted living, I'm absolutely all for, there's not going to be as much traffic, that type of thing. But can we just kind of like Keith said, go back and like look at these plans? Because every, the people, those six homes on Fernbrook, the last time we had one of the meetings, the lady's like, we can just flip your garage around. Who, is, is he going to pay for that? Is he going to pay for that? Because it, it doesn't seem, and I'm not very intelligent, but it doesn't seem logical in my brain to, oh, I'm going to flip my house around so I can drive out this alley and still have to deal with all the traffic and then go down a half a mile to come back to my house? It doesn't seem logical. So I just think that the city needs to focus back on the rural. I'm not saying don't build houses. But let's, like, you want, you want 40 feet lots? Like, that is, it doesn't, that's not what Dayton, that's not what, why I live in Dayton. That's not why I live next door to my parents. My kids want to buy my house. My nephews want to buy my parents' house, but not now. I mean, how, if, if we can't, if can't come up with a plan before putting the horse before the cart, then what's the point of even living here? Right? And you want to build houses that are $300,000? That's not going to happen. And he said, you know, they're not going to be four bedroom houses. There is going to be traffic issues, there's, or parking issues. And, and again, because I care about my neighbors, I care about those six houses. I care about those people. I went to school with those, their kids. And it is not, and, and Grover's too. And having a commercial property just plop down there, it, it doesn't seem realistic. And so I, I, I just really hope that there's a lot more planning put in, especially after what happened to us with this four road pla-, the four lane road that they, again, fear mongered into us thinking that we were going to lose our homes. Because it's not in the county's plan, five or 10 year plan. So, that's all. Thanks.
Chris Goodman, 10928 Harbor Lane North, Dayton. I'm not quite sure how I want to start this, but you know, you guys have a responsibility to the six people that live on Fernbrook. And just a quick question, the Rayburn development that's already started, correct?
Yes.
And how many homes in that development? Approximately?
It's somewhere around there, yeah.
60 is it?
160.
160? And you're looking at 266 with this development, how many in Sundance Greens?
Over 600.
Over 600?
Yeah, I think there was over 600.
Okay. So you got 600, 160, that's 760, 260. You got over 1,000 units. So it's just not about six units. It's about 1,000 units. And commercial, you're going to need commercial nodes and you should have one. And actually, I, I think it's a good little area to do a node there commercially. Because the traffic you're talking about is all going to be on the west side of Fernbrook, the 1,000 units, correct? So most of that traffic is going to be moving within the community on that side to get to those places. You bring up Bill Superratt. That's a perfect example. It's in a, there's one in Champlin, it's in a residential area. It's on West River Road, which you've got high block homes on the west side, you've got the regular sized homes. And it fits the area, it fits the community. And the reason it's there is for the convenience because people use it not only to get gas, they use the propane tank that's there because they want to use it to fill up their gas tanks to grill. And then on top of that, you've got people that got water softeners. So to me, and, and I think part of what Tom talked about, my first knowledge of this was back in, at HOA meeting in 2023. And most, the 40 people that showed up for that budget meeting, most were very supportive of a commercial area in that, in that area. Because it, it serves those units. I mean, there's talk about units or gas stations that are in the southwest corridor. And to be honest with you, they basically serve Rogers. Really? I mean, you, you can go there and you got FedEx and you got Rogers traffic going west and you got to go on east. And the one that you got proposed off 94 is meant for the 94 traffic going to South Dakota or North Dakota, wherever they're going to go. And the other way as well. And as a resident within the Sundance Greens, to me, it doesn't make sense to go west when I want to go east if I want to go to a Twins game. So why do I got to go backwards to go forwards? To me, that doesn't make sense. And that doesn't, you know, that's, I, I think a lot of the different people that are there have similar thought processes and want to see a little commercial node. And you should do it on the north side as well because you don't have it there either. I do understand you've got the Maple Grove, but Maple Grove is a zoo, you know? Someone in the adult might want to get something, they boom, they go quick to there and they can get it. Not only that, you've got other uses that you can do and you can build your retail. We all know small businesses either succeed or they fail. And if they fail, you want to have a building that's going to be marketable for the next business owner that's going to come in. So from that perspective, you've got it. As far as the commercial node, part of your responsibility is to burn, burn that area so residents on both sides are protected. If you look at the lighting in some of the, your communities like Champlin, most of these holiday bills, superhead are closed by 10:30 at night. So you're not talking about a 24/7 operation. And you guys are in charge of the, when you go through the development, you're going to be looking at the lighting on the development. You have control of that. You know, when I come home, when I used to live in Champlin, when I came home from a night out or at the Twins game or whatever, you generally don't even notice them because the lights are set up in such a way that you just don't see it. So that's my two cents and I, and, uh, you know, uh, former council member Charles brought that up because he ran for mayor. He door knocked and the general feeling was supportive for commercial. And you've got the mayor here, he knocked on probably the same doors and probably got similar feedback. So, I mean, it's just not six, but you need to protect the six, don't get me wrong. But I think, what I see here, the main issue is the traffic. And irregardless whether it's commercial or what have you, you've got 1,000 units and you got to deal with the county. And you can, we can all sit up here and say, we're going to do this and we're going to do that. At the end of the day, the county's going to decide what the speed limit's going to be. They're going to decide whether it's going to be two lanes or whether it's going to be four lanes. And with that many units, that's going to be part of their process when they look at it. So I don't know, but I, I guess my question to staff would be, are we talking to Hennepin County? Do we, do we have that feedback?
The county reviews flat.
Right, right.
We don't have a formal response on this from Hennepin County.
Right. But I guess my point is, is that you see problems are, are going to be common. And I think it behooves the city of Dayton anyway to start working with the county. Because you may have one thought process and the county's going to have a completely different one. You may want the roads at 40 and they may determine, but the traffic still is 55, just based on what the numbers are. And I didn't know that Rush Creek was a failed street. And I think you need to go to the county. I, I mean, I don't see a roundabout there. You're going to get somebody killed. In the way it is right now, you're going to get somebody killed. Because you've got people trying to get over to the park reserve and they're crossing a, a, a bad intersection. And I, I, I get the, that's not under fire with the tenure plan, but you should be talking to them. I mean, I don't understand what it is with the tunnel. I get the part where it's the county's final say, but I think you need to put pressure on them to make that, that work. But I think, I share the same concerns and I would say probably most of the people on the west side share the same concerns too. You've got a big traffic problem. And you've got 1,000 units. I don't, I don't know how it's, you're going to handle the 760 that you, you got going in, you got another 266 going in. So you, you know, it's a lot of different things, a lot of different things. And that, that's, that's all I've got to say. Other than, uh, I would suggest, uh, some of the things that you're looking at as it relates to the different units is to protect those units as being single family owner occupied properties. And what I mean is, uh, I don't think you want units built that are going to turn into rentals. And I don't think you want units built that are going to be halfway homes. And I know that's a problem in Champlin right now. So I just, I, I throw that out there as something that you might want to keep in the back of your head to, to prevent in, in Dayton. But, um, you got a nice, it's a very nice community. You got rural and you've got development and you got to blend them together. And that's, that's the key thing. And there's things that you can do within the development as far as buring and such. I don't know what you're going to be able to do with the speed, now the roundabouts work, but my last comment would be, I think you should, because you've got this development, I think you should extend that, uh, distance where you send out, uh, that projects are going on. You've got more people in the community and you're not going to get enough feedback on it. The only reason I knew about it is I pay attention to some of the meetings and it got my attention. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? I don't like public speaking, so just forgive me. Um, my name is Kenesha. My husband Landon and I live on Fernbrook Lane. We are at 11330 Fernbrook Lane North. We are the neighbors of Marsha and Keith Grover. Um, first of all, I want to say I don't fault the Dean family for wanting to develop on their own land. That's not why I'm coming up here. Um, I'm curious if there's a plan to add landscaping to the backside of the commercial property. We are one of the houses that would be facing the pond and like Keith said, a lot of the plans do include a gas station. Granted, that might just be hypothetical, but that is on the plan and we would be one of the houses that directly faces the gas station and the pond. And so I was thinking, I don't know if there's a plan in place to communicate or even think about landscaping that would somehow separate our properties from the commercial area. One moment. Okay. Um, my next question would be, we have a lot of focus on the six houses on the north side of Fernbrook Lane, but as one of the four that are directly across from 113th in between 112 and 114th, um, I have heard some conversations considering the four of our houses, but it would be nice to hear more because it's not just the six that are going to be affected, it will be us too. Um, I'm one of, like, we're one of the couples that walks our dogs down 113th. We can't do that anymore. We would do 114th, we can't really do that as much anymore. The traffic is an issue. We have had people land their cars in our front yard, which has been fun.
Upside down?
Upside down through our trees. So I am concerned about the traffic and I know that that seems to be a common thread. Um, but just speaking from a personal example, I mean, Marsha has talked about almost being hit by a school bus. My dogs and I have almost been hit. Like I said, a car has landed upside down in our front yard. So I don't know what the plans are regarding the road other than the roundabouts, but I'm just asking if you wouldn't mind taking another breather and just really considering the traffic and how that's also affecting our houses. Um, my last point, and this might not be the best form to ask, um, my husband and I have not received any updates, like the plans that you're looking at now. I know some of our neighbors have said that they've received them. We have not. So I just want to know how we can get that information. You don't have to answer right now. I'll be here till the end. Um, but that's it. I just wanted to kindly state, it would be nice if you had plans in place to consider our four houses as well as the traffic and that it's not just the six on the northern side. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will address that, that, the request to get the plan. So anything discussed here at the planning commission is always posted prior to the planning commission on the website.
Okay.
On the city website and it's there for you to access.
Awesome. Thank you.
Before I forget that one. Anyone else?
Hi guys.
I'm Lee Holquist. I live at 11471 Fernbrook Lane. That's the northernmost house of the six. Uh, I've got a few points here to make and going to try not to ramble too much. We've talked about the drainage issues and, I mean, you, you guys haven't solved any problems, let's get realistic. The traffic is, is projected to double to over 11,000 cars a day on Fernbrook. And there doesn't seem to be a plan to do anything about it. Noise. Out of the, this whole bench, only one of you has ever stood in my backyard and that's Darren. To get an idea what the project looks like from where I live, to run a driveway out the backside of my garage to the property line, where you can put this alley or talk about the alley, it's a five foot ride, four and a half, roughly five. One of you talked about putting mailboxes on the other side of the street, which means you've never been on my street because my, my mailbox is already in front of my house. I, I just don't think you guys are that in touch with what's going on here. This project is going to run, uh, Tom is projected about six years, I saw in one of his letters. Six years from now, I'll be in my 80s. Don't really feel like listening to Diesel's and all this stuff for the rest of my life and I can hear them all over this entire 95 acres. I can hear the project right now that's working 200 yards away on the other side of that hill. This, essentially you guys have denied me my backyard if you go through with this for the rest of my life. And I don't think that's reasonable. I think that's, uh, like I say, I just, like, I'm really trying hard not to use the big words. And, and he's optimistically projecting six yards, six years, but there's no end time to this project. This, this thing could go on for 20 years depending on market conditions. And, and if we seem, um, passionate, it's because you guys are looking at permits and money and income and the city council's talking about permits and how much income this is going to generate and tax money. I'm looking at defending my home and I think the other people are here also. And, and to, to leave this so open ended is causing just a butt load of stress that I don't need. I don't think anybody else needs it. It's starting to wear on me. As I look at the current project, there are five houses projected to butt up against my property line or to, to the buffer. Tom said that the back end of these townhouses ugly. I'm going to be looking at five of them and they're all going to be above me so they can look down on my property. So, so I don't know what kind of buffer is going to be there. Maybe we can find something. So I don't, I don't, like I say, the buffers, I don't know what's going to be there. One thing that I, that does come with this development I found out is when my house got broken into a few years ago, the first thing, after the police officer told me to get a Ring camera set up and some other things, he said that the, the crime is following this development out there. They're coming out to steal tools, steal copper and anybody's house is just a target of opportunity and mine was for about 60 grand. So, which probably is why the city wants to save up and buy this armored urban assault vehicle that we're saving for in the budget. Rush Creek, coming out of Rush Creek is, is we slow down for that stop sign to turn onto Fernbrook, we don't even stop for it anymore. I mean, I, I almost got rear ended by some a-hole the sno- I mean, I almost got rear-ended by some a-hole this morning who had to honk for about half a mile because the road was slick, and I didn't wanna go 55 miles an hour this morning. So these are, you know, like I say, the quality of life that we used to have here isn't here anymore. Personal cost, if we do this. There's gonna be assessments against my house. To run a sewer line onto my property is gonna have to run through that nice septic mound that I had to build, so I have to excavate all that. I figure I'm looking at 40,000 minimum out of my pocket to support somebody else's project. And that doesn't seem right to me that we do that, that I have to get permits and pay for water shut-off valve and stuff. This is just unreasonable. And that includes, like, capping wells and things that I already have. These houses, yeah, too close together is part of it. You know, it's just too vague. You guys don't have a plan. And for, you know, Tom has been involved in Nature's Crossing and Nostalgia Woods, which are both great developments. I've actually made offers on houses in there, until you read the covenants that go with the HOA. Do you know what? Nature's Crossing, you can only have a trailer on your lot for 48 hours per year. That's why I didn't buy one there. You know, I just fear you, well, you gotta look.
I don't wanna look. I don't wanna know these things.
I did before I put an offer, or after I put, you know, it was right down to putting an offer in. That isn't gonna work for me. Like I say, it's just too vague. You know, you're gonna deny me my backyard for potentially the rest of my life here. Undue amount of stress, I'm defending my own. Oh, yeah, for other questions. We have fiber optic cable in the ditch in front of my house. We just don't get to use it. They ran that cable several years ago for the new developments, I think for Braeburn Hills. Yeah, I mean, it's like, everything is for the new guys, and nothing's for the people that live here. And like I say, if I seem passionate about it, this is part of the problem. I haven't been able to work with the city to get the things I've wanted done because at one time, they said, "We don't do variances." I've lived here 45 years, and 30 years ago, I wanted to expand my garage. Can't do that. No, no. Too close to property line, can't come forward. And I'm not gonna remove my well so I can, excuse me, put something out there. So, anyway, like I say, I've seen Tom's other developments, and he does great work when he wants to. But in this one, it looks like we're just jamming people in here for no apparent reason. I think we need to do better. And that's on you guys. I mean, that's your job, as I understand it. So, I'm not in favor of the gas station either, by the way. I think there's other choices there, but we don't need to go there. I think that's been beat to death or beaten so far. I think that's where I'm gonna leave it today. I just appreciate your time. I hope you understand the passion. Like I said, we are, you guys are talking about making money, building houses, and I'm talking about defending my home. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I will just note that we do have a couple people online. Yep, with some hands raised.
Let's go ahead and go to, anyone else in the audience? Let's put a, online.
I just have a quick question.
Keith, if you'd come up.
I'm just, I'm curious. We got the mailing from the city with the new plot thing mailed out to us, I think we got it last Saturday or something, telling us about this meeting and the open house and stuff. What are the parameters that the city uses to send those things out? Because I know a lot of my neighbors don't get the same thing that I get. I mean, I'm a spit and a throwball away from this project, but there are people that are, you know, a few doors down or maybe around the corner that you could take a baseball and hit from my house into the yard, and they don't get notified of this stuff? What are the parameters that we use for doing that? Because whatever we're doing, it ain't working good.
I believe it's, what, 500 feet?
It's 500 feet. And in this case, going to the east, there were, I don't know, I'm gonna say two handfuls of homes that were outside that 500 feet. And so we did send it to them. So essentially, it's from Fernbrook to Elm Creek Park, and then 500 feet around the north, south, and west.
So the houses that are on 114th, on 112th, on 113th, even the new houses on 113th that are across the street from this development? All the new townhouses, that those people all get notified?
I'm not gonna say not all of them, but within 500 feet.
They're right across the street.
Right, so they would've been 500 feet. They would've received it.
If you'd like, we can send, we could show you the buffer. I can send an email to you.
The number, the number, thanks, guys. The number is what I was looking for. I'm here to tell you that I don't think that that's anywhere near adequate for what we're doing.
And I've made that comment on several of these in the past. Because we've had, we've had such large, we have such, people who have such large lots. And I've made that comment over the years as well.
Yeah, might I didn't get to the neighbor.
We need to get, we need to increase this by quite a bit.
Whatever, whoever made that rule.
I think 500 feet is actually pretty common throughout the Twin Cities as far as notification purposes. Not to say that any council couldn't request for that notification distance to increase, especially on projects that they know might have some more interest than others.
Especially a huge project like this that not only affects.
Right, so I'm confident that staff did what they were supposed to do per the ordinance, but, you know, if the question or direction might be if that area could be increased, specifically for future public hearings for this case, I'd be okay with that. I don't know what number that is.
Is it actually an ordinance, guys? Or it's just a rule?
500 feet is an ordinance.
The state statute sets it at a minimum of 350, and the Dayton zoning ordinance says 500.
Maybe you guys could recommend to the city council, or maybe the city council could help us out so that more people would know about what's going on within the city.
Thinking that we've adjusted it, and I, yes. It's actually one of my goals.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Moving to online comments.
Stacy, I'm gonna click the allow to talk button here. Go ahead and start speaking. Let us know that we can hear ya. All right, try that again, Stacy. There we go. I think we can hear you now.
Oh, you can hear me now?
Yep.
Awesome. Hi, I finally met a few of you at the last land commission meeting that we talked about this last fall. I live at 11431 Fernbrook Lane, two houses in from the proposed gas station and pond and whatnot. I'll say that, thank you for your time. I'm mostly concerned with, you know, kind of echoing, I guess, what other people have said now that most of the other people have spoken. You know, I'm mostly concerned, you know, even just from hearing the proposal for the roundabout about having to, you know, this curb or something that's going to be in front of our house so that we can't even turn into our house from the road in which I, you know, bring the kids to daycare and to school and to go to work and to go to Target. And to, you know, that's just, I don't know what, I mean, I heard an option of like maybe a painted curb or something, or if there's a way to move it, or some happy medium so that our neighbors across the way aren't also burdened by it, or, you know, I don't know what you would propose for that. But I just don't like that idea at all, and I'm deeply concerned about that. Again, with the alley, I know that that was a staff comment and not something that Tom and us other neighbors have discussed. We are very much okay with a path so that we can connect. We are a young family. My children are two and six. And so, you know, we moved in here about four years ago, and, you know, we looked at the comprehensive plan and kinda knew that there was something going to be coming in. It is happening sooner than what we expected. And we are okay with, you know, the development, but, you know, just kind of like, just trying to be considerate, like, you know, the people that lived here forever, but also the people that, like, moved in here to have this be a space where we could raise a family that in a quiet space. And, you know, we moved out of the city to get away from the city. Like, why would I want, you know, double the cars on this road that's already loud? When we moved in, there was road construction on Fernbrook, right just north of 117, and it was during the pandemic. And so we had no idea what we were actually getting into in terms of like, sound and, you know, traffic-wise. And then, you know, with the robustness of like this project and how much, you know, sound pollution is gonna add and danger in terms of that, like, the path behind our house is like my lifeline here of like, how I'm going to survive this, if this is going to be a part of my future for the next five, six, seven years. And so like, please do not, you know, any consideration of an alley just seems really not okay. Anyway, you know, I just, I really think that Dayton's a wonderful community, and we are at like this precipice of like something big, like designing a community that retains some of the character that we, you know, sought out when we came to move here. And that, you know, it's a farming community. And if there is things that, like, in terms of like what's gonna be happening in the future, you know, in terms of like the, I know you said kind of retabeling the business thing, that might be so far out. But I'm not, I don't want a gas station. And if there is, that's like the only option, like, there has to be something about like light, noise, like, hell, like, we know gasoline is a carcinogen. You know, like, people are starting to like hook up their electric vehicles. And like, I know Sarah, you know, a previous member of the committee, has talked about like wanting to bring in businesses that are kind of more rural in character, like, you know, like a pizza bar kind of place, or like a farmer's market right there, or like things that kind of like still retain something, or even a co-op, you know, like, something that like, you know, local people could be, you know, and like something that's building community, not just like another strip mall. You know, something maybe that's a little more walkable, kinda like Maple Grove has on that Main Street. Just like looking at those kind of things as opposed to just like the same old, like, ugly, smelly, traffic, you know, just things like that. So, but yeah. I really love that some of you guys are really talking about protecting, you know, us six houses, because it does feel, we feel very powerless. And I don't like that feeling. And I don't think anybody does. And I think if you lived in my house or, you know, the new neighbors that are on the end, would you want double the traffic? Would you want another road right behind you? Would you want a gas station right next to your house, like, with cars beeping and, you know, teenagers screaming, screeching in and out, and like, you know, just wanting to have like a fire in my backyard? I'm gonna have lights shine in my backyard? You know, if there's a gas station or if it's not designed in a way that is considerate of us? So, and I think I second, you know, it's like, we, and that, like, this is like a quality-of-life issue, and it's very stressful. And I just really appreciate your consideration on this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else online?
We do have a couple people online. If anybody else online would like to speak during the public hearing portion, please feel free to hit the raise your hand function. Otherwise, I do have a written comment from online as well, if you'd allow me to.
Yeah, go ahead and.
All right. This comment's from Eric Sepult, 11534 Braeburn Trail. "My only point is to clarify if a trail is intended to run down south from the neighborhood park along the power line easement. Reason to raise that question is to ensure there is good trail continuity from neighborhood, the neighborhood park going south toward..." Let's see here.
It appears there is.
Yeah, it's, there is. And, this is not, basically, his comment is "There seems to be a fair amount of dead-end trails that only connect to street and sidewalks, otherwise in the DCM neighborhood." And he just wants to ensure that there is clear, easy access to follow-trail continuity throughout this entire development area. Apologize for butchering that.
Thank you. I think I get the gist of it. I guess with that, we will close the public hearing at 9:35. I guess I wanna address two comments.
Was that supposed to stay up until March?
Yep.
To continue.
Continue the public hearing until our March meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry.
But you hit the gavel.
I hit the gavel and asked.
Did you not hit the gavel?
I wanted to make two comments, one on the traffic study. I believe it was Alyssa who left. We did a traffic study, what, how many years ago was that? Three, four years ago? As a whole, looked at different options of connecting Fernbrook. There was the X, there was the, there was an option of connecting Dayton Parkway up to 125th. And we looked at a lot of options. And we really looked at feasibility of what's, what can the city afford and what can the city afford to do? And what is gonna be supported by our partners at Hennepin County? Wanted to throw that out there as, it, there was a long history and a lot of work that went into that. And it identified a few critical things. And I do think that we do need to spend more time, as Marcia was saying, of looking at our transportation network throughout the city. And not just county roads, but what are gonna be Dayton roads. The other comment I wanna make, because I made the comment on possibly holding on the uses for the commercial, the commercial area, was because we had talked about having Mr. Dean do a feasibility study on what could be there. It's not about what you guys don't want. It's, we don't even know what's gonna be there. And so I'd like to understand what could be there before we start talking about it and wasting the energy and wasting the effort. I wholly understand, I wholly understand what the residents' concerns were with that. You guys have been very vocal and very, I appreciate you guys, and I'm sure my fellow commissioners appreciate having a lively meeting, because sometimes they're very boring. And so I appreciate you coming and, and, and... I just, without knowing what's gonna be there, I didn't wanna speculate. And that was the only reason I opted today. I didn't wanna speculate on what could be without a feasibility study, which is something we had discussed of requiring him. We discussed a feasibility study requiring, and that was the reason I made that comment. So I apologize if that came across with bad intentions. It was not. And I just wanted to air that. I think other comments that were made. Eric had talked, asked about the trail connectivity and through the neighborhood. There's a fair amount of connectivity through here. I think a few things that I would like to, you know, I would like to look at and make sure our Parks Commission, because they're more in charge of the trails, our Parks Commission, because they're more in charge of the trails, gets a look at this for trail connectivity. Um, you know, I've heard mixed opinions on the trail and easement provided behind the six homes. Heard mixed opinions from the residents. We've heard one resident who wants the trail there. I would like to see the easement there as a utility and drainage easement at a minimum, and provide the flexibility so that if one day you guys sell and someone wants to build an alley access, it's there and we don't have to go through procurement. That's my only reason to put it in, and more from a flexibility of future standpoint, not requiring you guys to do it, just someone could do it. Those are my comments that I wanted to share based on what I heard at the public hearing, and I guess open it up for more discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can, you know, first of all, I appreciate the compassion that residents have here. A couple of things to take into consideration, this is a planned unit development, and what that means is that it's a give-and-take situation, where the city will give the developer some flexibility, and we can take from the developer, or whoever it might be, some other types of things to consider. So, in other words, if, let's say, if a gas station were to go in there, we can say, no car wash. We could say hours of operation are limited to this, from this time to this time, as part of that PUD approval. So, that does, is on the table for the City Council to consider through the planned unit development process. So, that is something, I just want to make sure that residents are aware of that. I am 100% for trying to protect the six to the north and the four to the east there. I, you know, obviously, we don't know what that commercial is going to look like. If it even is going to be commercial, maybe it's senior housing or memory care, or whatever it might be. Site planning for that, I think, is critical, so screening, buffers, if there are any, if there's berming systems, if it's natural landscaping, fencing, whatever it might be, I'm 100% for trying to do as much as we can to separate those uses in a way that makes sense, right? So, I just want to make sure that people are aware of that PUD process does give us flexibility in limiting things that we think might be a detriment to the community. So, I am still, I'm still for some kind of commercial node there. I just want, I want to know what it looks like and what type of commercial ventures could actually go in there. So, the other thing I want to kind of bring in upfront here is the fact that a lot of, I'm not a long-term resident here, obviously, I didn't grow up here. I am kind of an outsider looking in at that, and what I see here as a city is, we're kind of in that identity crisis area, right? So, we have what we've always been, as far as the city of Dayton, trying to preserve that rural character. I moved in here, and I'm saying, there's a lot of redevelopment that's happening here. Obviously, the council is trying to push this city in a different direction, so there is kind of that go-between, between where has the city of Dayton been and where do we want to be. The comprehensive plan does guide that, but as in any city trying to better themselves, better is a subjective word, I get that, there is room for making those amendments to make the city better, and one of the individuals who spoke today said, it's not just the six or the 10 that you have to worry about, it's the thousand other households that just moved into this area or are going to be moving into this area. So, what's, what's the betterment of everybody in this area? Granted, you cannot make 100% of the people 100% satisfied 100% of the time, and we get that. That's why we're here to make those hard decisions. There are some tools in place for us to make those decisions a little easier to, you know, digest once all the dust has settled. So, again, we don't know what's going to go on that commercial area, you know, I would like to see what could happen there. I do think there would be benefit, what it looks like, that's for future meetings to decide, so. The other thing I had is a couple of questions, actually, for Jason. Number one, the last time we did the traffic analysis was, what, five years ago, six years ago, traffic study? Typically, how long are those good for as far as changing?
There's, there's been a few. They were a little narrower scope than an overall look, so the last comprehensive plan update was when the whole system was looked at.
Okay.
Since then, there's been actually two studies. One of them is to look at the major roadways, being Dayton Parkway, whether that goes straight north, connects to Zanzibar, or if it goes to the east to connect to 129th. So, that was the two option, and conversely to that, Fernbrook either goes north to 125th, that exists today, or it crosses over to Fernbrook. So, I'll use my hands, because I did it for years, since these are an H, or it was an X, like, the major roads in town. So, there was a significant study to look at which of those would be done, which would be the better scenario. It was essentially deemed a tie, and chosen as the X, and then later redone, and that was the study, I think, is being referred to, redone to say, no, we want the H, that's the better solution. And then, there was a smaller one done after that for the realignment of Fernbrook, but that one didn't, didn't change things. I mean, there is, they're good as long as there's not a better idea out there, if you will, so.
Gotcha.
I mean, there might be different things, like, traffic projections to change, like, the number of lanes, for example, or, you know, other connections to those roadways, but generally speaking, that framework is good until a better idea comes along.
The other question I have is, certainly, we're aware of the reconfiguration south of the city of Dayton from Fernbrook, right? As far as transitioning onto Maple Grove Parkway?
Yes.
And that was taken into consideration?
Okay, that's my next question is... Right, so, the next question is, obviously, when that actually happens, I think traffic patterns might change a little bit, where people are saying, I don't get the direct north or south shot right onto 81, I kind of have to meander through, and maybe I'll find a different way to get there. It is potential that that meander onto Maple Grove Parkway, since it's going to be going through a residential neighborhood, will calm the traffic also. It is interesting to see what other kind of traffic calming measures could happen out there. I know it's kind of out of our jurisdiction as far as it being the county roadway, but certainly, I think the, and I don't want to put this the wrong way, but the country street, right, where people are like, hey, I get to go, I get to go, and that's what they've always been used to, and now we're introducing 1,000 new households when it's all said and done, and that street is still built on, on a rural highway, almost. What are some of those traffic measures that could be implemented to calm that down, if it's something we have to work with the county on, maybe in this area for, you know, whatever measures could happen? Is it landscaping that's closer to the street? Is it whatever it might be? So, just something to consider for everybody through this process, that there could be other ways of solving the issues that people are bringing up as far as safety and so on and so forth. So, ahead, thanks.
Yeah. My only comments are, I know that we're, everyone was talking 266 homes. I think the applicant was made aware that we don't support that. I don't know what the number's going to end up being, but it's going to be something less when the 40-foot lots become 50 or 55 feet. Secondly, the PUD thing, it's important to recognize that in the PUD, what are we getting for a public benefit? And we can't lose sight of that, the biggest issue with all development in Dayton is traffic, and part of this PUD is going to provide funding to put around about it. That's the plan. Now, I've heard some concerns from fellow commissioners that I don't know enough about of understanding the planning process and make sure it happens, so my radar's up to make sure our staff stays on top of it now, too, and I'm appreciative of these commissioners that know a lot more about that than me. The other thing I want to bring up, so Mr. Dean hears this, is I think when you come back with the plan, with the trail that's going behind those six houses, I think you should have enough flexibility, because, and I hate to put the pressure on those six homeowners, because if one wants it and five don't, ultimately, it still comes back to us and council making a decision, but if there is a consensus with you six homeowners, whether you want that trail or not, we, that could just be moved over to the right-of-way, in my opinion, and then cut through to 114th to get there, versus running it right next to their backyards, because I do get the concept of you're losing privacy with the trail on your backyard, and these people aren't used to people walking through their backyards, sort of, by their backyard. So, the hard part is, again, if you guys have consensus, that's easy. If not, you know, then we have to make a decision and take your feedback.
When you say move it to the right-of-way, what do you...
Move it to the right-of-way, so it would follow down, down the road, and then somewhere right in here, it can cut through.
Yeah, down gable.
Down gable.
Okay.
Come up or...
Yeah, please come up if you got a comment.
So, I think with the residents, the six homeowners there, and we have met individually at times, and so, I think the consensus is there. I just want to share, if it isn't, and I'll sure reach out to them after this and adjust it. You know, we talked about, you know, not only having that there, having the storm sewer to, or, you know, to correct some drainage issues, and actually doing some buffering, you know, but the problem is with the storm sewer there, I can't really berm the new homes, right, because it's got a, we got a drainage issue. If we didn't have a drainage issue, we'd, but is there some tree plantings, some different things, you know? And, and, you know, I verbally told them I would do that. I stick by my word, I'm not going to change it, you know, so, you know, I, and so, I'll reach out to them all and meet. I don't support the alley either, but I thought at least just, you know, for the sewer and everything off the Parkway, you know, there they have access, so I'm done developing, there's an HOA, and they got to get everybody to vote on it, or it's already there, you know, now's the time to put that in place, so. But, yeah, just, you know, and I think, I mean, we're in disagreement with commercial, with some of the homeowners, and like I said, I don't even know totally what that is yet, you know, but to work with them and the homes behind it, you know, that's why we chose the 65-foot-wide lots behind there. So, I mean, it won't be a townhome in that big block, it'll be individual homes and, and, you know, yeah, it isn't looking at feel anymore, but it is better than looking at a townhome, so.
I just want to make one comment.
We've closed right now, and I'm, due to the time, I'm going to, I'm going to say no.
I want to...
We will open it back up.
Say thank you to Dean, Tom Dean, for meeting with us six people. That's what I wanted to say.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Anything else from...
I just think in recognition, you know, of everybody that came here tonight, thank you, and obviously, the big topics being commercial, and the big topic's being traffic, and I think commercial is something that we will be looking at at least one or many, many more times after that, and the traffic issues are really, really difficult issue. Hennepin County is in a difficult spot with a lot of needs throughout the entire county, and really, Fernbrook Lane doesn't get improved if not for these developments, right? So, at some point, Hennepin County has to improve the roadway, and, you know, though these intersections, improvements that have been identified with the roundabouts, I think does go to show that the developer is thinking about it, the developer. At the beginning of the presentation, staff had mentioned that there are contributions that will be made financially from the developer to make those improvements, but ultimately, there's a lot of stakeholders there that need to come together for that to happen, and in time, I'm confident that they will, and I think Seth has a good handle on what that looks like when it comes, when the time comes, but without these developments, those improvements don't happen. And it's, and it is a chicken and the egg cart before the horse, but Hennepin County would have a hard time justifying it to all of you, which are taxpayers, to expand that roadway before any development occurs out there. So, it, I would hope that that process will play itself out sooner rather than later, but it is kind of a wait-and-see approach there with the multi-jurisdictional aspect to the traffic improvements on Fernbrook.
All right. The, one last comment I would mention to Mr. Dean is the, it appears the roundabouts are already going to require a little bit of property on the east side of Fernbrook, on the Bogle property. I think that if you could, if you're already talking to that property owner to understand if that can happen, shifting 114th down a little bit just keeps alleviating the problem, too, for all the home, the six homes and potentially roundabout median. Obviously, it would acquire more of Mr. Bogle's land, and I'm not sure if he's a willing seller, but if he is a willing seller, that would help alleviate some of the problem pushing 114th down.
And I agree with you. I think somewhere, though, we'll still need some type of meeting, because then if you move it south, right, then all of a sudden, we go to the people on the east side of the road. So, it's a, it's a tough spot, but, I mean, that, I mean, the thing I see is, but, right, even on the road, right now, the traffic's crazy. A roundabout will slow it down, and that not only benefit people, but it will benefit everybody on Fernbrook.
All right. No action needed on this?
No, we'll be... Mark, I suppose we should have a motion.
I'll make a motion to continue DCM Farms.
Table action.
Sorry for all you that just want conclusion to it all.
Table. A motion.
One second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All those opposed? It is continued. Item eight, I believe, item 8D.
Technically skipped C, didn't we?
Uh, I don't see C.
That's okay, it's still item 8D, though.
No one made corrections.
No.
If you did, I would...
Going through the motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This next item is a proposed ordinance amendment related to residential and agriculture parking surface requirements. This item was brought before the City Council after a resident received a violation, and City Council directed staff to look into the ordinance language and see how we could lessen the requirements of that. The current language is as followed. All surfacing for driveways in R1, R2, R3, RE, VM, and HM districts furnishing access to a dwelling unit or garage, and all parking areas shall be surfaced with concrete or bituminous material so as to be dust-free. Off-street parking areas and driveways in A1, A2, and SA districts may be surfaced with crushed rock material or other approved material. Staff did discuss this item with the Planning Commission in January and brought forth the following amendment to clarify some of that language and loosen the restrictions. So, this is also in your packet in terms of the ordinance amendment as well, but I put this language up here as well. For R0, R1, R1A, and R3 zone lots that are less than a half acre, which is the threshold that was discussed at the January meeting, to, in terms of setting a limitation on those smaller properties, those newer development areas. Vehicles, recreational vehicles, and trailers shall be permitted in front and side yards on a driveway or parking pad constructed of concrete or bituminous material, so the language is similar. If side yard is adjacent to garage, one recreational vehicle or trailer may be parked on an unimproved surface in that side yard, provided it meets the setback requirement set forth in this section. All parking areas currently in the parking code requires them to be at least five feet from the side yard property line. So, again, it goes back into that discussion of the seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks necessarily wouldn't permit on many properties in the R3 district from doing so. And then, recreational vehicles and trailers shall be permitted in rear yards on an unimproved surface, limited to no more than one. And then, I also added the language here for the larger lots, the same districts for lots larger than a half acre. Really, the main change there is that there is not a limit on the amount of recreational vehicles and trailers permitted to be parked in the rear yard on an unimproved surface. And then, here's the language for the A1 and A2 and SA zoned lots, which is the least strict of the zoning districts. The limitation is vehicles, recreational vehicles, trailers may be parked in front yard, in the front yard, provided it is parked on an improved surface such as crushed rock, gravel, concrete, or bituminous material, and recreational vehicles and trailers may be parked on an unimproved surface inside and rear yards. And then, I have a couple of general standards for all districts. All vehicles, recreational vehicles and trailers shall be licensed and operable, and for all zoning districts, recreational vehicles and trailers shall be owned by the person residing on the property unless otherwise approved by the City Council through an interim use permit for home extended business, specific to outdoor storage, obviously. Couple of the things that I didn't add on this slideshow, though, was we did not have a definition in our zoning ordinance for trailers and motor vehicles, so working with the city attorney's office was just making that distinction, so we have that language to provide when we propose amendments like this. Adding that more detail gives people an understanding of where things, what things can be parked where. So, with that, I guess, this is a public hearing. The Planning Commission is asked to discuss these proposed languages based on the discussion you had at your January meeting, and staff will welcome any feedback moving forward for any changes that you'd like to see. Can you go back a slide? I just want to...
Can you go back a slide, I just want to make sure I'm interpreting?
Sure.
So, if you're less than a half an acre, you can have a vehicle on an unimproved surface on a side yard and in your rear yard, so two?
Yeah, the side yard is adjacent to the garage-
Yeah.
-on an unimproved surface, provided it meets that five-foot setback.
Yep, and then you could have another one in your rear yard if you were-
Correct, recreational vehicle and/or trailer.
Okay. Just for clarification purposes, do we define what a side yard, or like a corner side yard, so, a, a corner lot obviously has two frontages, typically, the front yard is the least width of the two, right, so what, what do, how do we define that other frontage, is that a corner side yard, or is it just a side yard?
It would be a corner side yard, but as defined in the lot dimensions or lot definitions in the, in another section of the code, I actually did not have any language related to corner side yard lots, and I appreciate you bringing that up, because I think that that should be something that could be addressed here at the Planning Commission, my experience in terms of what limitations should be added to corner side yard lots, I've seen setback requirements from the street or from the property line that abuts that side street up to twenty feet.
So as the current ordinance is written, you could have a, a lot that's less than point-five acres that has their garage on that corner side yard area, and you could, you could store a recreational vehicle essentially in front of the garage, which would be visible from the right of, like-
It would be visible from that, provided it is outside of the Clearview Triangle area, which is the fifty-five feet from the-
Then the question is, is that the intent of, of the proposed ordinance, that you would, we would allow for people to store a recreational vehicle essentially-
Adjacent to the garage on a corner lot.
Correct.
The way that this is currently written, that would be accurate, but I would certainly entertain-
I would entertain that, I think the whole intent is to try to hide those types of vehicles the best we can.
Sure.
So I, I guess I would entertain an amendment to address, and I don't know how many lots there might be, a handful of them, right, so, but just to address that situation where we, I don't know if we necessarily want a, a recreational vehicle parked in that manner.
Sure, would the, I guess I would pose a question to the Planning Commission, would you, by understanding, would you be okay with added language to prohibit the side yard language adjacent to the garage on an unimproved surface for corner lots?
Yeah, but I think you've got the same problem in a rear yard storage on a corner lot, my yard in particular, if I parked my boat in my backyard, you would see it from the road twenty-four-seven, very, very clearly, so it's similar problem, and that's ultimately, I brought that up when this was discussed last month-
Yeah.
-was, if I parked my boat in my backyard, it would be an absolute eyesore for the community, it would not match the intent of, hey, it's in the backyard, or it's parked along the side of the garage, and it is somewhat hidden from view, mine absolutely would not be, now there would, any of the four corners around me, and I've kind of analyzed the neighborhood, and, and everybody's the same way, every corner lot there, if they parked a boat in the backyard, or a trailer, or whatever, it would be very visible.
In fact, there was one-
It is, and it still looked ugly in the backyard.
But the, the people have since moved, there was one right across from, the street from the park in our neighborhood, where they parked it on the side lot, in that situation, I actually didn't mind it there, where they had it, but they had a nice buffer to the, they had a sidewalk, the sidewalk was there, the, it was behind the, the site triangles, I didn't mind it, did I like it? No. Just a suggestion, I mean, again, if we don't care, so to speak, then, you know, the whole intent of this ordinance anyway is with the surfacing of the storage of that RVs is not necessarily where-
Yeah.
-but it's the surfacing, so i, if, if the intent is to, to focus on the surfacing, I'm, I'm fine with that, I just wanted to bring that concern up if the Planning Commission wanted to address that other issue, so.
Well, and I, I think I, my intent also to draft this ordinance was deciphering where things could be parked, because the way that the original language is written, or the current language is written, is, if someone decided to pave or pour a concrete slab of half of their backyard and start storing things on that, they could do so, because it is on that bituminous or concrete surface, so I think that that was kind of an add-on to, well, if we are going to lessen the restrictions, then we should at least define where, what and where it could be parked.
I'm kind of on the fence with the corner side yard, and part of it is I want to, I know there's one gentleman here that would like to speak, I want to hear his thoughts too, but I think that some of these neighborhoods that don't already have HOAs that govern it, like, I get forty-eight hours a year, is what I was told tonight, but anyway, if you live in a place, you chose that area to begin with, so I don't want to make it too onerous or burdensome, and there's places where people can choose to live, if that, that's what they, they want, is not having a bunch of trailers around.
Right.
Yeah, just scrolling through some of the newer neighborhoods, I mean, there's a ton of properties that the rear lot is just as exposed as the side lots, and just, but I think in a lot of these HOAs, though, would prohibit things, you know, so-
Ours isn't, yeah.
I guess it's, you know, i, if it's an issue that doesn't make sense to try to govern because of the fact that it's just, it's so apparent, I, I guess the only concern I would have, if, if it's behind the house in the backyard, it's a little bit different than the first thing you see from looking at, you know what I mean, so, it's a placement of, of that vehicle in relation to everything else, but I, I get it, corner, corner lots are difficult for screening and storage and setbacks and everything else, so.
We don't buy them because we want privacy.
That's right.
Any other comments before we open, or questions before we open the public hearing? Open the public hearing at ten oh seven.
Sorry for the long wait. Craig Forry, 11821 Stone Ridge Road, I live in R2 districts, two-plus acres, ninety-thousand square feet on my side of the street, people across the street are five acres on the river, so I just want to discuss the proposed changes, which cover, I guess, more than R1, R2, R3, and RE lots, in talking with the city planner, Hayden, that the proposed changes are the result of a complaint from one city resident who would like to have more storage on his lot, and for the purposes of my discussion, when we say RVs, I, I'm gonna interject toys, everybody likes their toys, he would like more storage on his lot and not be required to store his toys or RVs on a paved surface, these changes that will loosen the requirements will affect, I better cross out hundreds now, because I heard thousands of homes in Dayton by this loosening of the ordinance, it seems excessive, almost reckless, to make changes based on one complaint that's going to affect a thousand residents, I kind of liken the existing ordinance like an HOA for the city, it sets standards for the neighborhood, if you build a house in Dayton, you're required to meet certain standards, it has to be setback from the street, the side yards, you can't have a five-story house, it has to have roughing and siding materials that are approved, standards, how the neighborhoods should look in Dayton. These are standards so neighborhoods look uniform and pleasing, by loosening the standards, you're encouraging homeowners to turn their side yards and backyards into storage lots and mini junkyards, and maybe I'm speaking more on the R2 lots versus the smaller, less, less acreage lots, I believe this will lower the value of my home and all of my neighbors' homes in my neighborhood, because it only takes one resident in the neighborhood to lower the value of everyone's home in that neighborhood. I guess, why are we changing the ordinance, I'm guessing it's been on the books for thirty, forty years, so to even consider a change because of one complaint, I guess I don't quite understand that. I want you to examine the intent when the ordinance was made, what were they trying to set a standard for, I think one of them was to be dust-free, subdivision two, number ten states, "Parking shall be surfaced with concrete or bituminous material so as to be dust-free, parking RVs on grass is going to kill the grass, then you get dirt, then you get rain, then you get mud and ruts, that detracts from the neighborhood, when the dirt dries and the wind blows, you get dust, but that's not my biggest issue. You're proposing unlimited RV or toy parking on R2 lots, off driveway, I think this opens a can of worms, it'll discourage residents from building accessory buildings to store their toys, the city will lose permit money for the structure and the driveway to the, to the structure, he with the most toys wins, is the philosophy of a lot of my neighbors, a lot of neighbors in, on my street already have large accessory buildings, they've filled them up and don't have enough room, so now they're storing them on their side lots, I don't care how many RVs and toys you own, I don't want to see them when I drive up and down the street, I don't think my neighbors do either, give them an inch and they'll take a mile, you're limiting the small lots to just two, what's, why, why did you limit it to two, and why didn't you let them have an unlimited amount?
Do you want me to respond?
I do.
That was basically from the discussion with the Planning Commission in January of maybe a certain size lot.
Is it possible that four to five RVs on a small lot would look junky and tacky? Just putting that out there, at some point, it becomes too many, I guess is my point, and what's that number? Okay, now, the biggest problem that I see with the parking ordinance is the enforcement, there's little to no enforcement of the parking ordinance in the city of Dayton, I brought parking code violations of several of my neighbors to the City Council in September, oh, not, not to the City Council, just to the city, September twenty-twenty-two, I'm currently working with my fifth city staff member to try and get the parking ordinance as it is written now, enforced, two and a half years, five staff members. The city did send out letters to, I think, at least over a dozen, if I, looking back in my notes, and that's the correct procedure, they have thirty days to respond, and a few did make corrections, I appreciate the city taking that effort, and then I think the next step is to send out a second letter. Two and a half years, five city staff members, a lot of the same issues, nothing has changed, the majority of the people who got letters have not complied, no one from the city, that's my understanding, can go out onto private property and check to see if it's licensed, if it's drivable, et cetera, to investigate infractions, it's all viewed from the road, is my understanding, if they get permission from the property owner, they can go on the property, hey, Phil, can I come on your property and see if your RV is licensed? Not interested, okay. Let me just switch a quick gear here, ordinance one thirty-point-oh-five, public nuisances, substate, subdivision thirty-one, states accumulations or storage in the open, not in a building, have any of the following items or any parts or accessories thereto, and C, any equipment or motor vehicles which is inoperable, not currently licensed, or generally is not being driven, I've got RVs in my neighborhood that haven't seen the street for five to ten years, D, generally not used on the premises, boat and motor used on the premises, interesting, H, accumulations of any items that tend to cause an unsightly appearance of the premises and which may cause discomfort for any of the members of public who may be using their own or public property, this ordinance was my initial complaint to the city in September of twenty-two, because I saw these RVs, cars parked in the front yards, so I looked up the ordinance, says, hey, this one looks good, I'll try that one. The current city administrator, Zach Dowd, has deemed most of this ordinance unenforceable, been on the books thirty, forty years, he's basically telling me I don't have a leg to stand on, so then we looked at the parking ordinance, you know, what have other cities done with their parking ordinances, and I think you've checked, and you have some ideas on that, you know, the, the Planning Commission is tasked with making recommendations to the city that are for the greater good of all the residents, not just a handful, so loosening the restrictions in the parking ordinance has unintended consequences, in my opinion, you know, I've heard restrictions like, they need to be owned by the resident, must be currently licensed, must be operable, the city can't prove any of these things without viewing the units on the resident's lot, no one for the city is looking for ordinance infractions, the police are driving around patrolling, they're not looking for ordinance infractions, Public Works driving around doing their thing, not on their radar, the only way the city knows of a violation is from a citizen complaint, trying to view these infractions from the city street doesn't work, if a travel trailer has its license plate away from the street, the city has no way of knowing, who owns that if it's currently licensed, it could even have a Wisconsin plate on it, imagine that. An old motor home may not even have an engine, if the hood's down, city doesn't know, so it's inoperable, a resident might be renting out a travel tailor, trailer to a non-resident to live there, city would never know, R2 lots, two-plus acres, could easily have six to eight RVs stored on their side lot, rear lot, the resident could have a side hustle of selling used RVs, well, sir, do you own those, well, yes, I do, okay, it's a small business, the city would never know, the current ordinance keeps neighborhoods from looking junky or tacky, I call it the junkification of Dayton, it sets a standard on how neighborhoods should look, protecting residents' homes' value, and again, little to no enforcement of the parking ordinance, the mechanisms for enforcement is broken in the city of Dayton, loosening the requirements will cause more complaints to the city, in my opinion, to deal with, and have fines ever been issued to residents over ordinance infract, parking ordinance infractions, so what are the options, somebody who wants to store RVs, toys on their property, they want more storage, number one, build an accessory building to store the toys in, they have spent tens of thousands of dollars on boats and campers, personal opinion, why wouldn't you want to store them out of the weather, out of the sight of thieves, vandalism, there's a new business, storage business on territorial road in Dayton, someone from the city could contact the owner and get a reduced rate for Dayton residents, support a local company, win-win. Support a local company, win-win. Allow an ordinance exception to build onto an existing accessory building or add a new accessory building within certain square foot limits. Make privacy fencing mandatory for off-driveway storage. You mentioned the corner lot. Technically, they could park it ten feet from, let's just use Pine View for an example, if they live off of Pine View. Technically, their backyard is the frontage to Pine View. So that's basically the front yard to Pine View. So that's an issue that has to be dealt with. Fencing, privacy fencing. Make it tall enough to block the view of all the toys. Out of sight, out of mind. This would also help with vandalism and theft. All right. Item number five, for those residents who want more storage. Follow the ordinance as written and pave an additional spot next to the existing driveway or garage to store your toys. I understand that there's talk about loosening the requirement for a paved surface to include pavers.
Well, just for clarification for the planning commission, the way that the language is currently written makes it, it's very vague to decide whether adding pavers to a parking area is considered an improved surface, such as concrete or asphalt. So.
Well, let's just say that it can be with the approval of the public works director. That's in the language. So technically, let's say that you could put pavers on the side of your yard. So for two to three hundred dollars, you go to Menards, you make your ten-by-twenty, you got a hard surface to park your RV on. Problem solved. Number six, move all the RVs and toys to the existing driveway. This meets the ordinance for parking and doesn't cost anything. Why do you need the backyard? Okay. So I'm urging the planning commission to recommend to the city council to leave the current parking ordinance in place. It's worked fine for forty years. I would say work on the enforcing. Two and a half years, five staff members. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this?
I will just note that on the dais there, there was a comment written in from a resident regarding this item as well.
With that, we will, at ten twenty-three, we will close the public hearing. Open it up for discussion.
I'll just say that, looking around lots in Dayton, whether it's the old code or the new code, there's, there's a lot of enforcement issues. And personally, I don't think the city should get too involved in it. That's why there's certain neighborhoods that are what they are. So I'm kind of, you know, the half acres and arbitrary cutoff is the issue. If anything, that's where maybe unlimited on a point-six acres is maybe not the right answer, but now we're getting in the minutia of coming up with new arbitrary numbers, too. So that's kinda where I'm at, is that it's, you know, even if we kept the old code, we would be full-time busy enforcing it. And that is not the answer for our city.
We could be full-time busy enforcing a whole bunch of different items in our code, right? It's not uncommon for communities to be complaint basis communities. And it's not uncommon for communities to struggle with enforcement of those, of those items. You know, I, I think largely society needs to have an interest in abiding by the rules that are on the books, otherwise our, our city staffs are enormous. I'm, I'm in the boat of not necessar, boat, no pun intended, of not necessarily amending this ordinance. I don't, I don't think it improves much of anything, in my opinion. And, and I, and I brought it up based on the corner lots and, you know, Jeff brought it up based on the, the parking next to the garage on a corner lot in the front yard. I don't know that we really fix anything here. It, it allows them to, to just park it on the grass, sure, that's the change. I don't think it's any better if it's parked on a concrete pad in the backyard, too. It's, it's, it's the presence of that recreational vehicle in the backyard that is an eyesore. What it's parked on, you probably can't even see from the road very, all that easily anyways. I don't think you will fix this code in a way that makes everybody happy. I don't think it's broken, from, from that standpoint, that's my opinion. You know, I, I don't, no code is perfect, honestly. You know, if, if, there, there's gonna be loopholes abound if somebody wants to have a, a untidy lot, there, there's plenty of, plenty of things.
You have some untidy lots.
Plenty, plenty. And it's, you know, is, is the community in the interest of harassing every resident? And there's, there's communities that have gone through a lot of code enforcement, and they've, they've got an entire code enforcement department. Is that good or bad? I, I think it probably depends on what side of that conversation you're on. If, if the code enforcer's knocking on your door, giving you a pink slip and saying you violated this code, you're probably not very happy about it. But if, if you keep your yard neat and tidy and, and it really bothers you that somebody's campers in the backyard, you're probably pretty happy about it. It's one of those divisive issues that I do not think you're gonna make everybody happy. And quite frankly, you'd probably make half of them unhappy and the other half happy. I just, I don't know that it's worth touching the going for it, that's my opinion. I don't think we're gonna fix it. Just, sorry, not to go on a, a big rant, but just like the sign ordinance of, of the temporary signs in the right-of-way, right? We had good intentions, or I wasn't part of it really at that time, this board had good intentions of cleaning up our right-of-way. Well, guess what? It's not very enforceable, and it's not very practical. And it's, it's a challenge that every community has. And, and I think we're back wrestling with that ordinance because there's just no real good way to fix it. I don't, I don't see this as a, as.
What makes us different than some communities, too, is that we have a very mix of rural, two-acre lots, one-acre lots, urban areas, so it makes it even harder to have a standard for everyone.
And I think that's where staff drew the line on a half of an acre. All the proposals we've seen in here, there aren't any half-acre lots anymore in these developments. So I get where staff is coming from, they were, they were going based on the direction they received. And I, I don't know, I just, I, I was on the fence last month and, and I think I'm just more in the boat of, I, I don't think this is fixable necessarily. And, and if we really, if city council really wants to do code enforcement, we gotta staff up. But I just, that's, that's not for this body to decide, at all, so.
Hayden, was this, did, could you clarify, would this amendment had gone to the council and back to us for, with the recommendation of, to look at it again? Could you explain that?
So the item was brought forward for discussion, no action, in January, and based off that discussion, staff had proposed this amendment and published for a public hearing.
Gotcha.
That would then be, uh.
And, and that, in that discussion, in your opinion, the city council was favorable with, for this type of amendment?
Yes, to alleviate the blanket, the entire blanket statement of, no matter what property you're on, there is no parking on, on improved surfaces.
Gotcha.
So that was, that was the direction that we had received from the city council. Now, I will say that there was only one person that did bring this to the city council. When I do reach out to people for enforcement violation letters, or just violation letters, that is what I always tell them when they call me frustrated, is that's your mechanism to see something change, is bring this request to the council, and then they can direct staff to look into an amendment. And it, that was the one resident that decided to do that, so.
Can you change the slide one more time to that egg area, not the residential? This is current language, right?
This is all proposed, both slides.
What is, what is current?
I will go back to, this is the current language here, in quotes.
Yeah, we just saw an A1 parcel, that was, how big was that one?
Point nine-eight acres.
Yeah, and so that's, it's, it's just, it's so difficult.
So, but in A, A1, they would be allowed to visit on Crush Rock.
Yep.
They could park it on Crush Rock. I mean, I, I don't wanna talk out of both sides of my mouth here, but I, I feel like the residential is the part that you're not gonna fix. Egg, the egg area, that point-eight-two, although it's residentially sized lot, it's in the egg area, if it was parked on Crush Rock, I don't think it matters, and it would meet the code. So I don't know that the code's broken. And the question would be, does it need to be on Crush Rock even in the egg? I guess that could definitely be up for discussion of, you know, out in the egg, can it just be parked on the dirt? But I think for residential, I think this is where the heartier complaints are gonna come from, right? The, the residents are gonna be complaining in the residential areas.
Well, Dennis, this reminds me of the, the accessory structure one with the temporary carport type things.
Yep.
This reminds me a hundred percent like that. And I, I'm drawing a blank on what we ended up doing there.
With that specific one, the carport thing?
Yeah.
We lotted it.
Yeah. What?
I think we ended up allowing them in the front yards, but there were, yeah, there was setback requirements.
Yeah, if you had, I think it was over a hundred and fifty feet, then you could come up half. Yeah, it was along those lines.
I mean, this, this seems to somewhat fit into that, I mean.
Well, I, I just seen this as two issues. One is, there are a boatload of residences in violation of the current ordinance. And so is the answer to come in with, you know, your boots clicking and, and tell everybody to straighten up or fix the code so it matches what the people want? You know, again, you're probably gonna end up pissed off half either way. I, I can tell you that there's a lot of people that don't put, you know, rutuminous or, or concrete under their trailer. Because next year, they may not want the trailer in that spot, they may want it over here. So, I mean, that's my hangup with the, with the, with the impervious surfaces. I mean, I've got, I, I can tell you my lot right now, if I get a complaint, I'm gonna be in violation. I've got a horse trailer, I've got a flatbed, I've got a tractor, and I move them around so they don't kill the grass. I'm not gonna put concrete down.
You need a new accessory building.
Probably can't. No, we did fix that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the hard thing is we have such varying difference in types of properties.
Yes.
I mean, the residential areas, yeah, I mean, you wanna see a RV parked on the side of the garage on a paved surface, probably, right?
Well, and I think this, this, I don't remember what the story was here, but I, I think a lot of people want, they wanna hide, they, they do wanna move their trailer in the back of the yard to kinda hide it, instead of having it sit in their yard, or in their driveway, plus now it's in the way.
Yeah, you, yeah, you don't want it in your driveway all winter.
But if they put it in their backyard, now they gotta, what, put a pad down? Who's gonna do that?
To me, it's not really about what it's sitting on.
Yes.
It's, like, especially like the paver, like, pavers can look terrible, right? They'll move and shift and.
What about doing away with paving recommendations as long as they have privacy fencing to hide it from the street?
You can't hide an RV, though.
Yeah, the fence can't be tall enough.
Right.
You'd have an ordinance violation on fence height.
What's your answer to the RV?
I guess where, where I'm hung up on this is, is, you know, the, we, we have an ordinance restricting size, location, type for accessory buildings, right? We have, we have setbacks for a shed, we have sizes for a shed. I can't build a two-story shed in my neighborhood because of the, the way the ordinances are written. I, I'm, what I'm struggling with is, we should be able to figure out an ordinance that does work for the different sized lots that we have. This one just doesn't feel like it, and the different types of uses we have. You know, one of the, I mean, I'll, I'll throw it out there, in some of the R districts, maybe not, maybe not the larger lots, but the smaller lots, shouldn't we be really allowing boats in the driveway in January? Right? It, it's a question. They're not using it, it's not getting moved a lot, it's, you know, same goes with snowmobiles in, in summer in the driveway, right? Should we be allowing that? I get, I get the fact that, yes, it's, that we have HOAs that do enforce that, but on the flip side, we also, you know, want to build a community that is, is, you know, desirable to live in and you don't wanna see your neighbors trash all the time. So I'm, I'm really struggling with this because we, I look at this as a lot of, like, very similar to what we have with outbuildings. In, in regards to, a lot of times, some, as, as the gentleman pointed out, a lot of times some get parked and not ever moved again.
Guess I didn't track on some of that. Why didn't, so let's say the snowmobiles in, in the, in the summer, or, why, why wouldn't you want them then to be able to put it in their backyard? I, I agree, leaving stuff in the driveway, it's in the way all the time.
I, I never said I wouldn't allow it in the backyard, I'm just saying, why don't we restrict it like we do outbuildings? It's kinda where I was going. I mean, in, in my thought processes with this is like, in some of the residential areas with the smaller lots, maybe we even throw in the seasonal restrictions to it. But that's, that's just my head where it's at. I, I understand people may have different opinions and that's okay.
I mean, it, it comes down to an enforcement issue. It always does, right? So, you know, if, if Dayton does not have a robust code enforcement personnel, I, I think that you have to look at how you can craft your ordinances in a way where you're trying to make the majority of the people in compliance, right? So what does that mean? You know, that, this is a difficult situation, I agree, because of the fact that you're trying to, there's no one-size-fits-all solution, especially with the nature of the varying lot sizes, so on and so forth, zoning districts. It's, it's a difficult one, I, I agree.
You know, I think of it like the temporary sign, how that backfired. If we did do something, I could see it backfiring really fast because of the number cap. You know, now someone gets wind of it and they turn someone in, and all of a sudden we have a bunch of complaints that we have to look into and investigate because it just ripples through things. Because I'm just looking on the aerial views and there's a lot of lots that won't be in compliance with one in their backyard. And it's not wrong or right, obviously, everyone seems to be getting wrong with it, along with it, but obviously, it's also in violent, or in violation of our current code, too. And so if we change the code, we're kinda putting a bullet, our bullseye out there, all right, hey, now I can turn people in, and it might be more work than we really want. And it's not gonna solve anything quickly.
No, there's, there will still be violations out there, even if this is changed. I can see the argument, because I made the argument myself, of, I don't think you can even see what surface it's parked on anyways. I, I personally don't care what surface it's parked on. You know, and I can understand the idea of moving the thing around so it doesn't kill the grass, and, you know, you might not always have it there, and I, to me, it's just, it feels like it, it, no matter what, this is a massive enforcement issue. Now, you could change it to a un-improved surface and have less compliance issues because you've seemingly taken some violations off the books. I'm not helping a lot there from that standpoint.
Yeah, the hardest part is even if we.
I don't, I don't think it's very easy to solve.
Yeah, even if we did do the less than a half acre with one, I don't know the magic number for one acre, it's like, now it's really arbitrary and creates even a bigger enforcement issue of what's right and wrong, too.
Is it all of R1? I don't know what is, R1 is what, four units an acre? Up to four units an acre for density, right?
R, R1, the minimum lot size is fifteen thousand square feet, where the R3, the minimum lot size is sixty-five thousand, or sixty-five hundred square feet. I think that R3 district really is the focus of the dense, the, the common density that we see with new developments now.
The other thing I agree with is the fact that generally, ordinance changes are a result of numerous people with the same concern approaching staff or council saying something needs to be done. You know, in this instance, if it was one individual, yes, I, I understand the direction was to ask the council. and the council couldn't ask staff to give some direction. Again, if it was a hundred people knocking on the door saying you have to change, I think I'd be looking a little differently with this proposed change. It could be an instance that, you know, we had the same conversation with the case right before this with, you're trying to get the best result for the most people, you're not gonna satisfy a hundred percent of the people a hundred percent of the time. So, I think potentially the ordinance is fine as it is right now and we just wait until we get a lot more concern knocking on the door.
I'm in that camp too, I think.
You had one resident come forward, but, I mean, we have a boatload of people not in compliance. So, you ignore that?
We have even more that are in compliance.
Potentially.
I think with our proposed code, there's, I suppose it's unlimited if you have more than a half acre, so then it's. And I'm not, I don't really have a, I don't have an issue with the surface that they're parked on either, that's not the issue.
I think it's true, I think that's fairly trivial.
I mean, yeah. I look at what.
I think that was just a way to make it harder.
Yeah, so, so I'm thinking about this a lot, 'cause, you know, I made the statement about the sheds and accessory buildings 'cause I think there's a way to size it right, the way we do that on acreage. It's, yeah, it's a little more work and we gotta figure that out, and that's kind of our job. The other thing we do a lot, right, we talk about businesses and where they can park stuff and where they can have their materials, where they can have their screening. And I don't see this as much different, I really don't.
With the exception, I don't wanna be on a planning commission or nor the council with continuous CUPs on whether it's screened appropriately. How many of these cases are out there? It's just not a good use of time with everything else we got to do.
Well, and I, and I see that and I, you know, I value that too, because we don't need to be here till eleven o'clock every month like we are, but. But I think there's a way, I do think there's a way we can, we can work through this, I just don't know if this is the right, the one that's written is the right way to do it, and I just don't know. On the same token of, you know, if it's not broke, why are we trying to do something? If the broken part's the enforcement, we gotta fix that first. And even changing this language will not help with enforcement, so.
Can I ask, who is the code enforcer of Dayton, is it?
Primarily.
It's the new guy on the commission.
They go great. It's like being the assistant weed inspector, right? I mean, same guy. No, I mean, is it just CD department, or is there? For zoning violations, it is primarily myself, and then for city code issues, it's the CSO, the Community Service Officer. Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, obviously, as Dayton's growing, there might be a need to get a staff person dedicated for that because inevitably, you're gonna get targeting calls of neighbors who are upset that the HOA isn't doing anything, or whatever it might be. And it's, I think it's inevitable, so, something to consider. If it's a huge enforcement issue, obviously, you could try to change the code, but it's, once people start asking, the city's gonna have to provide, and how are you gonna do that with two people on staff, right? Actually doing the work, so, it's difficult.
So, we got three options. Accept it as is, keep it the same, or put it back on staff. And I think the direction is, we put it back on staff, we even, what Peter was getting to, is we need a little bit more matrix to feel comfortable about sizes. Maybe once you get above, if we could give staff direction, if that's what we wanna do, I don't know, it's all arbitrary, so I'm just throwing a number out there, but once you get above three acres or something like that, now it's just, we don't care. We gotta focus on how you get up to that point, if we wanna do that. It seems to me that that's our three options. And again, that three acres was one hundred percent arbitrary, that could be something else.
Stuff is, I mean, yeah, I'd be willing to say anything over like a half acre, it doesn't matter what it's parked on, get rid of the paving requirement.
Well, that's kinda what this one's doing. Getting rid of the paving in the back, not an issue. But currently, it says if you have more than a half acre, it's unlimited.
Yeah.
And is that a big deal? Like, I guess it's only a big deal if someone really abuses it, I guess, right?
Yeah.
I'll just, in observations, whatever your, however big your yard is, I mean, I think the tendency is you park a boat or an RV in the back corner of your property closest to your neighbor's house. So, you know, whether it's a half acre, three, or ten acres.
It's not in the middle.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, just looking at Dayton, the areas that have a lot of stuff, that's the more of the mature parts of Dayton. And there's a lot of just trees and overgrowth and shrubbery along property boundaries already, so it's not crazy, it's just. And maybe that's part of it is to have that screening written in there that.
The worst areas are the new developments. Like, when you drive through Ramsey Town Center and their northwest section, it's looked like light because there's no trees and there's boats everywhere.
And if you add that into the language.
Abandoned boats, and they can't do anything about it.
If you add that, some of that screening into the language, it will already weed out maybe seventy-five percent of our. Yeah, screening is subjective though, that's the hard part too. I mean, you're not gonna, unless it's a fence, you're not gonna screen it year round. Trees drop leaves. I don't know, I guess, but back to our three points, are we gonna recommend staff to come up with something different? I think Nick, myself, you're on the same page, probably if it isn't broken, don't fix it. I do completely understand Mayor Fisher's point though, that there's a ton of people in violation, if we did something, maybe bring some of them out of it.
But it doesn't really change the situation at all. The physical situation did not change.
And that's the.
All we did is make them complain, which is great, I suppose, right? But it didn't do anything for the community.
I just see it as silly, having to put a pad in your backyard to store something.
Yeah.
And that was my big deal with that.
I just feel like we own the rest of this code now when we start to play with it. We own it anyways, it's on the books, but.
This gets back to, I think, Nick, where you were starting with, is we had this temporary sign ordinance that we went through and it didn't fix anything, and then we ended up throwing it away.
Yeah.
And so.
After spending a lot of staff hours.
Where my head is at, and I guess Darren, where my head's at is, I'm gonna say, let's not do anything and if the council wants to push on doing something, we've got a recommendation for staff to do a little more matrixing style.
Okay.
Not to beat the horse, I guess, but are there any other advantages for hard surfacing rather than aesthetics?
Potentially.
I mean, you're looking at potential oil leaking, maybe some environmental.
But it's gonna get there eventually, the oil's gonna get washed off of that hard surface. No, I don't think, honestly, I think it was just a way to be like, you wanna park it back there, it's gonna be a little bit more effort, yeah.
I think the defined space is probably the biggest benefit.
Okay.
Do we need a motion on this?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, oh, hold on here, are we making a motion on the proposed ordinance?
Correct. Unless you want to propose any changes right now.
No, so I need to make a motion to, I'll make a motion to deny the proposed ordinance at this point in time and leave the current ordinance on the books.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes for five to zero. Alright.
Thank you, I will just note that a resolution for denial will be brought to the city council on February twenty-fifth.
Your turn.
Alright.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, alright. So, this next ordinance amendment is related to the sign code and this first section that I'll speak on is specifically related to the discussion that came from the variance request from QuickTrip along Dayton ninety-four, or I ninety-four and that they had proposed variants for eighty-foot-tall sign, two-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet, and that would be their second freestanding sign on the site, all of which were approved and a discussion with the applicants was a request to change the proposed twenty-five-foot-tall sign along Dayton Parkway and Holly Lane from the twenty-five-foot code compliant pylon sign to a monument sign. And this discussion actually both occurred at the planning commission meeting and the city council and the response from the applicant was, if the sign could be, the monument sign could be taller than eight feet, that would be something that they would look into. I've since reached out, or they have since reached out, wondering if a proposed amendment to the height of monument signs has been approved yet. And as such, this is what is before you in this first part of the amendment, is to change the maximum height allowed for a monument sign from eight feet to ten feet in commercial and industrial districts while at the same time, leaving the square footage area the same from sixty-four square feet to sixty-four square feet. I think in internal discussions with staff, we didn't find it necessary to add any of the square footage area as that is the code standard for pylon signs at twenty-five feet tall. And if you limit that eight by eight area, say, on a eighteen, or sixteen-foot-tall monument sign, there is still room left for what is essentially an aesthetic base to that sign area. So, that is the first one. Basically, the ordinance is in front of you in your packets as well, changes the monument sign height from eight feet to sixteen feet. And there was one more language change in there related to wall signage. There's current language in there that says that all wall signage must be on the primary entrance wall of the building. When we were looking through this at the staff level, staff didn't really understand the necessity for that given you have a certain size of signage that you are allowed based on that wall. And if you can meet that standard, it seemed unnecessary to require it to be limited to that one front entrance wall. Any questions on this section? I know that there's a.
Just clarity, originally you said eight feet to ten feet, and then I saw sixteen feet up there and I think you said eight feet to sixteen feet, what are we proposing?
Did I say ten feet right away?
Yeah.
Apologies. Thank you for calling that out. It is an amendment to go from eight feet to sixteen feet.
And I guess the only reason I pointed it out is more the sixty-four square feet, is if you actually went to sixteen feet, that's, what is that? Five? It's not very, it's gonna look weird if you actually went that tall.
Very good proportionality, I think, if you double the height of the sign.
Oh, he's, I got it, Peter's showing me.
Yeah, I'm showing him the graphic.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, that, totally spaced it, I put that in there.
So, that doesn't include the foundation, got it?
The square footage area, it's only the sign language.
Sign area, got it.
Could I ask how we define the sign area? So, every city's different, some cities say the closest fit box around the actual text is how they define the sign area.
Correct.
Is that how Dayton does it?
Yes, it would be that area that has the language, and then wall signs is even more specific to kinda the channel letters themselves.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. Any other questions on?
How tall do you wanna go?
I mean, sixteen feet seems really tall for a monument sign to me.
Yeah, it'd have to be a pretty big property to justify sixteen feet. It was a little, a little property, it'd seem weird.
And, and, you know, we had the example of QuickTrip, right?
And I would call that a big property in the sense of the whole landscaped area and everything.
And it's kind of in a ditch and we're playing with grade there.
Right.
I think this is somewhat unique.
I'm more like, for example, at the DCM Farms commercial area, that would look huge.
Yep.
Yes.
I completely take that point and I would just add that as well as being a PUD like Commissioner Sargent as well, as you had mentioned, sign for the commercial area can be established as a condition of approval.
Yep. I'm more thinking for our general commercials, we don't have really anything yet besides the rain tree area that, of course, you know, there's land for sale there, but I don't know if you guys have had any applications on it, but in that area too, that little site that's for sale, two and a half acres. Not saying that someone would even wanna put that big a sign on it, but.
That's a monument too, upfront.
I'm more talking about the vacant land.
No, I understand that, but it just dawned on me that that's, that sign out there is.
So, we had one variance in the last couple of years on this?
Yeah, and I will just say our current commercial zoning is gonna need a lot of work when we actually have commercial development and places for it to go, 'cause we really don't right now. And so that's why, too, I don't wanna overkill the sign thing because our whole commercial districts know whatever that how we had to work on our industrial and we had a bunch of industrial development.
Did staff do any kind of surveying of surrounding cities and how what their minimum requirements or maximum requirements are for monument signage?
Yes, I did, and actually, for monument signs, especially in Maple Grove, are really strict as I think the maximum is eight feet with, actually, I think it's, trying to think of the last, it was either six or eight feet for an individual sign, and then there was obviously allowances for like comprehensive sign plans and things like that. In areas like Rogers, especially along the freeway, their code language doesn't differentiate between, actually, the entire sign code doesn't differentiate between pylon signs and monument signs. And that's what I've seen more common, at least in places that I've researched, that they don't differentiate the height requirements between monuments and pylons.
So, what was Rogers' requirement?
Was thirty feet and I believe a hundred square feet in total.
So, there's kinda two extremes where Maple Grove is very restrictive and Rogers is not, where do we fit?
Did we look at any other cities in the area?
I could tell you that just from past.
Champlin, do we look at Champlin?
I haven't looked at Champlin's sign ordinance yet. I haven't looked at Brooklyn Park's yet either as well.
Yeah, it's just kinda similar in nature along six-ten there through Brooklyn Park, there's areas all through there that is similar to what we were dealing with past ninety-four.
I will say, it's not uncommon either for, especially like Maple Grove and Rogers, really differentiate based on where you are located.
Yeah, I could see sixteen feet being a little bit too tall. That's pretty tall, sixteen feet.
I think the other number that was discussed when this was originally brought forward was twelve feet.
What is QuickTrip proposing for their monument?
Whatever you guys would give them.
Okay, I was just curious if they had, if they had a specific requirement or suggestion.
They did, I will say that they did say that they could make a twelve-foot sign work or a sixteen-foot-tall monument sign. However, at the planning commission level and the city council level, there was no conditions of approval related to changing that code compliant pylon sign on Holly Lane and Dayton Parkway. So, if the amendment goes through and it is twelve feet and they say, no, we don't really like that, then they will propose a code compliant twenty-five-foot-tall sign there because they did receive a variance for the second freestanding sign on the site. So, that's, that was something that I had mentioned to the group when we had, the proposal was in front and it was not of interest to make that a requirement.
I guess where I stand to try to move this line is twelve feet and sixteen feet, they're both subjective, it really depends on what sort of development it is. It's a forty-thousand-square-foot retail center, sixteen feet's just fine, in fact, sixty-four feet's probably too light. You need more signage for everything going on. But if it's a one-off little retail store, that seems excessive and the user probably wouldn't wanna do that anyway because it's expensive. So.
And not.
I could go either way, twelve or sixteen.
And I wouldn't anticipate every proposed sign plan for a business to come in and propose the maximum, but I mean, setting the maximum kinda gives them that threshold to work within.
Yeah.
And you're not gonna be able to, I mean, kinda get into the weeds here, it'd be difficult to dictate. It'd be difficult to dictate based on other than, things other than zoning districts, I would say.
Not to make you repeat yourself, if we don't change this and it remains existing, what is the QuickTrip on Holly Lane prepared to do?
Uh, they would, uh, from my understanding, and they haven't submitted a permit application or anything like that, is that I believe that if the, well, regardless, they could do a code-compliant twenty-five-foot-tall pylon sign.
Pylon.
Yeah.
And we're not talking about adjacent to the interstate. We're talking about near Holly.
Correct.
Yeah. They were just saying, because we gave them a tall one, they'd be willing to do a shorter one, if it was...
But eight feet wouldn't be that...
Eight feet one would.
Couldn't see over the overpass or driving.
I think, I guess I'm okay with sixteen. I think that it's just something that we have to keep on our radar as we watch how other commercial districts start developing and getting proposed.
They don't have an interest in coming in to specifically request a sixteen-foot monument sign in lieu of the pylon and get a specific approval, separate approval for it.
What, what came to be the struggle there, especially at the public hearing, was what are the findings of fact to allow for a variance of such from the eight feet to sixteen feet? I think that was really what staff on, on our end really had a difficult time understanding. What is the practical difficulty to not being able to meet the code standard?
Well, in this case, the code standard being a twenty-five-foot pylon sign, we wouldn't want that anyways.
Or the eight footer.
Yeah. Yeah. A monument looks way better than a pylon.
Correct. I could see sixteen being fine as, as proposed, and, you know, the user themselves, to your point there, and they're, and they're not gonna propose, say, we got a small user that comes in, they're not gonna put up a massive monument sign. I guess they could.
Some national, like fast food chains might.
But we're not to that point yet.
We don't want a twenty-five-foot pylon there for QuickTrip either.
Right.
Yeah, I'd rather see a sixteen-foot-tall monument sign with a nice base and landscaping than a twenty-five-foot-tall pylon sign. So I'd rather push everybody to go to the sixteen-foot monument over the pylon.
But they could make a twelve-foot work.
But we're not doing this for them. We're doing this to find where our standards are.
Who else would we do it? I mean, like, who else would be bigger than that? I know we don't know what else would come down the pipe, but, you know, I think about where that land is situated.
Yeah.
And, and the visual nature of it. Twelve does it there, it probably does it everywhere, I would think.
Yeah. Twelve would work just fine there.
Can you recall the height of the QuickTrip sign, their monument sign on eighty-one?
I think that's sixteen. And I believe, I'm going off memory from several years ago.
I think it might be taller, because I think we gave them a...
That was a variance.
For combining their signage for their, because they own two commercial lots adjacent to.
Doesn't look out of place if it's sixteen feet to me. I mean, I've never driven by and said, holy cow, it's a huge...
Yeah, that area is so heavy industrial, and the first thing you see is the forty-five-foot-tall Cube's building anyway.
Right.
And I will say too, especially like places like the Old Village, they monument, or freestanding signs aren't allowed there, because the encouragement for new business along, is it Robinson?
Yep.
Street and down the main road, have build-two lines. So really not making freestanding signs practical in that regard.
So, so really, we're thinking, I mean, just kind of thinking around town, we've got, we've got the, the gas stations.
The Rain Tree Plaza area.
Rain Tree, and Rain Tree Plaza, so areas that make sense, right? Gas stations. We've got, um, what's, what's the road on Rain Tree?
Balsam.
Balsam.
That's the businesses there.
Which, some businesses there that...
But they're more destination businesses, and they're not gonna justify...
I don't think a sixteen-foot-tall sign would be...
Appropriate.
Appropriate for the size of businesses. We got the golf courses. Golf courses, maybe.
They're destination too. The more destination you get, the less, you're not trying to pull people in by spending lots of money on signs.
Yeah. I mean, they may want to put one up as a nice sign for entrance, but they're probably not putting up a sixteen-foot-tall monument sign.
No, I mean, you're doing a taller sign like that because it's a major road, right? And you're trying to get more visibility.
So I'm just logically going through my head of like, are we...
A retail strip center would want it, especially if it's bigger, for all the advertising of the tenants.
And that would look really nice at Rain Tree, to pull some people in.
Yeah, I mean, it's currently Rain Tree, but it'll also be in the future.
Unfortunately, I don't have the language in front of me, but there are different standards for comprehensive sign plans for multi-tenant buildings and such. I just don't have that language in front of me right now.
I'm just more thinking about like, if, you know, realistically, we're gonna, if we were to get a sign application in tomorrow, you know, where would it come from? So, that's the, in my head, right?
I think an eight-by-sixteen is a nice proportion. I would suggest that.
Maybe we should open the public hearing and close it real quick, so...
We have a public hearing, so we will open that at eleven oh five. Anyone here to speak on this?
You spent four and a half hours here, you'd almost speak one more time? Are we thinking neon? Can I say no neon?
And we will close the public hearing at eleven oh six.
So the only thing that we're really recommending is changing the ordinance to change the height from eight to sixteen feet.
And remove the requirement that wall signage be only on the primary entrance of the buildings.
I'm fully supportive.
Yeah.
Aside from the temporary signs in language that John had put together.
Next. Do we have something in there, you have it drawn with a brick on there, do we have something on there of a, something added in there of a...
Material requirements.
What?
Material requirements.
Yeah, material requirements.
I believe that there is.
Because we don't want just, uh, maybe we do, just want a plain, I don't know.
You're the architect. I mean, it's, it can go so many different ways, right? I mean, like, block, brick, stone, metal panel could be fine. Like, you could do a precast panel that looks really nice with acid etching and, you know, integral color, like, there's so many things it could be.
It would look bad.
What would look bad? What do we not want to do?
Just like bare concrete block.
An eight-foot-tall pylon?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's a... That's not bad.
A lot of times, codes will have, it has to be built of compatible material of the principal structure.
So maybe, maybe something along those lines in there.
That might be sheet metal.
Material.
What's that?
That might be sheet metal.
Could be.
Could be.
Is, so signs are hard to regulate. Like, it's the hardest part of the, the code. So I, so my, my question, I guess, is, do you have enough information to make a decision, or do you want to sit and wait up, think about this more?
I don't think the height is an issue for me. I, I just don't think it is, meaning, you know, and as we refine our commercial districts and where they're gonna be, like, you know what, there might be different requirements for different commercial districts, but I don't, I don't think that there's that much going on that we need to worry about it right now. We've got the Rain Tree Plaza, that land, if it's a gas station, they want to put a sixteen-foot pylon up.
Again, I apologize that I don't have, I'm trying to get all of the code in my head, but in good time, it will happen. There is language related to construction of the material. It shall be done with masonry materials, brick, stone, to keep maintenance and upkeep costs to a minimum. And the, that's related to freestanding signs. Monument signs, monument sign basis shall be constructed of similar material, style, and color as the principal building.
Fair enough.
Well done.
Not, not uncommon language in zoning.
Somebody has a code just like that.
I don't, I can't think anything, John, that more that would change at this point in time. I just don't think we have that many commercial parcels to, to think that we're hurting anything here. That's good, so...
Is there consensus for sixteen feet?
I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Okay. The sign area remains unchanged at sixty-four. Okay.
I'll make a motion to...
There's more to the code.
Oh, wait, there's more.
There, wait.
I thought we had just the wall.
Temporary signs.
That's right.
So just...
Balloons.
To, to simplify this, where would you like temporary signs?
Dumpster.
We've tried that.
So, can I add something, John? My understanding was there was a change in belief that we were, when we originally had all this stuff, we were told that content couldn't be regulated. Hence, the CF we ended up with. Is that changed?
Uh, no, I mean, this is all, I can't think of, it's a court case from, I don't remember what year it was, it related to a church advertising and, or nonprofit, and was treated differently than commercial advertisement. Court said you can't do that.
Okay. Do we know that? Because I've been told by multiple sources that that is not true.
Some cities have it, that you, was it at Maple Grove that allows...
One of them, yep.
Doesn't allow commercial signage unless you're a realtor marking homes, then they allow that.
And that, that is true in, in this zoning ordinance as well, but not in the right-of-way.
Is the city council willing to have the city attorney researching for you?
Trying to remember if she did. I think her opinion was, she said you couldn't, well...
I thought we changed it to, so that even the, the realtor signs could only have one going north, north-south.
Yeah, we didn't...
Going east-west.
Yeah, we didn't change that though. Not yet. And here we are.
So kind of where this is coming from, and Dennis, you'll have to correct me. So we, we had residents that complained about the clutter of signs on the corners. We realized that we did not have in our code any prohibition of signs in the right-of-way. Adopted ordinance that prohibited it in the right-of-way, and then we had complaints from residents that were taking their signs. So in the code, I mean, the happy median is to say, the signs are allowed ten feet away from the street. So part of the issue is, most people don't know where the edge of their property is. So the example that's on here, and I don't know what the scale is, it might be ten feet, it might be twenty feet. When we're out doing enforcement, we can't tell either.
Well, then that assumes that the sign is owned by the property owner. I mean, we, we even had, the fire department had to go collect their signs, because they were in the right-of-way.
They were violating the code, yeah.
Yeah, and the original intent was, because of all the, you know, open house signs, that was the original issue that, that residents were complaining about, but it all, you know, revolves around content. So if we can't regulate, regulate it based on content, I don't know. I don't know how we get there from here, so...
I mean, this is certainly another enforcement issue.
Yep.
Right? So in my opinion, if you're gonna allow the cluster of signs, it's not gonna matter if it's in the right-of-way or ten feet away.
Yep.
From that same spot. It's not, you're still gonna have the concerns that it's a clutter of these types of signs in an area that I don't like them to be located. The easiest way is just to say no signs in the right-of-way, or no temporary signs in the right-of-way. And then if that code's in place, you can essentially enforce that by picking them up and putting them in the back of your truck, or whatever it is, and taking them to City Hall dumpster, or whatever you want to do with them. I don't know if that's the direction the city wants to go.
Well, that is the direction we like.
Right, so...
That's where we went, yeah.
So if that's where you, I mean, that's, that's certainly an option, right? That way, you're not regulating content, you're saying you just can't put them here. Now, if there's a guy on a corner lot who says, yeah, I, I'd go ahead and put them on my yard, I don't care, then you have to regulate, well, how many can that guy have? And then that, then, then you might be getting into the idea of what is content control at that point. So, in other words, you can't have a political sign in your yard for, that's state statute, right, for a certain amount of time before and after the elections. But I could put up a, an opinion sign in my yard all day long. I could put twenty of them in my yard all day long if I wanted to. So I think that's where you, the city would have to make some justification if they want any sign in the right-of-way. I think that's the easiest yes or no.
I don't know that that's actually true, right? Because is it not state statute that you are not allowed to place signs in, well, I guess, in right-of-way, period? Well, it, it's up to who, who has the right-of-way. So like Henepin County prohibits it in the right-of-way, Mendota prohibits it in the right-of-way. Whatever our code is, that's not gonna change for county and state highways.
Sure are a lot of signs in the right-of-way in Fernbrook.
They don't enforce it.
Right.
So, I guess maybe we're, maybe this is a, a higher-level question. If we permit a sign to be in the right-of-way, and there's an accident, who's, who's liable? Kid's hiding behind the sign, runs out into the road, driver didn't see him. I mean, where I'm going with this is, is that why the county, they, they don't allow it, but they, they don't have the means to enforce it? I don't know.
It's like any city-owned infrastructure in the right-of-way, right? I slip on ice, run my car into a light pole, right? Who's liable?
I mean... I just, if we're, if we allow them in the right-of-way though, that's, we're allowing that obstruction to be there. We don't allow, we don't allow buildings or trees to be planted within a certain distance. Why are we allowing these? That's, that's where my logic is running into this. We do it for sightlines, we do it for, for maintenance, we do it for other reasons than enforcement.
So we didn't allow them, and we enforced it, and we got a lot of public backlash from the non-commercial enforcement. Is that fair to say, or...
No, I think it's kind of equal. I mean, you know, the two pictures on the right, I mean, the second one from the right was from today, so these are the big realtor flags. The one on the right, I mean, they, they have concrete footings in them.
I wouldn't consider concrete footings temporary signs.
Do we require permits for temporary signs?
We do. It is a, it is a permit that...
What's the consequences besides us picking up the signs? Are there fines?
Well, the first thing that we would do is follow the violation process, and then the fines would then ensue after the final notice, which I believe is the fourth notice based on the enforcement policy adopted in 2010. And then at that point, if we sent them a violation notice, and they come in for a temporary sign after the fact, it is double the fee.
Can you issue an administrative citation to somebody that is not a resident of your community?
I don't even know if there's language in our...
Right.
They're my...
D.R. Horton. They're not residents necessarily. I suppose they own property, but the company itself...
That would be, that's our...
Right, but when... You would go against that property tax record, and then they'd have to, yeah. Yeah, rectify. When it's in the right-of-way, it's easier just to take the sign. Yeah.
Or you write an ordinance to say, here's what this fee schedule or the fine schedule is for signs taken out of the right-of-way. And then you could say, okay, it's three hundred bucks each sign, each time I'm picking a sign, D.R. Horton, do you want to pay it, pay up that twelve hundred bucks, or do you want to not put signs in the right-of-way, right? So there's...
And you'd have to like pick a property to attach that to, which would be pretty hard for staff as well, right? If it's just in a common, like that, that's a common parkway.
Model home.
If it wasn't, if it was in the right-of-way, we wouldn't be able to, obviously, reach out to the property owner. That'd be us, or that company.
It seems pretty clear that we should just not allow temporary signs in the right-of-way. But whether we enforce it or not is a different story.
That's what it is today.
Right. Whether we enforce it or not is a different story.
Well, we stopped enforcing it. The problem is, well, there's a couple of problems. One is, it, it will end up being complaint-based, and two is, it can be used as a weapon. These, all these ordinances we have in the books that we don't enforce can always be used as weapons. You know, you, you don't want to point to anybody today that would do that, because I don't, I don't think there would be, but we have in the past seen that. Weapons, or ordinances that are laying around just waiting to be used can be-
I think the problem is that when you craft certain ordinances, it's still a weapon. It's no different than the last ordinance we discussed. You know, there's still gonna be violations that aren't enforced.
Could be.
Do you want to see what Councilman Van Aston wants to say?
Unfortunately, I don't think that we would be able to, in terms of, uh, open meeting law, as we have two council members in attendance, uh, right now. So, adding her into the con- conversation would essentially be three council members in the same area, in the same conversation. That's my, I mean, that's, that would be my, uh, not that we don't want to obviously hear from Councilmember Van Aston and her thoughts on this.
I'm just gonna speculate, that Miss Van Aston's gonna talk about content again. And I know that we had that conversation last time, but I think it's worth exploring this if we think we can regulate content a little bit, because it makes it way easier, and, uh-
What content would you regulate?
Uh, meaning business versus non-business, or just like how Maple Grove's-
So, you would say no to the businesses, right?
Well, like, I was looking at, thinking of Maple Grove's ordinance, I forget what it was last meeting, but it was about, they allowed certain stuff, but then they didn't allow other stuff.
But we, uh, we have that section for Realtor signs as well, for when properties are for sale. I think that they're allowed one per each frontage-
Right.
Um, when they are for sale. Um, my, my interpretation of the commercial, we can't, um, regulate commercial sign, my interpretation was always, that's the language itself.
Yes.
Not the, not the non-commercial versus commercial, a sign is a sign. But the commercial language that someone puts on a sign, that is something that we cannot dictate. That's my interpretation, and I would be happy to, um, double-check that with the city attorney.
Yeah, and I'm thinking the language is advertising.
But even, but those are, those are the problem signs.
Right.
Right, so if you say, "We don't want those signs in our right of way," we're in effectively no different situation than we are now. That, it didn't do anything, whether we could regulate content or not.
Whether we don't enforce it or not, right.
Those are the ones you want to get out. I mean, we want to regulate the content so that advertising is not present within our right of ways. Well, that's 99% of the sign issues anyways. You know, your grandma's garage sale sign is not bothering anybody.
Right, and so the other point then is, then if we allow them in the right of way-
Allow which ones?
Any signs, we're not solving anything either. So, it's either you don't allow them, or you allow them.
Yeah, agreed.
I think the advantage of-
I get what you're saying.
Is the advantage of not allowing them allows us to go pick them up and take them out.
If we choose.
If we choose. Well, what if, you know, what if we get a pile, like, the, the one pile there, all on one corner?
Well, we can be you, you can just look at Pineview, the roundabout there, every weekend's got 20, 23, 24 signs.
And I think, I think a lot of this issue is that, uh, they kind of get familiar with the, uh, schedule of going around to picking them up, and then they go out immediately after, um, so I think that that's what did, at least public work, the infra- the feedback we got from Public Works was that.
I don't think it's wise to draft an ordinance saying we allow them in the right of way.
That's, that's where I'm-
You don't have to draft an ordinance saying you allow them.
You just be silent about it, or?
Be silent.
Just don't have it. Don't have an ordinance, period.
It's not gonna change physically what's happening in our right of way.
So, don't have an ordinance, period, on temporary signs.
Plenty of communities don't.
Okay.
Except we do.
We do now.
That's the problem. Yeah, we do now, as of, but here, but whenever that was.
We didn't previous to that.
Correct.
And we're physically along our right of ways in no different situation than we were a year ago, except we wasted a lot of staff time picking up your signs.
And irritating residents, yeah.
Yeah.
I'd be fine with no ordinance.
I, I think you need to have an ordinance regulating temporary signage, because otherwise you're gonna get a situation where you're gonna get your commercial properties that are gonna just abuse it, and put up as many temporary signs as they want. Uh, I did work for a community that did not have a temporary sign code at all, and I installed one, and I could actually then determine what the building was made out of at one point after enforcing it, because they had so many signs on their building, that you couldn't even tell what it was made out of. And so, you know, at that point, I, I think it is wise to have something in the books. Uh, it is just a determination on where you put them.
Yeah, so temporary signs in the right of way is-
I'd say, I'd say, get them out of the right of way.
We don't need no, we need an ordinance saying, don't put them in the right of way, is what you, your opinion?
I think you'd, I think you would. Um, and then it's, it's an enforcement issue again. Uh, but then, if the enforcement issue becomes a problem because it's too overbearing, then potentially, language needs to be added that gives teeth to that. Uh, you know, we are serious about this, we'll pick up your signs, uh, we'll store them here, you get them back at 25 bucks a pop, or whatever it is.
I don't want them back.
Right, I don't want them back, they don't care, right? So, or we, every sign we pick up, we're calling this number and charging you 25 bucks, or whatever. I, I mean, I'm just throwing some numbers out there, but, so there, there is ways around that. Um, the communities I've worked in don't allow any kind of signage in the right of way.
And that is essentially the current language that is in place.
Except, we explicitly said we will no longer enforce it, because grandma's garage sale sign was being picked up, that's the problem. Joey's graduation sign was being picked up.
But if you have an ordinance, you have to enforce it.
I, I am a big fan that ordinances should be enforced, and that's why I think we have to-
And if you're not going to, you can help.
The problem with, with having an ordinance that doesn't, or is silent on it, is that you're gonna get, and you could potentially get people who won't start picking up their signs anymore, they'll just leave them out.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've got that in the photo examples, so-
Yeah, I think we already have that.
Fall long.
Yeah, yeah, they put out the sign for gutter cleaning, and they don't care if, if it's there five years from now, they don't even know.
Where do you do it with the more free advertising?
30 feet up on a wood pole.
On the telephone pole.
I love those, like, we don't have bucket trucks.
Or the, we buy ugly houses, or the hand, hand-drawn ones, that say, call this, I'll buy your house, call this number. I mean, it, it could be a visual, a visual deterrent, obviously, and people are concerned about that.
And that's, that's kind of where I'm at, is, okay, we say we don't enforce it, but nothing says in our ordinance, if we take it out of the ordinance, we can't go pick them up, is what you're saying, right?
I'd say if, if they're in the right of way-
If they're in the right of way, you can go get them, they're, your right of way is your right of way. People can't put a sign in your right of way and keep it there. You've got all the right in the world to go take those, that sign out of the right of way.
So then, so then what you're saying is, we don't have to explicitly say that we're gonna have this in, that we're gonna allow them or not allow them in the right of way, we can just go pick them up whenever we want.
Wouldn't you be able to, it's your right of way?
I'm just, in, in regard to, uh, the yard sale signs and grab party signs, it's really the off-premise secu-, or the off-premise sign that would come with that. Um, one, I think the permit not required section does allow for people to, uh, have those types of signs on their property, just not off-premise, just not on, and it doesn't require a permit.
And those, I think, they'll, they'll go pick up their signs anyway when their event's over.
Yep, exactly. But if they're tucked back into a cul-de-sac, or they want to be out on the-
To be clear, with the temporary signs, are we only discussing in the right of way, or are we also discussing not in the right of way? Because I think there's two distinct things.
Oh, yeah, that's a huge difference.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
We only are talking about signs in the right of way, with the temporary sign language. We're keeping the code with temporary signs for outside of the right of way.
There's two parts to this, so one is, do you want to allow temporary signs in the right of way? And then two, do you want to allow off-premise signs on private property?
With the permission of the property owner.
I don't think we have a say. Just my opinion.
I, I didn't catch that.
I don't think we have a say.
I think we have a say. It's, the, the whether we want to have a say is a different story.
I think that part gets a little difficult, because if you have a new roof on your property from a hailstorm or something, then you see those signs that are two-by-two that go and get placed in your yard from the company that put it there, and they're like, if you keep it in your yard for however long, I mean, that's the permission of the property owner, and that's a commercial sign.
Those are the signs you can't regulate, if they're in the property, if they're on someone's property.
Essentially, that's, yeah.
Right. And they're gonna remove them anyway in short periods.
Yeah, I don't think it's that so much as you have, um, like, a company or someone that, you know, I'm gonna rent your, your yard, essentially.
I'm gonna rent your corner of your yard for my big banner sign.
Yeah, and it's gonna be up there all year, and next year.
And if, it's, as long as it meets the square footage requirements of not requiring a permit, or they obtain a temporary permit, I believe that there's a certain, if it's a month, I think it might be 30 days within-
I can think of a few examples of that that have happened in Dayton with home building, but other than that, I can't think of any, though. That's a good thing. Can you, or, am I?
Yeah, we have seasonal businesses-
I don't think, I don't know if that's a problem, I guess, at least, is what I'm trying to say.
Or do they have a better view, I mean, don't we have, we have- To allow off-
Be off-premise.
Yeah, so- In the right of way.
In the right of way.
And, and, like, I think my argument would be, I don't, I don't know why you have to address it. I don't know why you have to specifically allow it or disallow it in your right of way. It's your right of way. Go take them if you don't want them in your right of way. I don't know that you need to have an ordinance that says, sure, put them in there, or no, don't put them in there.
Does seem like they're already littering.
What's that?
They're already littering.
Yeah.
We choose to go pick them up, we just go pick them up on whatever day of the week. We don't need an ordinance in the right of way.
I think by specifically not allowing, I don't, I just said-
That's, and that's kind of where I was at, is like, are we allowed to go pick them up without-
Sure.
It in our ordinance, then, then I'm fine not having it in the ordinance at all.
I, I mean, somebody could call me on that, but why in the world would we not be able to pick up a sign within our right of way?
I, I think you're right, I mean, I, I think the, the whole premise of the ordinance is saying where you can locate things. And we already talked about off-premise signs, right, saying you could locate them with the owner's permission, and then if you're silent, it means you, you can't. So, if, if there's no, nothing in the ordinance that says you could locate a sign in the right of way, you can't locate it in the right of, you could be silent on that and then determine-
And then go enforce it.
You don't need an ordinance specifically saying, no signs in the right of way, I agree with that 100%.
If the intent is not to allow signs in the right of way, it's a lot easier to do enforcement when you have that, though. So, if I have a sign on the boulevard and say tip it-
We tried that, though.
Yeah, but it's a lot harder if you have to pick up 1,000 signs a week.
Because it's in the books as an ordinance.
And then you gotta feel the phone call, be like, I thought you guys weren't allowing these in the right of way, and you're like, well, we're not, well, we only have so many people. It's, I, in my opinion, it's one of those that can't really be fixed perfectly, but I think it's, I think it's best not mentioned.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I, I agree that there shouldn't be any specific language that says, you can't have it in the right of way, because that's already implied. It's already implied by where you could put all the other signs. You know, we, you specifically say where you could put temporary signs, that means you can't put them anywhere else.
So, as it, I, I think kind of the direction that we're going is, keep the ordinance as it is for temporary signs, that they're not allowed in the right of way, it's a question for-
No, no, strike all that language.
Strike the wording.
Strike all that language, that temporary signs have to be off-prem-, on private property.
Change the ordinance-
So, it's still not allowed?
Well, don't say not allowed.
It's just not in the ordinance.
Just don't, strike it for sure.
And it's a question of enforcement, if we're going to do it or not.
The ordinance should, should say where those signs can be located.
And for temporary signs, right, say that sign, all temporary signs should be on private property, don't say they shouldn't be in the right of way.
It's, uh, the current language is 10 feet from the property line for temporary signs.
On the private property?
From the property line.
It says no less than 10 feet from the prop-
Right, uh, freestanding signs shall be set back no less than 10 feet from the property line.
So, for example, not, not in dray G T Vs, man?
That's fine.
Yeah.
But that's also implying that it's on private property.
Correct.
I like that one, the language is-
So, the draft ordinance, our current ordinance says something different, but the draft ordinance is saying this, is that correct, Hayden?
Yes, but I'm, uh, I can, we can, uh, take notes and write this down. This will stay 10 feet from the property line. Strike the new language that requires it to be separated from a city street 10 feet, so that was the switch there on that line. Freestanding signs should be limited to a maximum height of 8 feet, period.
Right.
Yes.
Sure.
Yep, get rid of the if outside the right of way.
And now we're getting into the prohibited signs, and from my understanding from the planning commission, number 14 should be just stricken entirely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Straight line.
So, my understanding on 13 was we do- Isn't it one on, on, uh, actually, on your property?
What's that?
Isn't there a sign there that some of the other businesses can use? Or maybe that was what they wanted?
Oh, on, on my-
Yeah, on your, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there's the, uh-
So, it's, it's advertising that's not on-
It's off-premise sign, so-
Yeah, there's a monument sign there that just says what businesses are in that building.
But just your building? So, like, the dentist couldn't use it?
Correct.
So, why would we not allow the dentist to use it?
So, that was gonna be my question, is that since temporary signs do, since permit not required signs allow for residential districts to place, uh, one sign for nine square feet, up to nine square feet, I think is what the language is, um, without a permit, should that number 13 have language added to it that says, unless it meets the standards of the permit not required section, or that, or just reference that section? Kind of getting into the weeds here, but I wanted to ask that question.
I'm lost.
Yeah. On what I just asked?
On your question, yeah.
So, I don't have the temporary, yeah, or the permit not required section up, but it does allow for a certain amount of signage without a permit in residential districts, and I believe that that is nine square feet. So, there's signs two square feet or less in size, one sign per property in residential districts not to exceed nine square feet. So, should, at number 13 there, and I can zoom in, should there be an exemption for signs that meet that section of the code for permit not required?
Kind of seems to show-
It's like the off-premise sign code type of thing.
But this is, but this subsection is referring to-
Prohibited.
Prohibited signs.
Right, so you're allowing nine square feet of signage without a permit in residential districts, but then you go here, if that sign has a roofing company on it or something like that, that is essentially a prohibited sign for, per this section.
I was wondering about that whole last, that last sentence in the section, I guess, what's the point? Help me understand the point of having it there.
Obsolete and off-premise signs in residential districts. No sign shall be permitted which advertises a business which is not being presently conducted on the premise of, on which the sign is located, unless it meets the provisions of that section that lists out the permit not required signs. That makes sense. Because it's just referring back to a, a section of the ordinance that- That shows what you can have on residential districts. That shows what you can or can't have, anyway, so, that makes sense, it's just a referral back to-
Can you advertise, like, the roofing company, then?
Yes.
Got it.
If it meets the standards of the-
The two-by-two, got it.
Or the one-by-one, or one sign not more than nine square feet.
Okay, that makes sense, then, to me, too.
And if you feel more comfortable, we'd be more than happy to bring this back to you with clean language, or we've got our marching words.
We'll be back here in March.
Might be March, or-
We're about to be back here tomorrow.
Might be March or any, I like that. Tomorrow in 20 minutes.
All right, are we, I think you got consensus on that?
It would be abortion.
I know, but, okay.
We have our marching words to update the, the things that we walked through here. leaving the monument sign stuff as proposed and then adding that section that creates that exemption for permit not required signs under the off premise signs section.
I didn't read through the sign ordinance enough. Is there any other changes we want to make at this time? I mean, that's.
Keep in mind the sign ordinance took like six months. Bunked in between the different.
Didn't help that, it was eighty pages long.
There's a lot of ambiguity that comes to these types of things.
That's my only question, but.
Probably stuff.
There's probably other stuff.
Probably stuff.
Oh, I think it seems like a no brainer. I'm gonna make, I guess, I'm a little unclear, less clear about the last stuff on temporary signage in this motion.
I can surely send out a revised ordinance for you guys.
I'm more clear about making the motion to approve the height and the advertising of the signage on the different sides of the buildings. And I trust that staff is gonna make the changes that we talked about on temporary signage too, so I guess I'm okay with that if other people are. But if other people want to see it, I don't, okay. All right, I want to make a motion to approve the amending the city code for signs to increase the height on the monuments to sixteen feet, allow signage on more than just the front side of the building as well as to address what we discussed with regarding the temporary signs. Which was striking a lot of language about being in the right of way.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes five to zero.
I will send you a revised ordinance tomorrow to just, to let you guys take a look at what we discussed.
Appreciate that.
If it was out of whack, feel free to give me a call. Thank you.
All right, item nine A, item ten A.
Ten, staff updates. Okay, so since this was, thinking this was going to be a short meeting. So I did not include a long discussion on the A three district, but I want to make sure I'm on the same page with the planning commission. The intention is to come back in, I'm gonna say the next step would be to have a work session with the council to make sure planning commission and council is going in the same direction and then have a public hearing for this. So A three district, you know, again, the planning commission discussed this in December and January, maybe it was November. Just generally speaking, the density is one home per ten acres. Minimum lot size is one and a half net acres. I can't remember if we had talked about two and a half or landed on one and a half. Lot width eighty feet, setbacks at thirty feet, that's consistent with the other residential districts. And previous surface area, I threw in thirty percent, so that's somewhat arbitrary. As far as the trigger of when these properties would be rezoned, I guess that's a question for the planning commission. If this would, if the city would preemptively rezone these from A one to A three or wait until the property owner wants to subdivide. Probably doesn't make a big difference. As far as like the permitted conditional interim uses, the intent is that it's all going to be the same A one and A three. There may be other parts in the ordinances that are different based on property size, that wouldn't change. Questions that we ended up last month on, do we require public roads versus private easements or private roads for development? As well as paved versus gravel and if we were going to require a PUD or not?
If we required a PUD, are the previous two question marks basically wrapped into that?
If we require a PUD, then everything's flexible.
If we require a PUD, is it gonna be harder to prove a public benefit for these things?
It could. So in currently, you know, the comp plan identifies greenway corridors. And if your land is in a greenway corridor, you're required to do a conservation PUD. So for example, we, next month we'll have a, we'll have a preliminary plat for the property north of Lake Laura that we looked at earlier. That's in a greenway corridor. So the intent there is to preserve something that's worth preserving, whether it's woodland or wetland buffer or.
Yeah, so those type of properties are way easier than a forty acre field.
It's easier to identify what is, what is the public benefit.
Yeah.
It's, it's the greenway.
Okay.
So questions on?
What was your question on public roads versus private easements? Seems to me they have to be a public road unless maybe you have a shared driveway easement. But then we got, we should probably consider how many homes are appropriate on a shared driveway.
That was it.
That's why I think PUD makes the most sense on it because.
Every property is different.
Consider the totality of a particular situation.
So are we, I guess, are we having a work session on the twenty fifth?
That is my goal.
You won't make a one size fits all on that, there's no way.
Okay, so we'll have more discussion there on this.
Yep. So on these three questions though, is there any consensus or any opinions?
My opinion is require a PUD and then the other two questions get flushed out through the PUD process. And I don't do that just to kick the can, but I just, I don't, we struggled the last meeting with trying to figure out, well, what if it does this and what if it does that and what if it looks like this? I don't, I don't know. There's an unlimited number of possibilities there.
Depending on what the split is, it could be a paved or gravel road as proposed.
Yeah, and, yeah, what if the lot is shaped like this? I don't know, because until it's actually proposed, that's where I, I think a PUD in these situations, it's a very unique district. I think a PUD, you know, it would be very important for us to be consistent, don't get me wrong. But I don't, let me know what that consistency looks like until we see some proposals on it.
The hard part about PUDs is there's no starting point. So, you know, when you think of lot sizes and whatnot, like we have nothing to, there's no review.
I think the most important thing, John, is that when this is all said and done, that staff really knows what the expectation is. So you can work with the applicants on, so when we see stuff where, you know, you really have a good understanding of what council, planning commission, other people want to see, then you can help guide them. I know it's a lot of more burden, but I don't know a different way to make it easier.
Sure.
It's a new thing. We gotta see if there's much interest. Let's go through a few.
Might only get a.
Yeah, you might get one or two, see how it works and we can revise it if it's not working the way we want it to. But there's, there's so much variety out there and every lot is so unique that there's no way we can tell them that they need paved roads or gravel roads right now.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is then to have a work session on the twenty fifth.
Are you asking like, are we available that day or is that before? Okay.
Is that prior to a council meeting then?
Yes.
So there's a cap to how long I can go?
Oh yeah, it's, yes.
More likely to commit all now?
It's not gonna be more than an hour.
I'm available.
Right now I'm available.
Yeah, I like the idea of A three. I think it's worth pursuing and trying to get, get it going so it's available.
Okay, I'm very likely available. It is a council meeting night for me, but likely could, anything on that agenda, I could probably have covered for me. Next month will be a lot harder with public hearings, but.
Okay, so preview for March. So if this was long, March is gonna be longer. We have a concept plan for the, Opidian is the DDL property, so they're coming in. We have a concept plan for an industrial development. DCM Farms will be back again. Parkway Neighborhood Second Edition will be, you'll see that for the first time.
Where's Parkway Neighborhood?
On the southwest Dayton, so other side of ninety four. A three zoning district and then the shady parcel is the Lake Laura property.
This will be into the next day.
We need to start.
You know, we need to, I mean, I get it that, especially if we anticipate a lot of public coming up, we probably need to start splitting this up and having more than one meeting a month.
Yeah. Can we though? I mean, if they all come in and they all need to be dealt with, they're gonna all need to be dealt with.
Sixty day rule, but.
Yeah. This is what.
I will not, I will likely not be able to attend the March sixth meeting.
Me either, no.
If the, if the hockey team keeps playing well, it's her last district game.
And you know, I hate to be a jerk, but maybe we need to be a little bit more forceful with the three minute rule.
Yeah, is it three minute rule for every person that comes up?
Yeah. And it stinks because it's better to let, hear him out and I don't want to make it a hard three minute, but.
That was, that was kind of my, my point too of the commercial of, like, we've heard that the last six meetings and on off topic things, so it was.
So if if you'd like, and I mean, I've seen this in other cities, is, you know, staff as the bad guy would just set a timer for three minutes. It's up to the commission if you want to enforce it or not.
Yeah, we had ten people talks, I mean, that's already thirty minutes. Right, like, and if each one goes a little bit longer.
They were, yeah.
I, I think it's fair if it's in our, in our ordinances that they get three minutes.
Yeah, I could think, you know, just the suggestion that Peter, who, or if I'm in charge of the next meeting too, is to reiterate it at the very beginning of the discussion, so encourage them to prepare their thoughts even more and get their major points out.
Yeah. Is it worth?
Do we have the ability? Is that something we should look at if we even, it's a public hearing, right? So I could see with an open forum, you're limiting open forum decisions. Do we even have the ability to limit speech at an open forum or a public hearing?
It's a pretty valid question.
You do.
Do you?
I was assuming that was our guidance.
Filibuster?
They could read the bill, right?
Me?
They could filibuster it.
I, I don't know. I think as long as it's clear what the, what the requirement is and it's reasonable.
Quick question for you, Dennis. Does council hear the same stuff on these topics too? Or is the crowd mainly coming to the planning commission?
It depends on the topic, but yeah, for this thing, we're gonna get hit, this is hard. And, and I guess what, what, what I would tend to do is, is if I know there's gonna be a lot of things and I'll just make it clear that we don't want to hear repeats, we'll give you three minutes. But if there's only one or two people, I'll let them.
Yeah.
I mean, the consideration that I was making also is the fact that it's a public hearing for a reason. Once they get to the council, it's not technically a public hearing, so you would be able to limit the, the amount of time that they have to regurgitate what they've already presented at a public hearing, so. Again, I don't want to be here until four AM either, but we just, I just want to make sure that we are able, we are able to limit that speech at a public hearing.
Where else would you rather be?
Right now, probably bed.
Yeah.
I can't even go happen here at Sundance.
I got knocked back for six hours.
Yeah, there you go.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All those opposed? Meeting is adjourned.
At this point, you guys don't.